Well, let's do the presentations.
All right, if you can all please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. We have our invocation by Jack Ablene, our police chaplain.
Father, we thank you this evening as we gather together that you have given to us great wisdom and understanding in your ways, and it is our prayer that you might speak not only to our councilmen and council leaders, but, Lord, that you would speak to us as a public to know your heart. And so be with us tonight. May everything be done according to your will and have your way in this place, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. If I can ask Michael David Ray to please step forward at this time? And if families around, they want to be close to take pictures or whatever, it would probably not be a bad idea. Mike, if you could just walk around, come over, come this way, please. Standing to my right is Michael David Ray, and I want to award him the Mayor's Exemplary Citizen Award. And let me tell you why. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Mike, but then I'm gonna tell you why I think he deserves this award. He graduated from Occidental College in 1970 with a degree in economics. And then in '73, he attended his MBA from the University of Southern California. In early 1980s, Michael and his brother Milwaukee formed Sanderson J. Ray Development with an associate Chase Sanderson to develop a commercial real estate. In 1999, Michael formed Pacific Capital Investors, which was an affiliate of the company. And then, you know, as things went well and he began to be more and more successful and make money, I think the true Michael Ray began to emerge. And the true Michael Ray, I believe, is an extremely generous person. He's a person who gives away not only a lot of money, he's become a philanthropist, but he also gives a lot of his time away. And as you get older, you begin to value time more and more. And as you look at helping organizations, it's one thing to write a check and kinda forget about them. It's another thing to get involved with an organization and make a difference. And there are two institutions in town that I can unequivocally say that without Michael Ray's participation and generosity, you know, they wouldn't be here today. It's that simple. Sometimes there's critical moments in time where there's a tipping point. Things are very fragile and they can go in a wrong direction or they can go in a right direction. And if you have enough people pushing in the right direction, it'll tip that way. And in this case, the two entities are the Discovery Science Center and the Orange County School of the Arts. With the, you know, Discovery Science Center, Michael was there not only raising money and donating money, but convincing board members to come to San Ana. There was a moment in time when the Discovery Science Center wanted to be in Irvine. You know, the Irvine Company, you know, had offered land, an off-ramp, you know, money to assist, and put them in the Irvine Spectrum right there on Laguna Canyon Highway 133. And we didn't have anything. But we had a vision and a dream and hard work and folks like Michael David Ray that said, "If you want to make a difference, come to San Ana. Come, you know, to a progressive city, come to the center of the county, come to where you will serve a lot of children." And talking about serving children, the Orange County School of the Arts, when Ralph Obasek was talking about coming to San Ana, Michael was right there at pivotal moments. Pivotal moments like what? Let me give you one example. You know, he was very close to Phil Angelides, who was the state treasurer in the 90s. And Phil Angelides had an infrastructure bank. And when the High School of the Arts was trying to come to San Ana, they didn't have any money. And Mike not only donated money, I'll tell you a story about that in a moment, but he helped them raise money. He got them a $20 million loan at 3% interest so that they could buy the High School of the Arts and come to San Ana. Without Michael Ray, Phil Angelides would not have approved that loan. Without that loan, there is no OSHA. Because there's no money to get them to where they had to get at that moment in time. Not only did he help that way, but I remember another occasion where we were all sitting around. OSHA had just started and they didn't have money to make the payroll for the teachers because we were brand new. And, you know, it takes like 90 days from when you build a state to when you get paid and you need that cash in the bank to carry you. They didn't have cash. They were starting off. And I remember sitting with Michael, with Mike Hera and myself, and everybody saying, "We've gotta come up with money by Tuesday to make payroll." And it was pretty big payroll. And I remember Mike pulling out his checkbook and I'll say, and saying, "I'll take a third of that." And I remember the number was over $100,000. And without hesitation, he stepped up to the plate and he said, "We're gonna cover the, we're gonna cover the payroll for the teachers." Because if you don't pay the teachers and you're starting the year, guess what? They all leave. And then when they all leave, you're not gonna get other ones to come back. You can't have those type of problems. Because of Michael David Ray standing to my right and his generosity, we only did not have those problems. We overcame those situations and today we are blessed. So look, there's thousands and thousands of people here in the city. There's many thousands, something like over half a million that go to the Discovery Science Center. I know there's about 2,000 students now at the High School of the Arts. And there's people that will never know what he did. But I would be remiss in my duties as mayor to not take a moment and thank Michael David for what he has done. Because all those people that will never know him are benefiting it. And he didn't do it to receive credit. He didn't do it to let anybody say anything good about him. He did it because that's who he is. And I am honored and blessed that, you know, that I've gotten to know him and his family. And I know that, you know, Elizabeth and Gabby are here. I know where Harrison's at. Kim, I know you're here and just, you know, beautiful people around him. And I'm just so proud to call my friend. Before I present this to him, I just want Michael to say a few words.
No institution has just one father. And the Discovery Science Center, the driving force was actually my brother Milwaukee. And it actually started in Irvine in the mid-'80s when we had this nonprofit called Art Spaces Irvine, of which I was chair. And all we did is place one public statue in one public space once a year. And then we got bored and we decided to, we said, "That wasn't enough." We wanted to have a giant park that didn't have any planning because Irvine's so overplanned. And so we did a charrette. It was done by the guy who did the original study for Disney. And that guy decided that if we're gonna have something, you'd have to have an interactive science center for children. And then the politics in Irvine changed and the conservatives came into power and killed that idea. And the Irvine Company, to say the least, was not all that helpful. Then we decided, "Hey, let's go to San Ana." Miguel and I have been friends forever. And Miguel was saying, "Come, come, come, we'll help you." And then it got to a point where we tied up a site with this existing site now where you see it. And we needed $6 million to start it. Taco Bell was the lead gift people. And they were able to raise $2 million. Then I went to a bank, which wasn't really a bank. It was called the National Cooperative Bank, which invented financing that didn't exist. The guy at the bank and I invented it. So that got us up to $4 million. Then we needed another $2 million. And at the time, it was Governor, uh... Yeah, yes, Governor Wilson, Republican, was governor. And the head of the State Assembly was a Republican too. So they were okay with the idea, but the Democrats in the State Senate said, "No way." And the lobbyist said, "There's only one person that the DSC could send up and beg for money." And that was me because I've been, spent a lifetime as an active Democrat raising money for all the world to get. So Miguel arranged a meeting with that man who just walked in, Bill Lockyer, who's now the state treasurer, who at the time was president pro tem of the State Senate. And I remember we went up to his office in downtown LA. And basically, we begged. We said, "Hey, Bill, I know the Democrats, or the Democrats think this is Orange County, rich, right-wing area in the right. It's a rich, right-wing area, but not everywhere. And if we put something in downtown, in San Ana, the reach is 90-mile radius and most of the people who go are gonna be kids and it's gonna be science." And out of that, he, Bill didn't tell us yet, yes, right then, but he arranged for us to get $2 million. So, Bill, thank you, senor. When it came to the High School of the Arts, which got, they were in a campus in West Orange County. The campus was a surplus campus. And then suddenly that school district needed the space and he said, "Orange County High School of the Arts, you're gone." So they're looking for a space. They only had one year to get it done, one year. And so Miguel, again, calls my brother and calls me, "Hey, can you guys make it happen?" And there's this crazy guy with a beard by the name of Michael Hera, who's buying up these buildings on Main Street. We said, finally had the idea, I think Miguel had the idea, putting us together. And Hera was willing to go out on a limb and say, "Okay, I will build you a campus at this location where it is, where the school is now. And I will deliver it to you." But we said, "Okay." And being a finance guy, I thought he would ask us, "Where's our money coming from?" And he took the risk that we'd raised the money. We had to raise $20 million. He started construction. And as Mayor said, at the time Angelides, Phil Angelides was then state treasurer, I called him and he said, "Well, maybe I can help." And he directed me to do something called the Infrastructure Development Bank, which isn't really a bank. It's a, it's part of the state government. And we, the High School of the Arts put together this business plan. The two women who ran the joint both said the business plan was fairy dust. It had, it wouldn't work. It would be a failure. They couldn't raise the money. The reason is, the amount of money at that time that you got from the state to run a school per student was $5,000 a year. But the cost, including the debt service, including everything, including the extra arts classes, was $9,000. So it's $4,000 short. Angelides and then Governor Davis pushed it through. And they did it because I knew both and I was an active Democrat. This is the value of being an active Democrat, ladies and gentlemen. They pushed it through. We paid Michael Hera $20 million. Okay, then Miguel asked if I would go to a meeting like 18 months later, 15 months later. It's in Ralph Obasek's office, Executive Director. It was on a Thursday. And Ralph said, "Payroll is next Wednesday, $300,000. And here's how much money I have." None. None. We all reached into our pockets. I might add that then-city manager David Ream was called immediately by Miguel. And Miguel said, "Hey, David, do we have any extra money?" And sorry to tell you guys, that was a year that one section of the city didn't have their pothills fixed so that the high school could still operate. And we limped along for about another year, depending upon contributions. Michael Hera, by the way, gave half a million dollars just to pay overhead. Finally, I figured out a way of the school being self-financing. It's a long story. You don't want to hear it. But I feel it's, there's a lot of fathers to all of these projects. But in both cases, when they needed the money, when they needed the creativity, when they needed the political connections, I had it. And I had it, ladies and gentlemen, because I was an active Democrat. And there's Frank Barbero, the former chairman of the Democratic Party. Thank you very much. And I might add, none of this would exist, neither would exist without Miguel. Mayor Miguel Puleto, without him pushing, neither of those institutions would exist at all. Period. End of message. So thank you, Miguel.
Michael, I'm gonna present this to you, but if I could, you know, it's not every day that we get the former, you know, chair of the Democratic Party, Frank Barbero, here or our state, you know, treasurer. So, you know, if you could both please come up and be in this photo. I want to present this because I know you're very close to Michael. You're here because of Michael David. You're probably gonna leave afterwards and go out to dinner or do something fun. And we're gonna go through our meeting. But it's okay if you don't have a tie. You're here in an unofficial capacity. And Lou, would you want to come up as well? You're now part of the state government. You're gonna speak in a moment. Please come on up, Lou Correa. And also, I know we have some of our students here that are going to OSHA. Some of the council members that are parents of kids in OSHA. Why don't you come down for a photo? Because I think this is appropriate based on what's been done. And by the way, Bill Lockyer is now the state treasurer, but he's been the Attorney General. He's been, you know, Speaker Pro Tem. He's been a friend of San Ana and a strong, strong leader in the state for decades. And California's better off because of your work, Bill. Thank you. So let me present this. Let me present this to Michael David Ray, you know, for his generous and humble service to the community. San Ana is better off today because of what you've done, Michael. And I know that you're still a young man. I know you're in good shape. I know you do yoga, you run, you have... You do kayaking now? Do you still surf?
Yeah.
Yeah. See, the way you said, "Yeah," he ignored it. Why don't we get the family here real quick and we'll take a couple photos, please. Well, who's gonna be the photographer then?
I'll take, I'll take the photo.
Okay. All right, let's get everybody in here to a photo and present this to Mike.
Just wanted to say also, thank you very much, Mayor Puleto and Michael Ray. Just wanted to also mention another person. When I was in the legislature, that was very key to this operation, State Senator Joe Dunn, that also lent a hand in this. Thank you.
Now I want to please ask Susan Anderson, can you come on up? Paul, if you can bring her, just bring her around this way, please. As Susan comes up here, let me tell you why I want to recognize her. I think sometimes the longer you live, especially if people start to get older, they start to become like children again in a certain way. A lot of qualities that are strong in people's lives in the middle years as people get older, you know, they, you know, they become more dependent on their middle children. They, you know, they, you know, begin to soften in a way. And I think especially when you're 100 years, that's a big deal. To live and be in good health and to live to be 100 years old on this planet, that's a big deal. And today, we're gonna, you know, celebrate Susan Anderson's 100th birthday. Let's give her an applause. She was born back in 1914 in Liverpool, Ohio, East Liverpool, Ohio. June 29th, to be exact, so we're missing it by a couple days. She was born fourth of five siblings. She came to California at age 22 with her sister Ellen. They lived over in Boyle Heights. Susan married Gunner Anderson and moved to San Ana in 1946. And was owner of Anderson Dental Lab over on Main Street. And out of six siblings, she's the last remaining alive today. And she continues to live in her lovely home here in San Ana. I know close to her son Paul and daughter-in-law Sylvia. And you don't have to say any words, but do you want to say anything, Susan?
No.
You want to say something, Paul?
You sure? Just say hello.
Say, "Thank you."
Oh, hello.
Do you like living in San Ana, Grandma?
Hello, everybody.
Look, and I'm gonna encourage other cities and other mayors around the county that we all begin to recognize centenarians. And, you know, 100 years is a big deal. And I hope as we all take care of ourselves that more of us are gonna live to be 100 and live, you know, with family and friends and enjoy life. Because, you know, I think that's why we're on this planet. We're here to serve others and to enjoy life. So let me present this to you and congratulate you on your 100th birthday. Now, let's congratulate Susan once again. Now I'm gonna turn the mic over to, I believe it's Mayor Pro Tem Tina Herro, Councilman Vince Armento. And come on down. I don't know if Roman Reyna, I don't know if you're part of the presentation as well, but let me turn the microphone over to Vince Armento at this time. They're congratulating the birthday girl, which is a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as Eric Santa Cruz makes his way down here, I also want to wish Susan happy birthday on behalf of all of us. You know, it wasn't too long ago that I recognized somebody in my ward who turned 100 years old. And let me just tell you three things that he said. Because I asked him, "Well, what's the secret to, you know, living to be 100 years old?" And he said, "There's three things that I do." He says, "I walk around the block every day." He says, "I don't worry about anything." And he says, "I have a glass of wine every day." So I said, "All right, well, look, I'll join you in the glass of wine. The other two things, I'm not sure of." But I guess, I guess the wine helps. You know, as we're talking about people from a certain generation, the great thing about the city is that we're a very diverse city, not only ethnically, gender, but also generationally. And we're gonna recognize somebody tonight that in his short time, because he's a very young man, has done quite a bit. And he's a native son of the city. He's somebody who was born and raised here and has done some incredible work. And we do a lot here at the council to recognize athletes and folks who excel in sports. But I think what's important is that we recognize people who excel in academics as well. And I like to call them mathletes. So, you know, I think it's real important for us to do our job as well to highlight some of what is important to us when it comes to students that are a product of our school system, a product of our city, and have gone on and done well. Because I know many have the unfortunate perception that the city just doesn't generate a lot of positive things. And we know that that's not the case. And here's a case in point with Eric Santa Cruz, who's standing to the right of Mayor Pro Tem in mine. And Eric is somebody who I've known. I've been very blessed to know him since he was in junior high. And the reason why Mayor Pro Tem is here was that when Eric was a junior high student at Lethrop, Mayor Pro Tem Tina Herro was his teacher. So he was known as Mr. T back then, right? Because he had a mohawk and, no, I'm just kidding. It was just because a lot of people couldn't pronounce Tina Herro. So they, they used to call him Mr. T. And I think they still do, out of respect and because they know that he's just somebody who's been such an important figure in their life. And, you know, let me embarrass Mayor Pro Tem for a little bit. He is an award-winning teacher, has been recognized for Teacher of the Year nationally. He's gone to the White House and received an award in recognition for that. And also is an award-winning debate coach. So we can see why Eric has done so well because he's had the, you know, he's had the tutelage and the, and the right sort of counseling and mentoring from people like Sal. And I want to tell you a little bit about Eric very quickly. But before I do, I just want to recognize his family who are in the audience because they're here. they're here, they're very proud of his work that he's done. So Eric, why don't you tell your family to stand up? So Eric, just so you know, why are we recognizing him? What did he do? Why is he so special? And why are we recognizing his family? Well, Eric is somebody who went to elementary school here. He went to Edison, went to, I believe, went to Lathrop as well, as I said, went to Century High, went to Santa Ana College and was a student trustee there, and represented all the students at the college with the trustees. And then when he finished there, he was accepted to UC Berkeley and received his bachelor's in sociology. But he wasn't done even then. He, at that point, applied for a doctoral program at Columbia University and went there and just recently this summer, received his, received his degree from Columbia. And he earned his master's in community health and subsequently a doctorate in health education. So now, he is no longer Eric Santa Cruz, he's Dr. Santa Cruz. So that is a great thing. And people who say that we don't have our share of winners and folks who go on and do great things, they're sadly mistaken, they're sorely mistaken, because we have our share of folks who do extremely well in this city. And that's what we need to do, is celebrate these accomplishments. Because as we celebrated the centurions who, you know, who reached 100 years, folks who gave to the city, these are the folks who are going to lead it into the next century. These are the folks who are going to continue to make this city great. Because all this human capital, all this excellence, if we can keep it here in the city, it's going to, it's going to bode well for us. It's going to be a great thing for our future of the city. And just to let you know what he did at Columbia, Eric was honored with the highest distinction, and he was named a distinguished fellow of the research group on disparities in health. And not only that, but he'll be attending George Washington University to earn a second doctorate degree in clinical psychology. So, you know, I don't know, he's got to get a big wall to put all those diplomas on, or we're going to have to get one for him. But we're extremely proud of him, and I wanted Mayor Pro Tem to join me in this presentation because it's such a special thing for us to celebrate people that have done well in our city. And to show others in the county and everywhere else that we have our share of excellence. And it's something that's very important for us to celebrate. So we wanted to take a moment to reflect on his great work and wish him well and thank him for doing us, you know, proud and making us proud here, the city, because anytime we have a person like this that excels, it reflects well on the city. So Eric, let me turn this over to Mayor Pro Tem real quickly, because I know he has a few words, words of wisdom that he wants to share.
Well, I don't know about wisdom. I would like to say that the reason he's done so well and why he's so smart is because he took my class. But the reality is, that's not the truth. I hope I didn't mess you up in any way. I was trying my best. But the truth is this, is that, I'm going to call him Dr. Santa Cruz. I think we need to start getting used to that. Dr. Santa Cruz went to Lathrop Intermediate. At that time, it was the poorest school in Orange County and the most overcrowded school. If you went out at break and tried to go to the restroom, it was very difficult to go to the restroom, because there was not enough time. There were so many people in line. And sometimes, some people weren't very sensitive to that, and it was unfortunate. He was in, he was in my class, a lot shorter. I told him he outgrew me. That's not tough to do. But it is commendable, when you think about a young man who comes from that environment, who somewhere down the road, others have reached out to help him. He has taken advantage of that and never disappointed. And so I just wanted to thank Dr. Santa Cruz for being an example to our children, because you really demonstrate that it doesn't matter what your background is. If the doors are open there for you, you can make it through. So I thank you, and it is a great honor this time for me to see you here and shake your hand one more time.
I want to thank my mom for pushing me. I want to thank my friends and my family for all the emotional support, because the work that I've done has been hard, and it's required a lot of sacrifices, a lot of determination. But I really want to thank the city of Santa Ana, because the city of Santa Ana is what keeps inspiring me to do what I do. Every single time that I come back, I see how much it's grown, I've seen all the progress. But at the same, at the same time, there's still a lot of work to be done. And that's why I do what I am doing right now, and that's why I'm going to go for another degree, because I really want to become whole in my craft, and I want to come back here and help the community, because I am a product of Santa Ana. I was born and raised here. I know every single street in the entire city like no other. And so this is my home, this is where I'm going to come back, to really achieve my fullest potential, but at the same time, help others, others who are growing up just like me, achieve their fullest potential as well.
Before I present this certificate to him, you know, you know how difficult it is to go through a doctorate program? I mean, none of us can really even fathom how, how tough it is and how challenging and how difficult. Because, you know, we went to the same undergrad, we were both Cal Bears. I remember, and I know we'd share stories with one another, we used to have to compete with students that went through private education their entire lives. Their parents would hire tutors for them for different subjects. I remember I had a roommate who, whose parents hired a counselor to help him apply for graduate programs. And here, you had folks who were competing, who went to a public school education, came from a humble background, and we had to compete with these folks. So to see what Eric's done is just incredible, and it goes beyond any comparison. But I think one of the things, one of the conclusions that we came to is that you appreciate it so much more when you do it on your own. And you value it, because you know it's been a sacrifice. You know that you've seen your parents struggle. You're going to do something positive with what you've earned. So that's the difference with it being handed to you and you working very hard. And I just want to commend him, I want to thank him for caring so much about the city. And Eric, as a reflection of the gratitude that we all have here in the city for you and all the work that you've done, but all the work that you're going to continue to do, because we want you to come back here. And, you know, as you said, use your craft to help us, because that's what we need, is for everybody who goes on and does well academically to come back. Use their resources here, because we do have a need here for that. So Eric, on behalf of the city council and especially Mayor Pro Tem and I, we want to award you and congratulate you with the certificate of recognition for your outstanding academic achievements. You are truly an asset to this community. Congratulations, congratulations to your family.
Thank you for that. Now, I'm going to call on Councilman David Benavides. I believe he's going to present something to Bishop Abel Aguilar for his 23 years of service, if Bishop is here. Please, David.
And if we can have also Pastor Jason Aguilar join us up front. It'd be great to have both Bishop Aguilar and Jason Aguilar up front, please.
So please come on down, both Pastor Bishop Aguilar and Pastor Jason Aguilar. Is there a relationship there, David?
Yes, he is father-son.
Father and son, this is beautiful.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Please go ahead and join me a little closer here. You know, this is the time where, as we've been seeing throughout the first portion of the meeting, we acknowledge, recognize people who have contributed much to our city, whether it's bringing science center, schools to our city, whether it's our own homegrown students who have gone through our school system, lived here in the city, and who are just exceptional individuals that we want to recognize and acknowledge. And here I have with me two exceptional individuals that have also believed in our city and have invested in our city and have served our city for many years. One, here to my, my right, Bishop Abel Aguilar, who's been a pastor here in Santa Ana and is just recently retired after 23 years of serving our community. And, you know, I thought it merited, you know, recognizing and acknowledging that specifically because, one of those reasons is because of the, the location of where, where his ministry took place. I'm going to share a little bit, but really mainly would like to hear from you, because I know that you've had a long history here in, in town. Going back, in 1974, Bishop Aguilar and his wife established the Episcotic Church of, in Del Rosa, in Del Rosa, California. So was there up in Northern California, I believe, right? But I know he had family here pastoring already, a small congregation here in the city of Santa Ana. And in 1990 is when he came in and took the helm of, of a church, First Episcotic Church in Santa Ana, from your father-in-law, I believe, right? Who, here on Susan Street, I believe, was a small church location there. But again, just serving our, our community here in Santa Ana. After that, the church continued to grow. And this is where I think it gets really exciting. So this is now you're talking about the early 1990s. Those of you who have been in, in the city of Santa Ana for, for many years, know that the 90s, particularly the first part of the 90s, you know, we, we ran across some, some challenging times in our city, and particularly right around our downtown was, was some, some, a tough part, tough area of town. Oftentimes, I've heard, this is a few years before I actually moved here to the city, but I heard that, you know, it was, it was a part of town, the downtown, where if you could avoid it, you might prefer to do that. There were a lot of vacant buildings and areas, a lot of, you know, not so positive things going on down there. But here you get this pastor, zealous, loves the city, loves our community, and there's an opportunity, things come up, and has this crazy idea of actually moving in to an area where a lot of people are moving out of. And so we have then at that point, the Christian Tabernacle, which established in the Odd Fellows Building, and then across the street at the West Coast Theater, which has a long storied pasture in the city of Santa Ana. And the church continued to, to serve our, our community. And from there, I want to go ahead and pass it on for you to share a little bit more about just that experience, as you've been sharing, serving here for, for a lot of years, Bishop Aguilar. And then what also gets, continues to get exciting is just that, that transition and passing of the helm, to be able to have the, the family continue to serve. And I'll share a little bit about my friend Jason there, standing to your right in a second. But Bishop, if you would please share about your, your experience serving here in our city.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you so much for this honor. It has been a journey, to say the least. When we came into downtown, our church was a small residential congregation on Susan Street. Back then, I believe it, then it was Harper, right before Harbor. And when we began to grow, we expanded to downtown. At that time, in 1990, there weren't a lot of people that wanted to come to downtown. But the congregation and, and myself, we made a commitment to make the community better. And when we purchased the West Coast Theater, the Odd Fellows Building, there wasn't a whole lot to offer. But through the years, through hard work, commitment, sacrifice and dedication, not only by myself, but my wife who is here today, and over the years, and the membership there, I believe we've, we've made a difference. We've made a difference. The alleyway, which is adjacent right to our house of worship, was just a place that wasn't very desirable. There was no lighting, there was no flow, there was no community involvement. But over the years, we stuck to the journey, and for the last 23 years, we were able, and I'm really humbled, I'm really humbled, to have been able to make a difference in some lives. There have been young people that were at one time involved in, in gangs, that gave their heart to the Lord. And some of those gang members are now serving the community. And we are very proud of them. And I am truly humbled that I have been able to do a small part here in this city. And I encourage everyone to get involved in this city. Do something. It's one thing to talk about it, it's another thing to get involved. I remember a few years ago, we brought the world's strongest man. I believe his name was Anthony Clark, who has since passed. But when we brought him here to Santa, something really beautiful happened. Every junior high school allowed us to bring Anthony Clark in the Santa Ana Unified School District. Every junior high school allowed us to bring Anthony Clark and hold an assembly. And he just encouraged students to do better in their, in their education. He encouraged students to make right decisions in life. And so I am so proud that after 23 years, I believe, I, I'm happy, because I think it took its toll on me. I'm, I'm eight weeks removed from open heart surgery. I had a triple bypass eight weeks ago. And, but I think over the years, you know, your body, your body takes wear and tear. But at this point, I've retired, and I've passed the baton over to my son, who's willing to continue this is, this effort. And I think that, that, as was said before, this bodes well for our city and the generations to come. And I am so happy to be here today, and I want to thank Mr. Mayor, the council members, and of course, our good friend, Councilman Benavides, for this great opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In a second, I will be presenting a proclamation. Thank you, Bishop Aguilar, for, for your words and your true commitment and heart for, for serving our city, for loving our, our community, for, for standing by many, many who I know, whose lives have been impacted. And, and I believe that what you, what you say is true, in that we should always look at what we can do for others. And you've lived that, by that, and all your, the congregation, the churches, has always looked at what you can do to, to, just to demonstrate a caring to, to the city of Santa Ana. And I've, I've been in church pretty much all my life, went to Bible college myself, been, done ministry myself, but I know not, I think a lot of us and a lot of our congregations and churches can do more of that and of serving. And one of the things, as you retired, you mentioned 23 years, and I was going to mention, you, you look great for eight weeks, just out of heart surgery. I know that within a few days, I think you were at the, at the church and sharing, and so it's great to be able to see you strong and looking good. And I was there a couple of months ago, a few months ago, when my friend Jason was, was, was installed as the new pastor of Christian Tabernacle. And Jason has also been involved in serving our community, has been a youth pastor, youth leader for 15-plus years, was in New York for a number of years, serving and helping to start work out there and serving the community recently. So a few years ago, came back to the city of Santa Ana with just energized, with a lot of vision and, and commitment. And one of the things that I'm excited about, and I know Councilwoman, I think Martinez had to step out for a second, but a few months ago, she challenged myself and another pastor that was here with me to go out and learn from an initiative in, in the city of Compton, where churches and, and private and businesses and a number of faith communities are coming together, and just going out and peppering the city with, with just these acts of service, acts of love. And it was amazing to be able to go out and see what's taking place there. 1,500-plus volunteers on a Saturday, 20-some murals and community gardens and neighborhood cleanups going on, and it was just a wonderful thing to see. So we've brought that back. And a few weeks ago, myself and a number of leaders, faith leaders in our community, including Pastor Jason, were out in the city of Paramount, Compton, learning, and we're going to have our first initiative of gathering our faith community to serve in the, in the month of September, we're looking at. And it's just an exciting time. So with that, Jason, if you'd come and just share a couple of words as far as your, your vision, your experience serving in, in Santa Ana, what you envision here going forward?
Mr. Mayor and all the council members, it's a joy to be here and very exciting about what's happening. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I'm pumped up to see what's happening in the city of Santa Ana. in the city of Santa Ana. And I know that many of you guys have heard, you know, different things that are happening. I know Pion X is one of the things, I know Councilwoman Michelle Martinez, Mark Pion is actually a member of our church. And I'm so excited about building up leaders and about raising up new leaders because you guys understand that right now, there is a definite call for leadership, especially in the Hispanics, amongst Hispanics. And that's what our church is all about. It's about answering that call. And we're very excited about raising up leaders. I have a strategic priorities, there are certain strategic priorities that I have. And the first one is to, is to train leaders. We really want to instill leadership into people because we believe that there is no success without succession. That's something that we really, really thrive in, especially like when we read the Bible. What we've seen is that Jesus was like an expert at this. And one of his like main things was like that he wasn't going to, he wasn't going to be there all the time. So he said, "I've got to instill into the next generation, the next people to move on and to take these stories and to build and to help and to bless the city." And that's what we're really about is, is really replacing ourselves. To be honest with you, I get the most joy whenever I see people doing it better than I'm doing it. And so I'm excited about replacing myself. My dad always would say, he said, "You know, if you replace yourself, you'll always have a place." So we're very excited about that. The second thing that we really feel is important is building teams. And so I'm excited about joining in with Councilman Benavides to build teams, to do incredible work in the city. We have a heart for the city. There's got to be unity. Churches, businesses have to come together. One of the things that I'm so proud of my dad, and it's such a joy to be like right next to him, it's amazing. And we live in a fatherless generation, but I really thank God that God has given me my dad. And I have a great dad that has been there throughout my life. And you know what? I've also lent my dad to other people. There are thousands of people around the city that he's been a dad for them. And so if there's anything that we need, we need spiritual fathers to speak into the lives of the next generation. Because if they have someone speaking to them, looking at them eyeball to eyeball and saying, "You know what? I believe in you," something good is going to happen. And so I just really thank God for that, that we're building teams. And one of the things I'm really proud of my dad is that, is that we bought the West Coast Theater some years ago. It wasn't easy, but, but the church was able to do it and we remodeled. For seven years, we remodeled. We didn't know anything about remodeling or anything like that at that time. We didn't have the know-how, but there were people within the city of Santa Ana that just got in there and labored and worked hard. And at times, you know, we didn't understand about the historical codes and all this kind of stuff. And sometimes the historical society would get mad at us. We're like, "We don't know what we're doing." And, you know, but we did our very best. And you know, what was really interesting is the Odd Fellows Building was gift donated to the church. And a banker named Joseph Sherman, a few years ago, the Odd Fellows Building went into foreclosure. And did you know that that Odd Fellows Building was gift donated to our church? In fact, a package came to my dad, a federal express package. And we thought, "Oh my God, it must be some kind of legal action against us." We weren't sure. And, no, but it was the deed to the building. And he said, "I gift donate this building to Christian Tabernacle Church." And do you want to know why he gift donated the building to our church? He said, "Because of your vision." And I believe that when you have vision, people begin to join together in unity and there's something powerful that, that resources and finances flows to where there's vision. And so, and the third strategic priority, the last one, is that we really are excited about creating healthy systems. And so when you have, when you build an environment for people to thrive in, I'm not talking about just surviving, people need to thrive. And so I'm really pumped up about really building leaders, about building teams and about allowing people to be able to thrive in a system where they can be successful and they can thrive in their craft. And that's very exciting to us. In fact, now that the West Coast Theater has been restored, it's my vision that we are now selling the building to a group of businessmen. And they're going to restore the buildings back to its original state so that those buildings can be used in downtown Santa Ana for an event center. And those two buildings are going to be able to be used for businesses. And we're so excited about giving that back. We have, we haven't had a place to relocate yet. Our church is growing, it's been amazing. But, you know, we're okay with that, our church is fine with that. But we are excited about giving these buildings back to the city. And so this is going to be an amazing journey. I'm excited about it and I'm pumped up. And I'm so excited about joining with this team together because our city is a great city. Thank you.
I think, I think we're able to see that Pastor Jason's excited and he's a preacher. But it's good stuff. There's great stuff going on in the city of Santa Ana. It's one of the things that I often share is at different levels, whether it be businesses, the city, the community, new development, housing, retail, restaurants. It's a, it's a great time to be in the city. And with that, I do want to recognize at this point, those time, that time of investment of almost a quarter of a century, Bishop Aguilar, that you've contributed to our community. So if you'd step, get a little closer here. So the city of Santa Ana now presents this proclamation recognizing Bishop Aguilar for his 23 years of service and dedication to the city of Santa Ana. And there's a number of different recognitions of all of that contribution. I won't read them all right now, but on this date of July 1st, 2014, signed by each member, each of the seven members of the city, of Council of the City of Santa Ana. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And this certificate of recognition, it's a little bit smaller because it hasn't been 23 years quite yet. But Pastor Jason, on behalf of the city of Santa Ana, we present to you this certificate of recognition on being named the lead pastor of Christian Tabernacle Church. And definitely look forward to continuing to collaborate and work together serving our community. Thank you. Congratulations.
Now I want to recognize Councilor Michelle Martinez. And I believe Vincent Tina Harrow, are you present? I think you're there in the third row. Come on up. Come on up. And I also think some coaches-
Good evening. If I could please have Vincent Tina Harrow, Coach Baum, Coach Cuevas, and Coach Ramirez, please join us. And we also have Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Sal Tina Harrow with us. As they are approaching us, it's really exciting to really have these folks here with us. In particular Vincent Tina Harrow, who's Mayor Pro Tem Tina Harrow's son. How are you Vincent? On May 30th, the United States Specialty Sports Association selected their All-American Far West Baseball Players. USSA is the largest travel ball organization in the country. Top youth players from around the country were selected by professional scouts and coaches. Vincent Tina Harrow is from McFadden Intermediate School, was selected to represent the Far West region and will be the catcher pitcher for the All-American team. Vincent and 14 other players will be flown to Orlando, Florida to compete against the All-American players in his age group. Vincent has been an All-Star in both Little League and Pony Baseball in Santa Ana and has led his All-Star teams to championships in the 9th, 10th, and 11th age divisions. As a travel ball player, he has received the MVP award twice. And before we introduce the coaches, let's give a round of applause to Vincent. I certainly don't play baseball and never have played baseball, but to see these accolades and so young that Vincent is, he doesn't look young, he's almost as tall as Mayor Pro Tem Tina Harrow, looked like a, you know, a young man now. I can't, how old are you Vincent?
I'm 11 years old.
11 years old. Can you believe that? It's a huge feat that he has accomplished and we should be very proud that he's going to be representing us in Orlando. And I know we have his parents, his mother here in the audience, Jennifer and his sister and his other brother. If you guys could please stand and give them a round of applause for being great, for being great supporters of Vincent and travel ball. That's not an easy task for many of you that have children. I do not. And I certainly understand that every time I'm trying to get ahold of Mayor Pro Tem Tina Harrow or one of my other colleagues, they're always saying, "I'm taking this kid to baseball, I'm taking this kid to piano, I'm taking this." I'm like, "Are you guys full-time taxi drivers or what? What's going on here?" So it's certainly a full-time job to really supporting their children. And I'm very proud of you Vincent and your accomplishments. And would like to know if you'd like to say a couple of words?
I need to thank the board and Mr. Miguel Polito. I need to thank my coaches, Chad Baum. I mean, I wasn't hitting great. I mean, we've been together for like three years, I would say. I was hitting about 180, 190. Now I'm hitting 400, 400, 500 every tournament. And he's helped me a lot with my swing, right technique and everything. And my pitching coach, Erasmo Ramirez. He's done a lot for many kids in Santa Ana. He's helped me for three years as well. He's taught me many things. He's helped me go through hard times and good times through my pitching career so far. And I would like to thank him. And my baseball coach, Coach Carlos. Coach Carlos has helped me with my positioning on the field, command, how to be a captain. And that's all I got to say. So thank you again for this award.
So Vincent, on behalf of the city of Santa Ana, we're providing you the certificate of recognition awarded to Vincent Tina Harrow. Congratulations on being selected as an All-American baseball player. You are truly an asset to the Santa Ana youth community. So now I'm going to have Mayor Pro Tem Tina Harrow help me out and introduce the coaches. I'll tell you that, you know, we're really honored to have all three of you here today, the incredible work that you guys currently do, not only in the Santa Ana community but in Fullerton as well. The teams that you have led are amazing and we're certainly very proud of your accomplishments and what you've been able to do for our young people.
The first coach that I want to recognize today, he was, he is a coach that has a great deal of talent, but also has a great deal, teaches the students and the players to have great work ethic. He played in the College World Series for Cal State Fullerton and now he's the assistant coach at Cal State Fullerton. And as Vincent stated, he really owes a lot to Coach Chad Baum. He took him at a young age of eight. He usually works with older kids, but he said, "All right, I'll give this kid a shot. He looks like he wants to play." And ever since then, I've just seen Vincent improve. They have a camp at Cal State Fullerton, highly recommend it, a hitting program at Cal State Fullerton. For those of you who are out here in Santa Ana, this is a good opportunity for you guys to know that there is a resource out there for you to use. And quite honestly, Coach Baum is really someone that we look to and we thank because without your help, it would have been difficult for Vincent to make it. So I want to give this certificate of recognition, dedication and commitment to youth through baseball. You are truly an asset to the baseball community. And this is awarded to Mr. Baum, Coach Baum.
It's truly an honor. Vincent is a great young man. And it's not just about baseball. I'm a baseball coach, I've been for 15 years at a very successful program. It's more about life skills, which his family's instilled in him. And that's the big part. That's why he's successful. The numbers are relative to his work ethic and his family background and how he was raised. So I enjoy working with him and I want to see him one day reach the big leagues. So pops and I can enjoy a couple of days off. So thank you.
The next individual that's also part of this honor is an individual that I coached when he was 11 and 12. And his first lesson after he came out of the major leagues and was finished with the major leagues, I asked him if he could coach my son in pitching. And he said, "Sure." And he came out there and I saw him do the techniques or the, use certain techniques that I've never seen before. After the practice, I came over to him and I apologized. And he looked at me, he says, "What are you apologizing for?" I said, "Because I hope I didn't screw you up when you were 11 and 12." My goodness, what you're showing him is nothing that I could do. But what I love about Erasmo Ramirez, aside the fact that he's really been working with Vincent since he was eight, is that he is the person to go to here in the city of Santa Ana. How many cities do you know that have coaches who have competed in the major leagues for multiple teams and go right back to their community to give back? And now he's the coach at Segastrom High School. Again, when I asked my son, "Who do you want me to come up here? Who needs to be a part of this recognition team with you?" He said, "Coach Ramirez." So I want to thank Coach Ramirez. And you have a certificate here by the city and the mayor as well that says dedication and commitment to Santa Ana youth through baseball. You are truly an asset to the Santa Ana youth community. And that is dated today, July 1st.
I want to thank everybody here. This is a great honor. I've had the privilege of being up here when I first reached the major leagues and Sal actually brought me over here and I got a nice little certificate like this from the mayor. And it means a lot to me. I mean, I love working with kids. I like passing down everything that I've learned to the kids that I work with and plus my players at Segastrom High School. I take great pride in that. I enjoy it. And besides all the baseball stuff, my main, my number one focus is to try and instill confidence in all the young men that I work with. And I had coaches during my, my young career where they gave me the confidence and made me believe in myself that I could reach that light at the end of the tunnel, as long as I kept my head on right and I worked hard. And that's basically, that's probably the most important thing that I do with Vincent along with everybody else. And I'm very proud of him. He's, he's, he's come a long way from that first time that I worked with him. He's got, he's got a great pitching technique, good pitches, and I'm very happy to be a part of that. So thank you, Vinny.
And last but not least, you have to have a coach that goes through the day-to-day, that is there at every practice, that is there at every game. He goes with the players and he deals with the highs and the lows. And those are the individuals that give their time, they give their time for free and to mentor students. I'm very picky on who's going to work with, with my kid because I don't want anybody to mess him up. And when I met this coach, I thought, "This guy's incredible." His 14U team is one of the top teams in the United States. And he decided to coach the younger kids, so he's coaching the 11-year-olds. He's way out in Chino Hills. We travel all the way to Chino Hills to play because he's that type of a coach. And I sit there and I listen and I watch, I ask questions, and then I come back to the coaches that are here and I tell them all the things he's told me so that we can kind of relay information. He's that good. And so I wanted to thank him too because in a very short time, Vincent's baseball IQ has grown and I've seen him develop under your coaching methods. And so I wanted to award you because as I said, Vincent making it to the All-American team and going to Orlando, Florida, he's going to be playing on ESPN. And this is a team effort. This is a team effort. We don't have a lot of students from Santa Ana that get to do this. So I'm very proud and I'm also very thankful. So this is awarded to Coach Cuevas by the city of Santa Ana, to your dedication and commitment to youth baseball. We thank you for your hard work. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor. Very honored to get this. Vince is a very special individual. You know, as a coach, one of the greatest things that we could do is have coachable kids. Wish I had 14 Vinces on my team. A very coachable kid. This 11U team that we have is very special. It's brand new, it's been around maybe six months. We've, we've gone through some lows, we're starting to see some of the highs. I love baseball. Baseball mimics life. It teaches us a lot of how to deal with failure. One of the biggest things that I tell the kids is, you know, what matters most in life and in baseball is what we do next. So with that, just thank you.
And Vincent didn't thank his mother and father, but I'm going to do it for him. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you guys so very much. I said, "I thanked them for him." Next, if we can please have Kathy Brown. So as Kathy Brown is coming up here, I have a personal story. You know, she's coming from the Boys and Girls Club, dedicated 17 years of service. I've known Kathy, Kathy has actually known me since I was 11 years old. And so we go way back and it's really an honor to really recognize her here today for the great service that she's provided to the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana. I will tell all of you here in the test that it was because of the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana, which is 950 West Highland, that I will never forget, that really changed my life. It really gave me opportunities and I never thought, you know, I would be able to, one, for the first time, I traveled to Big Bear as a young kid- for the first time, I traveled to Big Bear as a young kid at 11-years of age to see the snow for the first time, or even attending, um, San Francisco and Toastmasters and interacting with various kids. And then, um, in 1996, I got to become Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. And then in 1997, I was Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year for all of Orange County. And I'll tell you that, um, being Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year in 96 and 97 really elevated me to where I am today and really instilled the confidence, uh, that I have today because I had the opportunity to meet tons of people, including President Clinton, many of you, and I think Mayor Palito was there, um, in 1996 when he came to the Boys and Girls Club. That was a very big year. And also Shaquille O'Neal. And so, it was really awesome, uh, to be in the spotlight with many other, uh, kids at the Boys and Girls Club. It was a very special moment. But with that being said, you know, um, Kathy was born and raised in Chicago. Our city manager is from Chicago and that's why I'm pointing, um, in that direction. She graduated from the University of South Florida. She's passionate about serving the youth and less fortunate families. In 1996, Kathy Brown has served as a Director of Finance for the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana and has been an invaluable member of the executive team. Kathy has been a resource to other club finances and professional, uh, professionals in Orange County. Kathy's leadership and exec- executive presence has been vital to the club's growth from an annual budget of $300,000 in 1996 to approximately $2,400,000 this year. Kathy has helped create the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana Foundation, a separate nonprofit focused primarily on supporting the Boys and Girls Clubs to ensuring its sustainability. And before I ask Kathy to say, uh, a couple of words to all of you, um, I truly want to thank you for your service Kathy and everything that you have done for the Boys and Girls Club. I know it hasn't been always an easy task there. The growth and changes have been tremendous, um, through the Boys and Girls Club, various leaderships. Now we have Robert Santana, who's been there for various years and we have an amazing board now. And so, and I know our, uh, city manager recently just joined the Boys and Girls Club Board as well. And so, I know that we're gonna go to higher places as well. And so, with that, um, I would like for you to, uh, say a couple of words and, and what you've been able to do at the Boys and Girls Club and what's next in your life.
Thank you. Well, first, I'd like to thank the, um, mayor and the council members. Um, I feel very humbled after listening to everybody. By the way, I'm number seven out of seven, so that's the last one, just to let you know. And I feel, I feel, I see, and I also feel very honored though at your recognition for me at this juncture. I am retiring and, um, but I'm wanting to look toward the future for the city of Santa Ana. Um, I've been there long enough, as Michelle alluded to, to see kids come through our program, leave, and now be on the city council, which is, is just fabulous for me to, for what the kids in the community can and do and stay in Santa Ana. Um, we are at a juncture right now at the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana where we are rebuilding a 60-year-old facility. And it is going to be awesome, just awesome. And we're gonna be serving more youth than ever at that facility, probably starting in September. I think the building's set to be done. So for me, when I think of retiring, even though I'm old enough to retire, I look at Susan Anderson, who was here just earlier, and I have at least 35 more years to work with the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana, which I will do. So I thank you all very much for this honor.
And with that being said, Seven of Seven, I'd like to provide this certificate of recognition. Please join us. Um, we have some folks here awarded to Kathy Brown. And who are they Kathy?
Uh, let's see. This is my daughter.
Oh, oh my goodness. They did not tell me your family was here.
No, she's not.
Okay.
This is Liz and Liz is the, um, Chief Operating Officer for the Boys and Girls Club of Santa Ana.
Wow, great.
Travis Witten is our Chief Philanthropy Officer, I believe. And then Joe Padilla is our Operations Manager.
Well, thank you for joining us. As we conclude Seven of Seven here, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition awarded to Kathy Brown in recognition of your 17 years of service to the Santa Ana Boys and Girls Club for your hard work and dedication. It is truly valued. On behalf of the mayor and council.
I'll give you a hug.
Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to continue with our regular, uh, business. Um, if somebody could call the city attorney, I, I think she's next door. Uh, Michelle, could you, oh, here she comes. Thank you, I've, I've got it. Uh, I just want, um, the city attorney, uh, to tell us if there's anything to report out of closed session, please.
Mayor, council members and members of the public, we had one closed session item this evening, which was labor negotiations and direction was given to your city manager as a labor negotiator. There's no reportable action.
And now what I'm going to do is, um, I know we have many issues on the calendar, but I'm thinking, let us, there's been a request for us to go into the medical marijuana ballot initiative dispensary issue. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna call speakers that wish to address this on that. Um, I'll bring that before us and then we'll continue with the rest of our calendar. Is that okay with council members? Okay, I've got some yeses, so, uh, State Senator Lou Correa, are you here, please? He's in the back? Here he comes. Let me, uh, we'll hear from him first and then after that'll be John Grace and then Susan Donahue. And just for the record, if you can all give us your, your, your address, please. Welcome Senator Lou Correa, I know you were here earlier and, uh, thank you for, for your testimony here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members and citizens of, uh, Santa Ana. Good afternoon. Wanted to talk about a couple of topics, first of all. Excited to be here, but a little depressed. We lost to Belgium today, two to one. World soccer. If you don't know, my, my family's like, "Not doing well."
It was a tough game, Lou, it was towards the end of the game.
Yes, overtime.
That's even a worse loss.
I was hopeful and, but we'll get some of those Santa Ana kids in that soccer team in the next four years. How's that?
They'll know how to kick it into the goal when they're up close and they have the ball, they'll score.
Also wanted to give you an update as to what's going on in Sacramento. A couple of topics, first of all, we'll probably be voting on Thursday on a water bond. Uh, back in 2009, we put a, uh, on the ballot, a bond for the voters to vote on for water. That bond never came up for a vote. Uh, it looks like on Thursday, we'll be replacing that bond with another one. The one that we, uh, were gonna put on the ballot in 2009 was for 12 billion. This one looks to be half of that amount. In terms of Santa Ana, we're looking at possibly getting about $60 million for the Santa Ana watershed, Santa Ana River area. I've got a measure that I've been sponsoring for 10 years now to create the Santa Ana River Conservancy. So we're hoping if you combine some resources along with a conservancy, we'll have 120-mile-long river of life that'll go right through the city of Santa Ana. So hopefully that'll happen. We're monitoring that. The deals, negotiations are happening as we speak right now. Second issue I wanted to talk about, and I'm here as a state senator, but also I'm here as a citizen of, of the good city of Santa Ana, was this issue of medical marijuana. I'm here to let you know what's going on in Sacramento on this topic. And I'm also here to learn from our constituents that, uh, are gonna be commenting hopefully on this issue. And if I can, hopefully I don't go on my time too much.
Let's start on green again, cause it's, uh...
Say, um, I got involved in this issue, uh, of medical marijuana about three years ago when the city of Anaheim came to me. My constituents in the city of Anaheim had issues. In those days, there was a dispensary in the middle of an apartment complex. And folks would go in, would buy their medication in the lower apartment of this apartment building. They'd walk up into the sidewalk and they would medicate. The secondhand smoke would actually go up into the building and you had children, a couple of newborns who were actually getting the effects of this secondhand smoke. So in response to the request, city of Anaheim, I sponsored legislation to modify the existing law. And in addition to not only having a dispensary within 600 feet, 600 feet of a school or playground, my bill would've proposed that you couldn't put a dispensary within 600 feet of a home or residence. That bill made it to the governor's desk. Unfortunately, the governor did not sign that measure. Um, the year after that, um, we began to see another problem arising in our communities, which was, uh, people driving after getting medicated. Um, so the California Police Chiefs Association asked me to sponsor a bill that would essentially dictate zero tolerance for anybody being medicated and driving. That legislation also did not make it through the legislative process. Then, this, earlier this year, the California Police Chiefs Association approached my office about sponsoring a bill to regulate medical marijuana. As all of you know, back in 1996, the Compassionate Use Act was passed by the voters of the state of California. I oppose that measure, but the will of the voters of the state of California was to have medical marijuana in the state of California. That's been 20 years. During those 20 years, only one measure, Senate Bill 420 by Senator Vasconcellos was passed to begin to address medical marijuana in terms of regulating it in the state of California. My latest effort, Senate Bill 1262, to regulate medical marijuana, has made it out of the Senate. It is now in the Assembly, made out of First Committee and moving ahead right now. It is now supported by, again, sponsored by the California Police Chiefs Association and endorsed by the Orange County Deputy Sheriff, Santa Ana Police Officers Association, Long Beach Police, LA County Professional Police Officers Association, Riverside Sheriffs and Sacramento County Deputy Sheriffs Association. This last year in working on this measure has been nothing less than a true learning experience. As I said, for 20 years, what I have discovered is in the state of California, we've essentially put our heads in the sand and essentially denied that this existed in the state of California. So we have an industry that's totally unregulated. We have an area of law that is confusing to police officers. Public safety, police officers don't know what to do when they're out there because the guidelines are very vague. So, this bill, 1262, that I'm carrying right now, is really about regulating and controlling medical marijuana. It is not about making it legal for recreational use, but to control it and regulating. One of my star witnesses, Dr. Monahan, a Republican, that's why he introduced himself, a Republican doctor from Riverside, called me one day and said, "Lou, I want to talk to you about medical marijuana." I said, "Well, come on down." So he came to my office and he said, "Lou," he says, "I got a daughter, 12-years-old. Since the day she was born, she's been having seizures. I've tried everything in the book, nothing stops the seizures." And then he said, "Three months ago, I tried CDB, which is an element in medical marijuana." And he said, "Since then, my daughter does not have seizures anymore." So he's very passionate, but the problem is, he told me, was when he buys medical marijuana, he buys it in oil. Problem is, he doesn't want to get his daughter high. The CDB, which stops the seizures, versus the THC, which I guess relieves, relieves your stress, you don't know what you get because, is this supposed to be medical or not? And if it's medical, is it labeled or not? But you can't really label it because there are any regulations. So these are the issues I'm trying to address right now in Sacramento. It's an agricultural product, so the Farm Bureau has to regulate it. It takes up water to grow, so the water folks have to look at it. If it is terribly medical, then it's subject to the Sherman Act in terms of labeling. These are the issues, um, I'm trying to address right now. Specifically, my bill will create a new Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation within Department of Consumer Affairs. It'll give the Bureau the power necessary to administer the new program. It'll require the Bureau to deny license for past criminal convictions of drug trafficking, embezzlement, fraud, deceit, or serious violent felonies. It'll prohibit licensees from holding licenses in more than one class. It allows the Bureau to award provisional licenses if the facility is in compliance with local ordinances. It will also allow the Bureau to deny license if it'll create law enforcement problems or add an undue concentration of licenses in any specific place. So what we're doing is moving ahead with a regulatory environment. And, uh, that's part of what my bill does. It is still a work in progress, but it actually has made it through most of the legislative process and we're hoping to get it to the governor's desk very soon. Let me also, if I can, take a few more minutes just to explain why I'm here. I flew down from Sacramento today because I thought this was important for me as a state senator, but it's also for, important for me as a citizen of the city of Santa Ana.
Lou, just let me stop you a second. Just, let's turn off the red light. You're gonna conclude, keep going. I just don't want the red light shining there on you. You, you're a state senator, you flew down. This is very important for us. Please continue, Lou.
Thank you. Like a lot of you here, the biggest investment in my life is my house, which is here in the city of Santa Ana. My children go to Santa Ana schools. I have my daughter that's gonna start at Godenas in two months and my boy that's going to Santa Ana High School. Many people don't know this, but my wife was jogging on the Santa Ana River a year and a half ago and she was attacked. Very ugly situation. So what happens in the city is very near and dear to me. And like in Anaheim three years ago, if you're looking at doing something in Santa Ana, I want to make sure you do it right. I don't want dispensaries in our neighborhoods. I want to make sure that people medicate. It's away from our children and our neighborhoods and away from businesses. I know you have an initiative that appears to have made it onto the ballot. I don't want to see an initiative that was paid for by special interest to get on the ballot be the initiative, be the rules and regulations that control this business in the city of Santa Ana. That is not good public policy. I want to see you, the council, come up with a regulations with initiative that addresses the concerns of these individuals here. I want to see something that protects my children and of equal importance is, rules and regulations that give Chief Rojas the ability and the tools to make sure that they can do the job. That is why I'm here today. I know the issue of taxes is a very delicate one for folks. I want to say that if you do look at some kind of initiative, that there's enough of a tax there to make sure that you can fund the public safety functions that are needed to make sure you, you monitor and you police these activities in this city and you keep them away from our homes and our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Correa. John, uh, Grace, followed by Susan Donahue, followed by Candace Haas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. What an unenviable position I'm in. Um, John Grace, I'm speaking, uh, for the organization, Orange County Normal, uh, who is, uh, who has been instrumental in working on, uh, the citizens initiative, um, going on the ballot. And we're here to talk a little bit about the, the initiative that the city is putting on the ballot, um, because we're concerned about good regulation versus just regulation. Um, for 20 years, um, my senator has done an excellent job of talking about how for 20 years, there has been no regulation, yet the original bill required the legislature to come up with regulations, which, uh, except for, uh, Bill 420, there's been nothing that's happened. The concerns we... The concerns we have about some areas that you have in years that haven't been changed have to do with areas of patient confidentiality. When you try to regulate from the position that this is a crime and you're regulating criminals, you come up with the kind of regulations you have, which are de facto bans. It's discrimination, it's the Marijuana Tax Act, all over again. The area in the measure requiring the testing of marijuana, when you have not the ability to do that kind of a system, but it sounds like the senator is coming up with a more comprehensive one, and we think that that's where the testing should, or the procedures for testing and how it should happen, should come down from Sacramento. The possibility is left open in years of increasing the taxes from the 5% that are in there, when we're talking about, this is the medical marijuana we're talking about. We're not talking about recreational marijuana. We're talking about people that are often on disability or lower income, that are trying to pay for their own medicine without insurance, and now you're going to add increased taxes on top of it, because we don't think you've left enough in there for your, for your police regulations. We think it's going to take more, that you're going to need to spend more on police than you've already looked at. The areas in there about what kinds of transactions and how you define a collective are going to be problematic. You've set it up to where if husband and wife are both medical, that now they are a collective in their own household.
John, if you can please conclude.
Thank you very much, sir. We're considering, we are concerned that some of the regulations you're coming up with will amount to a de facto ban. We'd like you to work with patients and work with the state to come up with regulations that are good regulations and that will not drive this further underground. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Donahue, I believe it is, followed by Candace Haas. Give us your address, please, Sean.
Sure. I live in the Jack London District of Oakland, California, although I work in Sacramento. I want to thank, obviously, the mayor, city council, and state senator for attending. Incidentally, in the neighborhood I live in Oakland, there's four dispensaries within a mile, and our U.S. Senator Barbara Boxer has her district office there. She has her condo there. It's one of the safest neighborhoods in Oakland. The idea necessarily that any dispensary is a bad dispensary, that any dispensary next to our homes, next to our neighborhoods, is necessarily a scourge, I simply have to disagree with that. If we look at the record of other cities up and down the state, including in our state capital of the city of Sacramento, where they allow for dispensaries in commercially-zoned areas, directly across the street from a Safeway, there's a dispensary. They're a good neighbor. They clean up the streets, they sweep, they have security, they reduce crime in the neighborhood. That has been proven time and time again. Nobody knows it's there. That's what a good dispensary could do. So anyway, ultimately, what I hope the city council and what the city staff works on is a good set of regulations that will incentivize the good actors, that will allow for good dispensaries to be able to exist here within the city of Santa Ana and provide access to patients, and that it's very compatible with what we hope to see moving at the state level, which is a great regulatory structure that handles a lot of the things that perhaps cities are not best suited for, including testing laboratories, certification, including edibles. It's great that the senator mentioned Sherman Act. I agree with many of the things that we've been working on this year. What I do want to make sure is that the city of Santa Ana, whatever ballot measure, whatever ordinance ultimately gets determined, has something that's really good, that can be defended, that everybody can be, well, it's quite often said that it's not a good bill unless everybody's unhappy, but I don't agree with that. I think that we can come up with something where everybody is reasonably happy, and we can have a period that's quite different than the period that's existed for the last couple of years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Candace, followed by Robin Cook.
Hello, everybody. My name is Candace Haas, and I am the author and the backer of the Medical Cannabis Restriction and Limitation Initiative. I am not involved in any collective. I've never worked at one, I've never owned one. I'm the operator, I am the founder of a nonprofit organization, Orange County Normal, and after seeing the city not taking any lead on resolving the problem with medical marijuana, that's when I authored and gathered the signature. So it's incorrect when you call it the collective-backed initiative. It's more correct to say it's a citizen or nonprofit-backed initiative. The reason I'm here today to talk to you guys is actually with the argument that you guys published or going to have published in the voter's guide in response to my initiative. I've been very cooperative throughout the process. I wanted to participate and have you guys write the best ordinance or measure possible. If I was your opponent, I would try to have you guys write something bad that could be challenged in court, but I want something to be passed that's legitimate and could help everybody. I had a phone call with Mayor Pro Tem, Sal Tinero, before the 617 council meeting. He asked me not to address some of the inaccuracies that Karen Halusa had presented during her presentation to the council, and I think some of that information may have persuaded you guys to go forward on your own version when some of the points that were given were inaccurate. In your guys' statement that's going to be published in the voter guide, four of the council members signed their name to it, saying that it was true and accurate. The first point on it was saying that our initiative would only require 500 feet from a collective to a school. If the city or any city council members would have taken the time to read our summary, our 500-word summary that the attorney prepared for you guys, you would have seen, first thing, that that's incorrect. So I don't know why you made it a point to mention that it was 500 feet, because that then makes it inconsistent with state law, the state law that the senator has passed. We also have some issues with some of the other points that you guys had made, saying that there was no cap on dispensaries, when in fact, our initiative is, the number of collectives that is allowed is tied to population, so there is a cap on a number of collectives. In the rebuttal arguments, Mayor Pro Tem said that our initiative only allows a 2% tax, which is far below the standard business tax rate, but I don't think he was clear, and he didn't read the initiative, and that's in addition to the sales tax. So again, we have been very forthright in trying to work with you guys. I think that you guys have some false information that's going to be printed into the ballot argument booklet, and I'm very concerned about that. I don't know what we can do at this point to revise those statements, but thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Haas, can you give us your address, please?
Oh, yeah. 22, 22762 Aspen, Lake Forest.
Thank you so much. Next speaker is Mr. Robin Cook, followed by Dan Peters.
No drug dealers in Santa Ana.
Okay, I'm not...
I know drug dealers in Santa Ana.
I'm not totally against the initiatives, but, you know, the future depends on what you guys vote today.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Next speaker is Dan Peters, and follow, on deck is Mr. Gus Lopez.
Thank you, council, Mayor Pro Tem. Angela, thank you. I reside at 1038 West Orange Road up in North Santa Ana here. I also want to make clear, I serve on the board of Morrison Park Neighborhood Association, and I'm also the chairman for the Concert Committee, and I am not speaking in any capacity or speaking for either one of those organizations. I've been a longtime active in, you know, local, local events that we do in the neighborhood for almost 20 years now. I've been in a house here, I've raised my kids here in Santa Ana for more than 22 years. And this is something that is kind of near and dear to my heart in that, you know, I have a friend of mine who was diagnosed with cancer some time ago and was greatly comforted by the ability to use medical marijuana, and the fact that he was able to get it in a legal and forthright way where everything was out in the open, and I really want to encourage the council to maintain that. He's had problems now where a lot of other cities and municipalities have effectively or just outright closed down many of the clinics in the cities that he lives in, and so he has to continue to go further and further out. I do believe in sensible regulation. This is not something that is, you know, you want your kids to have, no more than alcohol or cigarettes, so I would caution you to make sure you enact good regulation, but I also don't want things that are basically regulate things out of existence. If we push something underground, as has been proven in the drug war that we've been fighting since 1930, when marijuana prohibition was first started, this is unsuccessful. All we have done is create corruption in governments internationally and locally, so we're better off to know where things are, to be able to regulate it. State of Colorado has had great success in terms of taxation, where it has exceeded all of their projections, and I, for one, as a resident of the city of Santa Ana, am in support and favor of the city of Santa Ana having dispensaries in the city limits that are accurately regulated and responsibly regulated, and I do thank you for your time.
Thank you. I now have Guy Lopez, and Guy, if you can give us your address, and then followed by Elizabeth Lopez, and same request.
Mr. Mayor, there have been some people that were not asking you for your addresses because you've already put it on the, on the green card, so if you didn't do it, that's why I asked for your address, just to clarify.
Thank you.
Because I don't want people to say you asked for my address but not theirs.
Are you going to want that address, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, because there's nothing here, just for the record.
1664 West Wisteria, Santa Ana, California. And hello, my name is Guy Lopez. I am a Santa Ana resident. Since the last council meeting, and I got to say this now, it's good to see you, Sal, via phone last time. There has been some changes to the measure that the city is voting on today, that the advocates feel that it creates issues that need to be corrected. The new version requires patients to be 21 and older to enter a medical marijuana collective themselves. We understand that you have included these provisions to keep 18-years-older in high schools from accessing medical marijuana in your collectives. I think the city is overlooking the fact that some of the, some of the most needed and deserving patients in are veterans. Santa Ana has a high potential for veterans, and this measure has, this measure may have unintended consequences to make it harder for them to get medical, to get their medicine they need. Excuse me, I'm very nervous. First time speaking at a council meeting.
That's all right. You're doing good.
Um, where was I? There it was. There is also a very dangerous new provision that we consider to be our poison pill. The council has asked the staff to include a new language in the measure to allow them to amend or completely repeal, repel, repeal, there are, there, the entire initiative without voter approval. This measure is costing the taxpayers tens and thousands of dollars to run, and it is unacceptable for the council to spend this amount of money to just repeal it later. We suggest that taking out the language, allowing them to appeal and include a sunset cause, there is issues that can be revised. Another concern in the new version, all the measures is the unlimited powers of the police department and the tax collectors to create new rules for the safety permits and the renewal process. These should be led, laid out in tax measures. If more times is needed to lay out these complete processes, then the council is not ready to move forward at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth, followed by Douglas Lanfair.
Hello, council. My name is Elizabeth Lopez, and I'm a business owner in the city of Santa Ana. I'm here today to address the current version of the measure to regulate medical marijuana in front of the council. I have reviewed the proposed alternatives prepared by the staff, and a majority of cases, advocates would agree with their recommendations for, instead, it would be beneficial to the patients and to the city to consider the staff's alternative zoning plan and allow access outside industrial areas. It can be difficult for patients who don't have their own transportation to get across the city and to these hard-to-reach industrial areas. Adding a minimum of collect, of two collectives per each district and allowing them to locate in a P or a C5 if there is not a suitable M1 or M2 zone is a very responsible, responsible step towards safe access in all parts of the city. It is very beneficial to the patients and to the city to remove the cap of on-medical marijuana collectives. Advocates also back the alternative to the lottery progress for creating the sequence in which the medical marijuana applicants will be reviewed. The application process the city staff has recommended utilizing and requests for proposals progress is a better solution and may prevent legitation. Legitation, sorry. I'm a little nervous, this is my first time speaking in front of the council. The application progress the city staff has recommended utilizing their request, I already said that, sorry. Advocates and patients back an alternative to the conditional use permit progress the city staff recommended where the director pursues restrictions, then the collective apply for a public safety permit from the police department. We approve of the reduced hours, and most good actors already operate by similar hours to encourage a safe environment for patients. We do not appreciate the reduction in separation from one collective to another. We feel 500 feet is reasonable. That's it.
Thank you, Douglas Lanfair, followed by Evangeline Gorwinski.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, and the hard-working city staff. I appreciate the opportunity to commend planning, legal, and other contributing city staff to the progress made on the proposed ordinance the city intends to offer to the voters on the November ballot. It is not perfect, but significantly better than the first draft. I understand the limited time the city council allowed staff to complete the monumental task that other municipalities have taken many months to perfect. It was entirely the city council's arrogance to ignore this important issue for over a decade so far. I will give praise where appropriate, and I will equally call out political malfeasance where displayed by city council members. City council member and Mayor Pro Tem, Sal Tinero, has very, was very insistent on writing the formal city opposition to the signature-approved initiative presently approved for the November ballot. I do not believe it is in the political proclivity of this city council to deceive, lie, or omit facts to the citizens of Santa Ana. The deceit I am speaking of occurred on the formal opposition to the signature-approved medical marijuana ballot initiative. Sal Tinero wrote the opposition, and three council members read and endorsed the statements made on the document. In the formal opposition, the medical marijuana ballot initiative the city council does not like, Mayor Pro Tem completely lied to the citizens of Santa Ana. The approved ballot initiative provides for a 600-foot separation from schools and other sensitive areas. Sal Tinero wrote in his opposition, "The ballot initiative that marijuana will be made available 500 feet of schools and parks," a complete lie. Fabrication and misrepresentation to the facts by this city council. Not a single time in the formal opposition does the Mayor Pro Tem write the word "medical" when referring to marijuana. How is this remotely honest to write hundreds of words in opposition, yet not accurately refer to the issue before the voters, "medical marijuana"? You merely refer to it as marijuana, Sal. Your opposition and rebuttal continues to classify the signature-approved collective as written by collective owners. Ms. Candace Haas stood before you tonight and told you she's from Normal, not from any collectives or cooperatives. Again, a lie. Not factually correct. Does the Mayor Pro Tem coaches debate teams with the instructions to deceive, mislead, omit, and completely lie about facts? I would hope and expect not. You should be ashamed of your behavior displayed in this instance. The council members who signed that they read and approved the formal opposition should be equally ashamed of your public display of contempt for veracity to your citizens. Shame... Shame on all of you. I would have completed in time for one moment. Senator Correa stated the medical preparation that helped his 12...
Douglas, if you could please some food.
One moment, I was overcome by applause. His 12-year-old constituent that uses a concentrated form of cannabis would be forbidden in your ordinance. That is not serving the medical community. What it is doing is pandering to the Police Chiefs Association and other law enforcement.
Douglas, now after that, it's Evangeline Goransky, and then Mika Denny.
Relax, I'm not up here to get after you. I just had, I've been reading the Act, okay, and I have a couple suggestions for you. So, first of all, let me say good evening to everyone up here, okay? I'm Evangeline Goransky, and I'm president of Comlink. I'm here for the neighborhood associations of Santa Ana, but I'm not here in that position, I'm here as a resident, a person that's concerned about my city, too. I have some suggestions for you to consider in your deliberations on the marijuana dispensaries. According to the Santa Ana Medical Cannabis Restriction and Limitation Act, I was reading that the other night, and I noticed that Section 2, Paragraph F, states that access to medical cannabis should occur in a safe and orderly manner to protect the patients and the community. Now, my suggestion is, our city has four quadrants. If you would place one dispensary in each quadrant, that would only be four. That way, all medical patients will then have easy access to their medication. There won't be any problem that the patients will have to incur by going across the city, going across the town, and trying to find where the next place for their medication would be. This way, they'll not incur any hardships or traveling expenses throughout the city. And, therefore, anyone in Santa Ana purchasing marijuana from any other source other than a city dispensary, designated dispensary, should be fined whether that person has a medical marijuana card or not. This way, you can eliminate all illegal sales. And something else you might want to think about, as I continue to read on, was taxation. Taxation is Section 2, Paragraph H. Taxation of marijuana should be at least equal to the costs of enforcing the city ordinances with regards to marijuana. These are just a couple of suggestions that I have for you to think about when you're listening to the staff and their recommendations on how to handle this for future voting, so that the voters do not go to the polls confused. And one thing I'd like to say, too, is that in the past, we have had paragraphs on our voting that one paragraph says one thing, and the next paragraph contradicts what the first one said. And there we sit wondering, now how are we supposed to vote? So, council members, when you're getting ready to do this, think black and white. Don't think gray. Black and white tells exactly what it is. Gray, there we sit wondering, what do they mean? Just a couple suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mika Denny, followed by Edwin Gomez.
Hello, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mika Denny, I'm the West Floral Park Neighborhood Watch Captain, and I'm also on the board of the West Floral Park Neighborhood Association. I'm here to represent myself. We have about 600 homes in West Floral Park, and we have a school, Santiago Elementary, which I attended when I was kindergarten. And we also have two dispensaries on Baker and 17th. They opened up last year at the end of 2013, and since then, those neighbors who have lived there for over 30 years, some of which are Hispanic and couldn't be here to speak for themselves, said that there is increased traffic, increased noise, increased loitering. They used to know who was walking down the street, and now they don't. It's very upsetting to our neighborhood. This week alone, I've had two cars, full of men, park in front of my house and smoke pot, including the driver. 600 feet is not enough. 600 feet is two football fields. That is not going to do anything for Santiago Elementary, and it does nothing for my neighbors who are literally in the parking lot of the dispensaries. Please reconsider the 600 feet. Put it in the industrial zone, far away from neighborhoods and children. Thank you.
Thank you, Edwin, followed by Steve Rocco.
My name is Edwin Gomez, I'm a longtime resident of Santa Ana.
Yeah, give us your address, Edwin. I think it's on Durant. Please go ahead.
And, well, I'm just here to say thank you for the initiative. As a medical marijuana patient myself, I see that there's a lot of changes that need to be done, and a lot of things that need to be regulated, and a lot of things that need to be acknowledged, but for the time being, I see that you guys are trying to work with it. I know the guidelines are somewhat vague, but at least there's something on the ballot, and the initiative needs some momentum at the moment, I guess. And I just want to say I thank you for the effort, and any momentum you guys might be adding to the movement, and it's just my two cents.
Thank you very much. Steve Rocco, followed by Alex Vega.
Well, I missed you guys last time. I was the first one here to speak last time, but I didn't get to because I was thrown out. And the next day, I went to City Hall, and the security guard, not the security guard, the wonderful female who heads reception, held the elevator so I couldn't go up. But anyway, I was followed, and the security guard had his gloves on. It's nice that he didn't want to get my blood on him. And several of the wonderful people, staff, who on both sides of me, managed to talk to them and keep me from getting murdered in City Hall. And I realize that that's no big deal to you, but it means a lot to me. So, at least you are state of the city vigilito, that you acknowledge that Rocco has sat at your table, you acknowledge that partnership exists, which is organized crime. We're both in Wikipedia, we know about the partnership. It made the headlines in Santa Ana Register. You talk about newspaper partnerships in the OC Weekly. You mention it again in the article about the city of the state. This is all about you. This is all about organized crime and mirrors magic. You're on the way out. This doesn't mean anything, because you can repeal this at any time. And I understood what you did by changing around the schedule from last time and changing it this time, and so I don't get to speak. Well, I'm here to tell you that you're scared. You know, in the old days, you didn't have a cop sitting there, you didn't have a cop over there. You are perfectly wonderful, and your 20 years of corruption, perversion, which you've brought to the city in 20 years, then you still haven't gotten it in your mind that you need to leave, okay? So, forget about marijuana, forget about the initiative, just leave while you still have the chance, okay? We'll see you again.
Alex Vega, followed by Thomas Gordon.
Organized crime, man. My name is Alex Vega, I reside in 843 North Broadway, and the issue that I want to talk about is smoking. And I've been working with the homeless issue for three years, and it's a problem. And we got a unique force. Our police are unique, because I put myself in a situation of trying to help with this issue. And if you talk to the people, 80% start by smoking marijuana. And they end up smoking that pipe. That pipe for them is everything. They don't care about their kids, they don't care about anything. And it creates a problem. If it's medical marijuana, like our grandmothers, when they put in alcohol, grab an alcohol and put it in yourself, or make pills for them. Because if you teach the kids to smoke, then what's next? The crystal ball? So, we can have more population, more population outside? And then, Mr. Tenahero, you teach your kid to play baseball, and then maybe he's nervous or something, oh, I smoke a joint, it's going to be good. So, he can smoke a joint, and because he has a condition, no, smoking is bad. So, if it's medical and everything, why make money out of it? Why try to run a campaign based over the money they're going to give you? So, we are a green city, why don't you just put seats throughout the city, so people can get the marijuana free? That's an idea, right? Because we're going to help the community, so they can grow their own, too.
Alex, why don't you back up a bit, so people can understand what I'm saying?
Well, like I said, it's about the business, it's about having people addicted to something, and they create a habit of smoking. Like I said, I challenge you to go and see the homeless, and talk to them, and how do you start? So, you want to create, now we got a homeless city for scouting, because they don't, oh, there's a homeless here, they say, oh, where's Santa Ana? So, we got more problems. Think about that. The habit of smoking is bad. So, if they want to prescribe marijuana, well, there's many ways they can do it. Like I said, put in a grab of alcohol, pills, whatever, the habit of smoking is bad. And don't teach your kids bad habits, Mr. Tenahero, you too. Are you still smoking, you still selling, Mitchel? You still in the business? Thank you.
Thomas Gordon.
Roughly two years ago tonight, you guys honored and closed the council meeting in memory of Os Mara Mesa. I don't know if you remember who Os Mara Mesa was. She was a little five-year-old Santa Ana resident who was crossing 17th Street with her mother and her six-year-old sister, when somebody with a vial full of marijuana that she drove all the way from Fraser Park, halfway down the state to buy marijuana in the city of Santa Ana. She was crossing the street, and this person that was intoxicated with marijuana in their car blew through the light, scooped her up, and kept on going. Killed her, severely injured her mother and her sister. 33-year-old Luis Cowan of Fraser Park came all the way here to buy drugs that you want to make available tonight. I think it's kind of funny that you also have Agenda 20B, Agenda Item 20B. You guys are looking to accept a grant in the amount of $119,000, almost $120,000, from this, basically, the State Justice Assistance Grant for the Anti-Drug Abuse Enforcement Team Program. So, you want the state to give you $120,000 to keep drugs out, and then you're going to turn around and vote to let drugs in? Signs a horrible message. What are we teaching kids? What are we teaching kids? Some people that were up here tonight talking about the people that were smoking marijuana in their property, this kid here on the left, I'll leave these with you. He's a kid. This is a kid that's smoking marijuana. He doesn't look like he has cancer, doesn't look like he has any illness. These are all children that are smoking marijuana here in the city of Santa Ana. We say that crime's not going to come. I disagree with you. March 2012, three teenagers and an adult were arrested right up there on 17th Street, breaking into a dispensary. One of them got trapped breaking into the dispensary, a teenager. The city of Denver, the cost to enforce its medical marijuana regulations far exceeds its tax revenue that it brings in, far exceeds. The city council last week just was voting to authorize an additional $1.8 million for new police officers because of the enhanced crime, and there's enhanced deaths. They're currently doing a study, because people are buying edibles and ending up dead or severely injured in the city of Denver. That's a fact. That's easily, I've sent that to people on this council, so they can look that up. No, that's a fact. You can laugh all you want. And lastly, we say that it's a legal business. I have no problem with medical marijuana. This isn't what we're going to do here. It's going to be like Denver, it's going to be a recreational marijuana business. The city of Denver, there's currently people that basically drive armored trucks that drive marijuana to the business and take cash away from the business. They're carrying full automatic weapons, they're wearing full-body armor. If that's what you want on the streets of Santa Ana, then go ahead and vote for this thing tonight that will legalize drugs on the streets of Santa Ana, and remember Os Mara Mesa when you vote for it.
With that, that was the last speaker on this item, so I will now bring it to council for discussion and consideration. Let me call on, yes, Steve McGuigan. Come on down if I didn't call you. Steve McGuigan, please.
Pays to get here early. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm glad to be able to talk to you about this item again, and it was very encouraging earlier to hear Senator Correa's words about how the state is finally going to try and take control of this situation. It has been their responsibility and the federal responsibility to actually come up with regulation that would make for a responsible distribution of this medical item. The current situation we have is not by any long stretch of the imagination a medical situation. There are no clinics in Santa Ana that dispense a medical product like that. These are dispensaries, these are retail storefronts, these are businesses. It's a $17 billion industry, and when I told the senator that, he corrected me and said, no, it's a $100 billion industry. My mistake. This is a lot of money, this is a big thing going on, but that doesn't make it right, it doesn't make it legal. I understand why you're doing this tonight. You need an answering ordinance for the one that's on the ballot tonight. I don't know if you're aware, but the city of Riverside, and I hope your city attorney has discussed this with you, the city of Riverside was given a ballot initiative that was very similar to the one that Normal has presented, and they had their signatures and so forth, and the city of Riverside, in a position of strong leadership, stepped up and said, no, we're not going to put that on the ballot because it violates federal law, and we're not going to be complicit in helping somebody violate federal law. That is one stand that you could take, and I hope that your city attorney has discussed that with you and given you that option, because that's not an option that we are here discussing tonight. I am president of a neighborhood association right here in this city. I know that I've spoken with several of my residents, and they want, well, they want a complete ban. They want exactly what the law says you're supposed to have right now. And I understand that we went through financial times, that it did not allow you the resources to do that. One of the things on the agenda tonight, one of your staff reports mentioned that you have $41.7 million in reserves now, money that was not contemplated before. So, to spend a couple million dollars doing that level of enforcement now would not really hurt you that much, and it's what a lot of the residents are asking for. It's a very difficult thing for us to have to swallow, to see you guys up there tonight saying, if we can get enough tax money, we'll go ahead and allow these things in our city. Because for us, it's not about tax money. It's a health and safety issue. It's a public safety issue, it's a quality of life issue. Mika spoke to you about what's going on in her neighborhood, and that's mirrored throughout the city. When you came up with the ordinance that is before you tonight, or that was before you, the original language said it will be confined to just industrial areas. Now, we're looking at it in wards that don't have those industrial areas. My neighborhood and association is the highest concentration of residences anywhere in the city. Anywhere you put it, over on the West End, we're going to be impacted, quite frankly. I don't know if you can fit one in, using the standards you're using. Please listen to the residents and give us what we're asking for. We elected you to do our business up there, and we need to be the people that you're listening to on this. I understand what you're trying to do, but understand, too, that the residents are very frustrated by the approach that you've had to take to try and help resolve this problem. Thank you.
Now, I think that was the last speaker, so I want to bring it back to council for a comment, question, consideration. Who would like to go first? Mayor Protem? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, thank you to all the speakers, whether I agreed with you or not. This is an issue that I think there is leadership being shown when the discussion is actually being had. I have been opposed to going 100% all-out to shut down the medical marijuana collectives here. And the reason for that is that it's extremely costly, and we don't... And the reason for that is that it's extremely costly, and we don't have that kind of revenue, nor do we have that kind of manpower. $2 million, if we take out of our general fund, is not gonna be just a one-time $2 million. This is going to require a constant move towards that. And then that, that brings the question on, then where are we gonna, what are we gonna not fix in our city? So are we gonna take away more after-school programs? Are we gonna stop taking care of our parks in the manner that we should? Those are a lot of, we have a lot of, if you, you saw our strategic plan, there's a lot of needs out in our community, and people came to the forefront to discuss those. I wanna be able to continue to do that, but at the same time, we need to regulate. One of the speakers came up here and, you know, he attacked, and that's fine, I'm used to that, I'm a big boy. But one of the things that, that he talked about and tried to explain was that, that this is not the ordinance that's already qualified for the ballot, is not, was not backed or created by people in the business of selling medical marijuana. The reality is, is that it was backed by people who are selling medical marijuana. And that's okay, that's your prerogative in our country, but let's, you're talking about being forthright, let's be forthright. You know, one of the main issues that I didn't like about that particular initiative is that it didn't stop mobile marijuana dispensaries from riding around our city and selling marijuana in neighborhoods. It didn't stop that. Nobody wants to talk about that, we haven't highlighted that. The other thing is, I do agree with you that 600 feet is, I mean, 500, 600 feet, it's still two football fields. So you have to walk 30 more yards to get, you know, to the other, it just, it, it's too close to schools, too close to areas, parks, and so forth. So you, and I agree with the last speaker, you put us, you entrusted us with leading the city. And it's not black and white. I don't, you have to weigh the pros and the cons. And after weighing all this out, I do believe there are legitimate patients out there who need medical marijuana. And I do believe that we have to allow them to receive their medicine in areas that take them away from schools, parks, and so forth. Also, that it restricts mobile marijuana dispensaries from riding around Floral Park or any other neighborhood and setting up shop and dispensing and then moving to another neighborhood. And that's what this first ordinance does. When I saw that, I thought, we have an issue here. We need to go ahead and produce something that's, that's gonna fight that particular issue, because we already, there already, there are medical marijuana collectives operating here in the city of Santa Ana. That occurs right now. But we don't have the means by, to control them and get them out of your neighborhoods. And that's why this alternative that I believe staff has drafted is something that I think would be a better alternative than what we have there before us. Ladies and gentlemen, if we don't adapt some, adopt something today, we are going to have to live with that, no matter what. At least in our, in our initiative that we're looking at tonight, we can come back for review. We can make amendments later on, if we need to. Are we gonna get it 100% right the first time? Of course not. Nobody's perfect. But it gives us the opportunity to still make changes to it. We do have an issue. There are a lot of collectives that do operate in, under the state mandates and follow all the rules. But there are a lot of them out there who have come into our city that are basically riding around like cowboys. For the ones that are operating the way you're supposed to operate, I thank you. And it's those other dispensaries that give you the bad name. Those are the ones we wanna get rid of. Those are the ones we wanna take away from the city, so that we don't have to have the issues that we have right now. You know, I was speaking with a very bright individual by the name of, he was former judge, Jim Gray. And he shared with me, when he was a judge, how many people he had to put in jail because of something that, that had happened to them. He talked about testing. Under our policy, it has a very strict form of testing. You get to test the marijuana and sure, and ensure that it is the type of medical marijuana that is what's going to benefit patients. You know what he shared with me? He ran into a meth, a meth, a person in his, in his courtroom who was being arrested for, he was, he was addicted to meth. And he said, you know how he got addicted to meth? Because he bought the marijuana out on the street. One day, the drug dealer laced it in meth and gave it to him. He didn't tell him that it had meth in it, and he got addicted to meth, and he became a, a customer for life. He says, and that's how people sometimes get addicted to these other drugs. We're talking about controlling, we're talking about putting them in, in areas that are not going to reduce the quality of life for our community. I just need to be very direct. I, I've, I am very strongly in favor of having an area where people can get their medicine, but keep them out of our neighborhoods, stop any mobile marijuana dispensaries from riding around, and also limiting the signage in front of those dispensaries. And so I am 100% in favor of us going forward and coming up with something tonight that we can put before the voters, because ultimately, it's up to you. At the end of the day, the voters of Santa Ana get to make that decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before I go to another speaker, let me just go to staff, I don't know if Karen's around, or if the city manager or attorney, I, I think it's just appropriate that maybe, you know, make a brief presentation and talk about what some of the things are, then what some of those options are and what they mean, and then let's have a discussion in that context.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, Karen Halluz is here, and I'd like for her to make a presentation exactly to that point, to talk about the alternatives that have been presented and some of the changes from the last meeting based on council input. Karen.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As you know, this is a very charged topic. It's one that we've all been working on very diligently for a good number of months now and even beyond that. During the last council meeting in between then and now, we've also had the opportunity to outreach to some of the members of the collective and cooperative community and to get some of their feedback as well. So we've really been trying to listen to all sides of the argument and provide you with the best information that we can, so that you can make an informed decision. Just a bit of background, everyone knows we started down this path in February of 2013 on this latest iteration, when the Medical Cannabis Restriction and Limitation Initiative gained enough signatures for the November ballot. Moving through this timeline to where we are today, June 17th, the city council did direct staff to come up with language for a competing ballot initiative that would allow a limited number of dispensaries with, with regulations. That was considered and continued to July 1st, and then further considered and continued to tonight, where we are tonight for July 1st. In between the last council meeting and today, we did receive additional feedback from members of the council and the advocate community, and the recommendations and alternatives we have for you tonight reflect that additional information. Let's first look at the changes that were made to the draft ordinance that is in the version of the clean draft ordinance that you have before you tonight. These are the result of directions that we got at the last council meeting. They represent policy changes that a majority of the council asked us to draft in the draft initiative. The first of those was the removal of the cap. The previous initiative had a cap of no more than 12 collectives or cooperatives, that has been removed altogether. The second is a reduction in the hours of operation. The hours as they are in the ordinance right now are 10 to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and 11 to 7:00 p.m. on Sunday. And in Sonia and mine's conversation with several members of the advocate community, they did mention to us that they felt these hours were acceptable. The third policy change is to reduce the separation requirement. The council asked us to reduce the separation requirement between dispensaries from 1,000 feet to 500 feet, but to retain the separation requirement from homes, schools, and parks at 1,000 feet. The council asked for there to be language built into the ordinance that would give the council authority and flexibility to make changes in the future. And the language in the ordinance now does reserve the authority of the council to make future amendments without voter approval. And finally, some language to address potential conflicts with competing measures. The ordinance now does clarify that if approved by the voters, the council initiative would render competing measures null and void. So those are the universe of policy changes that were made, those are in the draft initiative before you today. In addition, there are several technical changes that were made, and these were done in the interest of removing or amending items that might be the subject of legal challenge. Those items were to clarify that requests for video recordings must be by consent through a warrant or court order, clarify that agents, employees, and volunteers can be cited for violations. It clarifies that proposed grocery receipts tax will not be adjusted by both a percentage and inflation. And it provides that violations of the proposed ordinance are subject to penal code penalties and modifies requirements regarding the maintenance of records. Those changes are also reflected in the draft ordinance before you. This next category of changes are additional alternatives. These are the result of this feedback that we've received in between the last council meeting and today, and they've been drafted in such a way that there is additional language that's specifically in the ordinance where you could essentially select that alternative and replace the alternate, the, the draft language that's in the ordinance right now, you could replace it tonight with that alternative language. And let me go through what those additional alternatives are. The first of these would expand the zones where the collectives and cooperatives would be allowed. As you know, right now, the language in the ordinance restricts them to only M1 and M2 zones, subject to the separation requirements that I previously stated. The additional alternative would allow them in C5 and P zones in wards where there was no suitable industrially-zoned land. That doesn't mean that there might not be industrial land, but if it was disqualified due to separation restrictions, then they could look for C5 or P zones. That's a commercial zone on an arterial or professional office zones. No more than two per ward in these zones. And specifically, that's Alternative Section 18-615. Now, before I go to the next alternative, I want to walk you through a couple of maps, because we did do an analysis on how many new areas would the expansion of these zones actually net. This first map shows the way that the ordinance is written today with the allowance of collectives and cooperatives only in industrial zones. And this is the map that we showed at the previous presentation. The areas in purple are the M1 and M2 zones where collectives and cooperatives would be allowed. Those take into account the separation from homes, schools, and parks, and then within those, only 500 feet from another dispensary. Everything in gray are the areas that would be disqualified. Yes?
Yeah, the, how, how, how far would they be from schools and parks?
Homes, schools, and parks would all be 1,000 feet.
1,000 feet?
1,000 feet.
And just to make sure that the public knows, the 500 feet is between dispensaries.
That's correct.
Not internally.
Exactly right.
Not from parks.
Yes. We had previously had 1,000 feet, the council directed us to change that to 500 feet between dispensaries, but retain the 1,000 feet between homes, schools, and parks. So this map shows you where dispensaries, I'm sorry, collectives and cooperatives could be located within those purple areas. By adding the P and the C5 zones and still maintaining the 1,000-foot separation from homes, schools, and parks, you end up with only a couple of additional locations. And I'm sorry, the pointer isn't going to allow me to show you.
Can you just highlight?
Yeah. If you look on the lower right-hand side where the purple area is, you can see now there's sort of a pink area that's added to it. The only other area, I'm sorry, also on the left side of the screen, lower-left side, in that industrial area, you can also see the addition of a pink area, that's office zoning. So it opens up additional acreage for dispensaries, collectives, and cooperatives in those locations. The only other location where this would occur is on the eastern terminus of First Street, almost as you get to the border with Tustin. Now, the reason for that isn't because we don't have C5 or P zones throughout the entire city, we do, but our city is very heavily residential in use. Other cities that are more master-planned communities have large shopping centers, large office parks, they're far from homes. All of our shopping and office uses are close to homes. They're very shallowly lining streets where there are often homes right behind them. So when we do that mapping and that, we draw that buffer, it ends up that almost all of the commercial and office zones are within 1,000 feet of a home, school, or park. Therefore, the only places that you would pick up in terms of additional locations are near these industrial areas on the south that are far from homes, and on this area in the, on the far east side of the city on First Street, which also is mostly an office area and relatively far from homes. We estimate that this would net maybe an additional six collective and cooperative locations, approximately. Our previous analysis, just with the industrial and removing the cap and reducing the separation from collectives, we figured we'd get between 18, 24 at maximum if all the locations were taken advantage of, so this could net a few more. But it would not have the effect of allowing them to be distributed throughout wards, not even at a cap of two, the just, just the land just isn't there for, doesn't meet the standards.
Quick question. There's an additional alternative that allows for up to two more on zones, wards where there wouldn't be.
Right.
Because they're residential. How does that compare to the map?
Right. This is the map that shows that alternative.
Okay.
So although it does have language that says you could put it in a P zone or a C5 zone if there is an industrial land in that ward, it's still subject to the 1,000-foot requirement away from homes, schools, and parks.
Right.
So even though you might have that commercial and office zoning there, it's too close to homes, schools, and parks.
Too close to homes. Thank you.
We have questions, Karen, we're just gonna jump in and ask you, because this, go ahead, Davi.
So there's a question for you. Previously, there was that, that discussion of a cap, I think at about 12 or so at this point, that cap is lifted. What you mentioned right now with these additional zones, potentially 18 to 24, there's also previously a requirement that they be approved through conditional use permit, that's been modified as well. So these potentially, or any of them, you know, up to 18, 24, what would be the approval process? Is it essentially by right, essentially so, so there wouldn't be as much of a discretion, so we could have as many as the 24 without necessarily having control over that? Is that the way it's gonna work?
We can go back to the map, but let me just go real quick to this additional alternative. The ordinance has not been drafted to remove the CUP, but we did do additional, an additional alternative and prepared that language. That would remove the requirement for a conditional use permit and replace it with a regulatory safety permit that would be issued administratively. The difference between these two things is the conditional use process requires a public hearing at the Planning Commission and potentially at the city council, sort of like we do for liquor licenses.
Right.
It's not a public hearing at the city council, but as it was drafted with the CUP requirement, be very similar to the way that you're used to processing a liquor license. Public hearing, 500-foot notification, and so forth. This alternative would replace that with a ministerial permit. This is one that goes through the same application process, same rigorous background checks, same requirement to comply with all of the standards. And there, there could also be some sort of a notification requirement, though not a hearing, per se, but it would be issued by staff, kind of like a building permit or a certificate of occupancy or some other type of ministerial permit. It would still be subject to all the same requirements that are in this ordinance. It wouldn't mean that there would be any more than would be allowed under the way the ordinance is drafted right now. The big difference here, two big differences, one, there would be no public hearing requirement, no visit to the Planning Commission or city council, and two, it really, from, from a staff perspective, I think from an enforcement perspective, it gives us a lot more flexibility to revoke these licenses if there's a bad operator. And we've had this conversation before, a conditional use permit is a much more difficult revocation process, and it actually establishes a land use at that location.
So sort of pros and cons in that?
Exactly.
Potentially be more regulated, but, but then it doesn't go through the public process?
Right. I would say that the regulation is the same, the big difference are those two things. There's not a public hearing and it's.
Karen, if we just kinda go one by one, because now you're getting like, and I know it was the nature of the question, but let's just keep going. I've got a quick question, then Michelle, then then Vince. My quick question is, just go back to the M1 and M2. When you do just M1 and M2, under the 500 and When you do just M1 and M2, under the 500 internal separation, 1,000 from external, how many dispensaries are we contemplating? I know there's a range. Was that the 18 to 24?
It is. So this map shows the M1 and M2 eligible areas and our.
That's 18 to 24.
About 18 to 24 at maximum.
And if we were to do the next category, the pink category, then you would add potentially six additional to the 18 to 24, correct?
Yeah, potentially five to six in a perfect world if all of the property owners, they could find space in every.
So it could be, in your estimate, a maximum of 24 plus six. It could be possibly as many as 30 under that scenario.
Statistically speaking, there is that possibility.
All right. But if you go with the first one, it's 18?
18 to 24.
18 to 24. All right. Let's just, let's just continue point by point, but right now, we have a question from Councilor Martinez and Councilor Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mayor. Karen, just a quick question for you as you answered Councilwoman Benavides in regards to the CUP and the public safety permit. Can you please tell me who will be approving that permit? You said just staff. That would be going through the police chief, correct?
It's a two-step process. It goes both through the Planning and Building Agency and the police chief, and the final permit is the police chief or his designee, as it is written right now.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, and Karen, the only thing I was going to add to that, and I think it was a great question because it's something I think on everybody's mind. What's, what's the best way to dispense or to approve these permits? And I think if you go through the CUP, which is a rigorous process, I think all of us like that background check and very strict scrutiny on the applications. But what I don't like about the CUP process and what I'd rather support, which is a more discretionary one, is that it doesn't create a vested right. And what happens with the conditional use permit, it gives the applicant a vested right, and that permit or land use runs with the land.
That's right.
In other words, we can't revoke it. We can't do anything to it once it's been issued or once it's been granted. So I think when you're talking about revocability, if we have an operator that's abusing their authority or abusing their rights, under this alternative discretionary process, I think even though we're still going to have the strict scrutiny, I think it's a much better tool for us to be able to revoke, to have the flexibility to revoke in the event we have to in the future. Is that something that, is that a correct statement?
Yes, that's a correct statement. And the rigorous, the rigorous nature of the application process, all of background checks, the standards, everything would be exactly the same, but it would be this ministerial permit which would be reviewed and renewed annually. And we would have the ability to do that at the staff level.
So that's revocable, the other one is irrevocable?
Very difficult. We, when we've had this come up before, we've looked back and said, when have we ever revoked a CUP? And no one can remember in the last 20 years other than one, and it took about three years to do it.
Got it.
It establishes basically a permanent land use at that location. And that's, that's a big benefit to the property owner because now they have basically a forever approval to have a collective at that location. But it's difficult, if there's a bad operator, to do something about it in the future.
And just, you know, in closing, I know that I did some due diligence, called some city attorneys in cities that do have ordinances that regulate, and they all said the same thing. If we can stay away from a conditional use permit process because it vests rights in those applicants.
Yes.
And go to a much more discretionary ministerial process, it's much better in the long run. So, thanks.
And City Attorney Carvalho, I don't know if you'd like to chime in on this, but I know that from a legal standpoint, you also feel this is more defensible.
Yeah, I do want to mention one thing. Councilmember Sarmiento, you mentioned that maybe with the safety permit, we wouldn't have the rigorous background checks. We did work into our requirements of background checks, so we don't lose any of that review. What, I think the significant difference is notice, because CUPs require us to publish notice, and the vesting of the land use, right? Those are the two most significant differences. But I do also recommend the alternative to the conditional use permit because of some case law that's developed in the area, and there's a question whether the city has the authority to require a conditional use permit for a use which is not legal under federal law. So we've changed it just a little bit. I think it makes your ordinance a little more defensible if you go with the public safety permit.
Okay. All right. So I'll go on now past the CUP versus ministerial permit and go to the third additional alternative, which is to include a sunset provision to repeal the ordinance unless readopted by the City Council. And that's alternative section six. There's section six in there now. You could replace it with this. This would be in addition to the powers that the council will reserve to amend the ordinance. This would be in addition to that. So if you also wanted to include a sunset provision, we've drafted language to allow that as well.
But Karen, on that point, we would also have an option just of adopting a portion of it, correct? In other words, just that we could have, for example, an annual review that could come back to the City Council, independent of a sunset.
Yes. With the language you have in there now that reserves the right for the council to have authority to amend, just as a matter of policy, you could direct staff to come back with an annual report, and then you could use that to judge if that was something now you wanted to make some changes to the ordinance. So this is more belt and suspenders. We feel that there's already not there.
If we choose to do that, we can do so, right? Based on what you've written, and Madam City Attorney, we'd not be out of order if we choose to go that route to do so. All right. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay. The next alternative is the option to remove the language regarding medical marijuana testing and testing logs. And this was something also that some of the speakers brought up tonight. Our analysis on this is frankly that we agree. We aren't really set up to test medical marijuana, and that isn't something from a land use perspective that we would necessarily have a vested interest in. So that option is in there too, to simply strike those two sections.
Karen, just real briefly, in regards to the testing, you know, I was told that we have a big testing location here in Orange County, possibly near Santa Ana. Couldn't we ask these folks to send their, get their test results and then provide them to the city of Santa Ana versus us doing the testing?
That, that could be one way that it would work in either regard, though. The city would still be providing some level of oversight and requirement for testing. Testing of things like food, medicines, those are all typically handled by other agencies besides the city of Santa Ana. We rely on those agencies to do that. I think also because these standards are changing at the state level, they may be changing at the county level, that it would be wise to let those standards play out and those requirements be placed by other, by other agencies.
I just wanted to make sure that we do have other options.
Right.
Just not just say no to the no testing.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay. All right. The final alternative was to explore the idea of using a request for proposals process to select the collectives and cooperatives. Because there are a limited number of spots that are available, and we anticipate there will be more demand than supply, there was a suggestion that the city could actually issue requests for proposals to take applications from collectives and cooperatives and then have the city council select them based on a set of criteria. We did not draft language for that to go into the ordinance. It was a very complicated topic, one that we felt very strongly against recommending for due to the very strong potential for preferential treatment and for allegations of favoritism and difficulty in creating objective criteria to select them. That was the only final item. Those are all of the items that we have in the report, and I'm happy to answer.
Thank you for that. If you can be available, I think as we go through this, we may have more questions.
I'm sorry, I would like to bring up one other topic.
Okay, go ahead.
If you'd like to talk about it now. We did, you also did ask us for information on enforcement staffing. So real quickly, I can go through the three scenarios that we have in the staff report. We developed three different scenarios based on cost estimates, $1 million, $1.5 million, and $2 million. Each of them has a different focus. The first scenario is a focus primarily on, this is a land, land use enforcement issue. Under this scenario, we would estimate that the best program would include three code enforcement officers, two city attorneys, one police officer, half-time building inspector, and then clerical assistants. We are coming back in August with all the details, what a full-fledged enforcement program would look like. So basically, what do all these people do and how do they do it? These are really just very basic scenarios to let you know what certain dollar amounts could buy in the terms of an enforcement staffing solution. Scenario two is a beefed-up version of scenario one. It's an additional code enforcement officer, an additional police officer, and additional building inspection. And the final scenario of $2 million would create a vice unit within the police department. So that is a total of four police officers with dedicated police staff to drug trafficking issues, vice issues, and that kind of thing. And that completes my report.
Mayor, just a quick question.
Yes, please go ahead, Councilwoman Martinez.
And I know it's in the ordinance, but in the auditing section, but in my last, the last council meeting, I asked specifically if we could include and provide an option of a forensic auditor in regards to reviewing the audits of each of these collectives. We all know that this is a new business. I particularly think that our financing staff needs more help. I know Will Houghton, the audience, and has been doing a fabulous job, and I see our finance director, Francisco Gutierrez. We certainly are low on staff on that end, and we certainly don't have all the expertise. And I truly believe that there's going to be a lot of training that it's necessary, whether it be Will or someone else of Fran's department, they're going to need that specialized training. And, you know, I personally believe that we need a forensic auditor onboard if we do decide to audit these folks and making sure that the person that we have is an expert and understands what they're doing.
Okay.
Councilwoman Martinez, just a question for you on that. That's not currently in any of the plans. Do you propose a cost recovery system potentially for that? Or what do you think?
Well, I also requested that as well at the very beginning in regards to the selection process, that we would have recovery costs for every person that would apply. There are recovery costs. There's a lot of work behind this, and I know in the staff's current recommendation, that is currently not in there. And then the other recommendation that our city attorney has drafted, she has added some, some language in there, but it's not giving a specific number of recovery costs, that that would come back to the city council to amend and figure out a study of what those recovery cost dollars would be.
But you would want that right now as an option in the ordinance that we're contemplating? Is that correct?
I think that we need, we need a listing of what those recovery costs would be. For example, within the enforcement plan, that is recovery cost. We did not add any, we didn't add this auditor, this forensic auditor in there, and I believe that we need to add it in there. It's very important that we do so.
City Manager. Yes, Ms. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. A member of the city council, I do agree that we need a forensic auditor. These were more conceptual, what we could do. We haven't really made it exact. We do need direction from the city council. The goal would be that in August, we would do the work study, get direction, and then come back with a complete plan.
I just want to be clear because we're talking about something that's going to, you know, go before the voters, and if we don't have language in there that gives us that alternative, you know, we could end up saying, well, wait a minute, you passed this, and now you want to, you know, do cost recovery, but it wasn't contemplated. So just if it's contemplated, I just want to make sure we have it written up by the city attorney in such, such fashion that the council could have an option.
But I would disagree. It doesn't have to be written. That's something that we can talk about as how we're going to spend our money. It doesn't have to be a part of the resolution.
That's, that's my understanding, Mayor, member of the city council, is that we have an estimate of how much revenue we think we're going to get, but based on that revenue, we'll determine the enforcement plan.
Well, and I think you're mixing two issues. There's the issue of taxation, for which I've heard the council talk about how they may want to dedicate some of the taxation revenue to doing some enforcement. That's one issue. The other issue that I believe Councilmember Martinez is referring to is much like an application fee to pay for all the work that's going to go into processing these applications. And written into the alternative that Ms. Haluza presented to you is language that currently reads that each collective interested in operating, when they go through the first step of this process where they file with the Planning and Building Department, shall pay a non-refundable processing fee in an amount established by the city council. And this, every year when you get your budget, you may recall, the staff gives you all kinds of fees for different processing. That's when we would present it to you, and we'd want to do some analysis, working with the police department and the Planning and Building Department, to find out how much that might cost.
So that could be done independent of the ballot initiative?
So the ballot initiative will authorize the council to adopt it at a later date, and we don't know what.
And that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
So the initiative would give the council the opportunity to adopt it at a later date.
Correct.
I just don't want an attorney or somebody saying you didn't have that option in the ordinance, and now, you know, we're stuck.
We reserve that right. And then also with respect to the public safety permit aspect of it, we also included the similar language so that you can do amount of cost recovery.
So we reserve that right as well. All right. More thoughts or questions? Councilor Mescola, please.
I just want to say, on the additional alternatives, I would not be in favor of allowing the cooperatives to be allowed in the, no more than two per ward.
The P-zone?
Yes. I don't see the need for that. And another thing here with the, I made some notes. With the RFP process, I think it opens up to allegations of, you know, like Karen said, favoritism or even corruption. I don't think it should be up to us to decide who gets to open up. I think there should be a process, but I don't think it should be the council making that decision.
Thank you. Councilwoman Raina, please.
Sure. You know, as I, I look at the handout staff gave us, and we talk about first page is background. February 2013, we received the information, and then we didn't do anything again. I take that back. March of 2013, council directed staff to export placing something as a competitive bid, competitive on the ballot, and then we didn't really do nothing again until June 3 of the following year. That's almost a whole year that we really didn't address this issue whatsoever. I know myself and a few others had made some inquiries in December of how we're really going to address this particular issue, really trying to get ahead of the curve so that we wouldn't be here at the 11th hour. A little frustrated that we are here at this particular moment, feel between rocking a hard place, and I don't think that is a good breeding ground for good decisions. So I do have a lot of concerns as we do move forward. I know that some of my colleagues have different ideas and different directions that they want to go into, and rightfully so. On my end, let me just hit a couple of them. The lottery, I think the lottery is a better avenue of going forward versus an RFP, RFQ, RFP, whichever it was. Removing the CUP, I think is definitely something that will give us more flexibility. Keeping it to the original M1 and M2 would be my preference. And everything at 1,000 feet except proximity to the next dispensary at 500. I think that opens up opportunity for us to create a pseudo red light district. That's not something that I'm really supportive of. I think that obviously that doubles the amount of dispensaries that will be coming into the community. I think that as we're starting to step into a brand-new environment and a brand-new field that doesn't have a lot of regulations, there's going to be a lot of unknowns. And as we move forward, we got to move forward collectively, together, but cautiously as we move forward. And we look forward to really addressing the needs of the patients that have a need for this particular medication. Again, there's just a lot of unknowns, and I think it behooves us to keep the options on our end. And the fact that we moved it to 500 is not something that I would be supportive of. I think for right now, that's kind of where I'm at.
I was going to make a quick proposal.
Please, go ahead.
Since Councilwoman Raina said he's not supportive of the 500, and initially we wanted 1,000 feet, why don't we consider something in between, maybe 800 feet?
What I suggest is, let's have everybody talk, and then we'll take them one by one. Councilor Vince Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me begin by just thanking everybody who's come before us and spoken here tonight, spoke to us at the last meeting, and spoke to us at the meeting before. This is, as you know, the, the third time that we've taken this up. And this conversation didn't begin back in February of 2013, but this conversation took place six, seven years ago when we decided to impose a moratorium. So we have grappled with this, with this issue for many years. And as you know, this moratorium's been in place for at least six years as far as it has been. been in place for at least six years, as far as I can recall. But I do want to thank, I do want to thank my colleagues for taking this up three weeks ago, or excuse me, two meetings ago, and supporting this on a 4-1. I think it was, I think it was something that spoke well of us trying to deal with this issue. And as I mentioned this, I want to refer to Senator Correa's comments, and I want to thank him for being here. And one of his quotes was, "For the past 20 years, we buried our head in the sand on this issue." And it's true. I think there hasn't been a real robust discussion at the federal level, there hasn't been a good discussion at the state level, and they have two competing views on how this matter should be addressed. So unfortunately, what it does to the locals or municipalities and counties, we have to decide it for ourselves. Do we look at federal law? Do we look at state law? And we could be preempted by either at any time. But because we're faced with an initiative that's already qualified for the ballot, we have to deal with this because, quite simply, what we're doing is we're trying to put something on the ballot that's not going to be an ordinance, but it's just going to be an option for the voters to consider. That's what we're doing. We're not approving anything tonight. We're trying to put something on that will make sense, that will regulate this use in a way that is reasonable, is fair, and is safe. And that's all. So ultimately, we're not, we're not the decision-makers on whether or not this is going to be something that's approved. It's ultimately the voters of the city who are going to decide in November this year. So I want to thank our staff for considering the comments that were made, not only by the council, but by the advocates, the community, people who came before us and spoke. And I think what was said earlier, and I'll just go through, go down the list because they're enumerated so well, I think they make a lot of sense. The removal of the cap is something that I think you heard from the council at the last meeting that I'd be supportive of. The reduction in the hours of operation is something that I could support. The reduction of the separation between dispensaries from 1,000 to 500 feet is something that we could live with while maintaining that 1,000-foot separation from sensitive receptors, which are homes and residences, that 1,000-foot requirement between any collective and schools and churches and parks is something that I'd be supportive of. And the additional issue, bullet item four, is giving the council the reservation of flexibility to make changes. In other words, we're reserving the right to amend if we realize that some of these terms are just not workable. And on the last bullet point for policy changes, addressing the potential conflicts with competing measures, I think is something that is also worth supporting. On the additional alternatives, the only two on those that I think are worth, are something that we could support, or I could support, is the replacement of the conditional use permit for the regulatory safety permit. And the removal of the language regarding the marijuana testing and testing logs, I think that's something that we should leave to those agencies that are better equipped to go ahead and do that. County environmental health is probably one of those. And I think what was mentioned finally was the request for proposals and deciding how we select or how we approve permits from applicants. I don't think an RFP process is a good one, as was mentioned before. It lends itself to just, I don't think there'll be anything sinister happening, but the perception is that it could be. And so if there's a more objective, fair process, I would say, and I think this was mentioned by the mayor in the past, is maybe we could do a hybrid where you have those that are part of a lottery, the pool of applicants that could be considered in a lottery, first go through a very rigorous vetting process to make sure that they're qualified and considered responsible, potential operators, and then you do a lottery based upon that. So that's something for us to consider, and I'm not sure, Madam City Attorney, if you think that's something that's legally workable. But if we don't do that, then we have to consider a first-in-time process, which is kind of goofy, because it's who gets to the, you know, to the counter first, and we may have people camping out. I don't know what the alternative would be to that, but...
Well, the two alternatives that you currently have, one being that there's a two-step process that replaces the conditional use permit process. So the first step in the process is applicants go through the building, planning and building department, and that's on a first-come, first-served basis. And then if they qualify, like if they're pre-qualified, then they go get their police safety permit. You could incorporate something like you're suggesting, which is that we leave open the pre-qualification period for some length of time, 30, 60, 90 days. And then, from that pool of people who are qualified by planning and building, then we draw names for people to then start the public safety permit process. That could easily be worked into this, but I would need to draft some new language.
If I may, and then I'll go right back to you, just on that point, because I know you and I discussed it. Part of what I was talking to Councilwoman Armento about was some type of a process where also police would do a background check. That's, you know, together with what he's talking about. So there's the background check, building and planning review, and then there's the lottery or whatever other process.
Right. I think it's more of a two-step process where the pool of potential applicants considered in a lottery would first be vetted.
Correct.
Through a very strict scrutiny process where planning and building initially vet, and then PD vets as well. So then you're left with responsible, potential operators in the end that go through a lottery system. That's, I think, more fair. So, you know, I'll leave the wording to Madam City Attorney, so she can go.
But you have the concept, right, Madam City Attorney?
If that's something the council supports, I understand the concept, and it's something I could clarify with planning and building, as well as the police department.
And it's a...
My question is, can we still move forward today?
Yes.
Is the answer yes? Because that's my concern.
Technically, you're supposed to approve tonight the specific language that you're presenting to your voters, and I can make minor clarifications even after you give me direction, but that would require only drafting.
You have the intent. I mean, it's sort of legislative intent for you to go ahead and draft into words and language what the council's, the spirit of what we want to have included in that ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I can draft that, and as long as you understand that I'll be making some clarifications to that, I'm comfortable in doing that, as long as that is...
I think that would work. That would work. Hold on, I don't know if he's done yet.
No, that's all I was going to say. I was going to, I was going to thank Senator Correa for couching the issue well. So thank you for being here and spending time with us tonight, but more importantly, for explaining the context of the issue and how we arrived at where we are. I think it's important that, again, our residents, our constituents, our neighbors understand that this is an issue that, look, you're having a tough time through SB 1262 explaining it to the state and your colleagues that represent folks throughout the state. It's a complex issue, and we have to remember, if your bill passes, it may preempt us, and we're going to be following whatever occurs, you know. So who knows? That may be the case. And if that's the case, we want to be as consistent with your efforts as we possibly can. So hopefully, that's something that we're able to reconcile, so...
Councilwoman Armento, before we leave you, on the measure, on the M1, M2, you know, could you just talk about that for a moment?
I agree. After staff's presentation showing that there's no benefit to going beyond the M1, M2, I think the original version, which is to restrict it to those two zones, would be the preferable way to go, because if we open it up and include commercial or professional zones, it really doesn't render any better results. In fact, it'll open up that First Street corridor as an opportunity, and I know that that's...
Look, you've gone over a series of things. Maybe just for interest of process, if you're willing to make that a motion, I'll call on Mayor Protem afterwards, because you're going to kind of cover the package. You have comments still? All right, let's wait for any motions then, and...
I appreciate...
But wait a minute, Mayor Protem wanted to speak.
Well, I wanted to make a motion.
All right, well, then, let's take more comment, then.
Mayor, I certainly appreciate Councilwoman Armento really laying down the foundation in regards to now, but I still have some problems, and I'm having difficulty here. And, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction, but I'll tell you, we have not considered the health impacts. We made a resolution, not so far, and I know Councilwoman Armento spoke at about it two or three meetings ago in regards that we're really not enforcing. But the reality is, is that there are health impacts to this issue, and so in regards to those health impacts, I'm wanting to make sure that they're unable to not smoke on-site or off-site, that they need to leave the premises, and I want to make sure that that writing is in there as well. I think it's very important that we add that, and I'm not sure that it's on there. The other, where I'm really having a problem is, and I mentioned it at the last council meeting, was making sure that whatever applicants apply, that they need to get a permission from the owners of those properties that would be part of the application process. I didn't see it in there. I'm not sure. It was somewhere else, not in the original intent. We have two, we have two resolutions in front of us, and so I'm not sure if it was in V1 or the city manager and staff recommendation, and so that's another thing that I would like for us to consider. And then the third part is where I wrote...
What was that one again, please?
The requirement to get permission from the property owner, a letter.
Got it.
And the other problem that I'm having is more so of the enforcement problem, and I talked about that at the last council meeting. And I know our chief of police has been very quiet on the issue, and he's over there, and I have to tell you that the quality of life is extremely important in this community, but so is public safety. And we have a problem, and I certainly understand Councilwoman Armento when he reiterates that we've had this on the books for some time. But I will tell you that, you know, and I went back in my emails, I save every email, and I went back in my emails, and I'm not sure if a Madam City Attorney remembers, that when I received information from the mayor at the time of Brea, Ron Garcia, in pertaining to medical marijuana, and how they sent letters out to these folks, I, we worked with them, our planning department, and Jay Trevino sent out those letters on May 20, on May 18 of 2012, to 110 individuals and 47 property owners. And so we've been on this issue. I certainly, as a council member, have been wanting to make sure that we've upheld this ban, and we sent out letters, and I'm not sure if my colleagues recall that memo, and if you'd like to see it, I still have a copy, and I can send it to all of you. And then as well, in January of 28, January 28 of 2014, I also sent a correspondence to our staff, asking for an analysis. And here we are, just a couple months ago, we finally got started. I don't know if it was not a priority, if the staff didn't believe that the council wanted different alternatives and different options, but the council was vocal about this. And as Councilwoman Raina mentioned earlier in his comments, that we had concerns and that we wanted different options and alternatives. And here we are, and it's not the 11th hour. I know we've had a couple meetings, but this is a very sensitive subject, a sensitive issue, where we needed to get everyone's input. To try to do this within a three-month span is really difficult. We know that other jurisdictions have taken longer to draft up their ordinance. I recently sent them the information on San Jose. I had the opportunity to speak to council members from Oakland. I was in Sacramento not too long ago and had the opportunity to speak to them. I had the opportunity to speak to San Diego. I had the opportunity to speak to council members from Denver. And so as I have had all these conversations with different elected officials and have read all these documents, our Madam City Attorney recently just emailed us, you know, a white paper on this subject matter as well, which I've read. And I tell you that I'm going to go back to the public safety issue and enforcement issue. We need to address something now. We can't wait until this gets on the ballot, and then we proceed with an enforcement plan. The way I only could be supportive of something here today, taking to the voters or not, we have to have an enforcement plan, and we need to have an action plan now. We need to dedicate the resources today, not after the election. I understand that I may be in the minority in this, but I need to be very vocal and let my colleagues know where I stand, because at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we're addressing this problem now and not waiting wherever our voters are. We can't count on our voters on whatever side they're going to be on. We need to be responsible policymakers and say that this is a top priority, and let's do what we can to address the problem right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. More comment? I believe Councilmember...
I was just going to face something about what Councilmember Martinez just said. I do agree wholeheartedly that we do need to focus on enforcement programs. I've been getting complaints from parents, from schools, from a soul. There's one dispensary there that I always get emails on. There's one really close to Edison Elementary. So I think we really need to target these that are near schools. They're not legal right now, so let's see if we can work out a program in the time being between now and the election so that we can target these that are opening up, especially close to schools. I don't think they belong anywhere near our schools.
And if I could just briefly comment on that, Councilmember Mesqua. We had an enforcement meeting this past Friday where we involved all the staff that's involved. We have identified five or six locations, which we consider to be our highest priorities, two or three of which are those dispensaries which are operating in violation of the state law, so they're closer than 600 feet from the schools. So we've made those a priority. We have 41 cases filed right now with the Superior Court, and that's a lot, but we are really focusing on the educational issues, and we'll give you an update as to how the courts are responding to our lawsuits.
Thank you.
Mayor, on that note, Ms. Madam City Attorney, how many did you say you have right now with the court?
I believe the number is about 41.
Forty-one.
And that does not include the ones that we've sent letters out to.
Great. So my question to you on the procedure of closing down these medical marijuana dispensaries, really, what police powers do we currently have, and how will we go about that, and how long will it take? So you're telling me, right now, it's in the court. What does that mean? So how, you know, that's my question here, is that we're having difficulty closing these folks down and having to go through the court system. You know, when are we going to spell out exactly what police powers we have from our police department, from our planning department, and from your department, so that we understand when we can shut people down or not shut people down?
Well, first of all, we have a law in our municipal code which makes it illegal to dispense marijuana from any facility that is not deemed to be some type of pharmacy or medical operation. So anyone operating in the city right now that cannot justify to us that they are a pharmacy or a medical operation is in violation of our laws. That's just, they are absolutely in violation of our laws. In some of the cases that we have filed, I'll give you one example of a case, we have prevailed in that case, but the defendant appealed. So when the defendant appeals and seeks a stay against our enforcement, and they get it, we've been successful in our minds, because we have that order, but they've appealed it, and we have no control over the appeal process. So that, in that situation, they continue to operate. It is cost-effective for them to do so. There's a lot of money involved in these operations. So, you know, they'll pay their attorneys to fight us, because every day they get to operate, they're making cash. So we do have the local police powers, and we are using them to the best of our ability. It's just that at this point, we don't have any control over what the courts do with our cases. And the moment that some of these dispensaries appeal, it's completely out of our hands, and anywhere from a year to 18 months away before we get a final decision.
Okay, I believe Ben Avides has not spoken. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been the healthy dialogue that we've been having over the last several council meetings. I think today, I appreciate my colleagues, just conversations and taking steps to tighten up some of the parameters and regulations and such. You know, I've made statements as to what my position is in general, although I do appreciate, again, some of the conversation and the alternatives that are being presented. I think moving in the right direction. The, I do agree with Councilwoman Martinez and Councilwoman Mesqua's points as far as the enforcement plan. I think that's one of the things that I know, for me, has been an area of interest, because there's been quite a bit of feedback that we've been getting from residents for a significant amount of time. It hasn't just been recently, and I've also seen firsthand some of the negative impacts of some of the dispensaries out there. I think we do know that they bring a negative element, otherwise, we probably wouldn't be being so intentional about moving them away from schools, from neighborhoods and such. If they didn't bring an element that wasn't very favorable, that wouldn't be as much of a concern. So I think that is clearly something that is present there that we need to be aware of. My thought right now is, we have very few, I mean, maybe a couple of residents that are open to having these storefront retail venues in our city. Majority of the people I've been speaking in favor of have been those, the proponents that come from outside the city, that many of which probably operate or being paid for that. that, to hold that position. So my, one thing that I would present for consideration is providing voters alternatives, both potentially if we're going to move forward with this regulating measure, also providing the opportunity to be able to do, support the ban, so that the voters have those options to consider, something that would be ultimately, as was mentioned before by one of my colleagues, is the voters ultimately decide, I would just encourage us to think about giving them every option to decide, both potentially allowing them and banning the storefront retail venues. Obviously, we wouldn't be banning medical marijuana itself, that's something that our current ban allows, it's for them to be located in clinics, pharmacies, and places that are legitimate places of medical facilities. So I just put that, place that there for consideration. One question that I do have, though, as well, with regard to what we're considering right now in the discussion, is separation from daycare centers, community centers, I don't know if there's something, I know there's been homes, schools, parks, but some of our childcare centers, daycare centers, community centers might be in some of those areas that, whether it be through CUP or because they've been allowed. So is there anything that addresses those places in particular?
No, daycare centers, also, excuse me, churches was another one that we had looked at as well. Those were not included. Daycare centers, especially private daycare centers, are a little bit harder to pin down, but schools, parks, and homes obviously are very easy to objectively identify.
Okay, the, okay, well, so churches, community centers as well are not included.
Correct, that's right, they're not included.
Okay. So that's something I would present for us to consider adding. I know some churches oftentimes double as community centers during the week, and I'm hoping to be able to see more and more of that happen throughout the city. So that's something that I would present for council to consider as well, my colleagues.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to present a motion, but before I do, I just want to talk to my colleagues a little bit. We could sit here again next week, and we're not going to come up to, it's very evident to me that we're not all going to get everything we want. I wanted a cap, a numbered cap, but it seemed to me that the consensus was that we moved towards a cap based on parameters and so forth. I'm not, I don't really like it, but I'll go with it, because I know that ultimately we are not all going to get everything we want on this. But what we will have is a victory if we can put those things aside right now. I think the staff has developed a good plan, I think we have somewhat of a consensus. My key issue is that we stay 1,000 feet away from schools and parks, that's my key issue. And so I think tonight, we just have to come to the agreement as a council, that we've done our very best to try to come up with consensus on all fronts, and realize that we've come up with consensus on quite a bit, for the most part, there are some members who are probably going to vote no, and that's okay, that's prerogative. But I don't want to continue to repeat ourselves over and over and over again. I'd like for us to feel good about the fact that we've commented, we've fought the good fight, as far as what we would like to see, and I would like us to go forward. Remember, this ordinance, we can always come back and adjust it if something's not working. But I think it is important for this community that we have something on the ballot, and the clock is ticking, and therefore I'm going to ask and make a motion that we approve the staff recommended action with the M1, M2 zones. Madam City Attorney, there have been some items that you have written down as far as-
He's making a motion, so let's let him articulate it.
Let's make a motion with the city staff recommendations with the M1, M2. I would like to note that any revenue that is brought in, it goes to 100% enforcement. Is that a possibility? You're shaking your head.
The only reason I say that is because when you actually have a tax that you specify where the revenue goes to, you need 2/3 voter approval for that measure.
So we can do that after?
You can, you can allocate it how you want after it's received.
And I don't want to be, I don't want to make changes, that's the whole thing. I don't want to, because we've already dialogued this, and I think we've come up with what we have, and I, there were some minor adjustments that you heard today, Madam City Attorney, that could be put in there without changing the fabric of the ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion based upon, I think Mayor Protem is-
Yeah, can I briefly go over what I-
Yeah, I liked the motion that Councilmember Sarmiento made, because that I think was very articulate.
That's what I would use.
Okay, so go with his.
Okay, so I just want to summarize it so everyone understands it, that you are supporting the staff recommendation, which removes the cap on the number of dispensaries, reduces the hours of operations, reduces the distance between each dispensary to 500 feet, but maintains the 1,000-foot separation for schools, parks, and from residential zones, gives the council the authority to amend, no CUP, but instead replaces it with the safety permit. I have already drafted, as you were talking, the pre-qualification with a lottery for the first 20, and then going into the safety permit, removal of the testing requirements that are in here, and sticking to the M1, M2 zone without the two in each ward. That is all of it. Now, there were some additional, in addition to that, there were some additional minor issues that I heard from the public and some of you mentioned. Should I ask those questions or accept this?
I think we need to stick with this, because otherwise-
That was the motion, though.
Then I've got all the motion as I just articulated.
So, Mr. Sarmiento, can you please make that motion, I'll second it?
I'll make the motion, I just wanted to make one clarification, I think. On the sunset provision, I believe that was an or, when staff presented it in its RFCA to us, on whether or not we wanted to reserve the right to amend or the sunset.
Yes, and I took your motion to say that you want to take the right to amend and not the sunset.
Exactly. I just wanted to make that clarification. And the last point, which is on the last bullet point on the policy change page, which says addressing the potential conflicts between competing measures. In the event the voters approve and vote in favor of the initiative that we're proposing, then it nullifies and voids the other competing measure. And that's just more of a legal, technical point, but-
In order to pass, either measure would need more than 50%, and in the event that both measures receive more than 50, the measure that received the higher percentage will be the measure that is adopted.
Got it, so that, technically on the vote, that'll take care of it. And I think that's the, I think that's the essence of the motion that I-
I'll second that motion.
Counsel, just discussion or a point and maybe a friendly amendment, and that is on the issue of churches. I know what, you know, Karen Haluza said, and she basically said, look, you know, it's just difficult, it's easy to find a park or a school or a resident, because you can look at a map. But, you know, if we do this and we include churches, I don't see the harm in that. Would you accept that as an amendment?
The problem is, then, Ms. Haluza, can you come up? I think, guys, I think we're, we know the system, we now have to go back, and she has to go investigate this, to make sure that there's churches there in those areas. And what constitutes a church? You know, it could be someone's house, it could be, there's a variety of different items for that.
Well, if it's somebody's home, that's a resident, so that right there would knock it out.
We actually looked at that, that was one of the criteria that we looked at, as well as off-sale liquor licenses, and when we added in either of those singularly or together, it really began to shrink the area that would be eligible for collectives and cooperatives. And we discussed that with the council, actually, and at that time said that we remove those areas in order to meet this larger goal, and they weren't as sensitive uses as the school homes and parks, so.
Could we do this, Mr. Mayor, just to address your concern, because it's a concern of mine, and I know others have voiced it as well? Because we're reserving the right to amend-
Correct.
Can we, at some point in the future, see, once it's determined that it shrank the number so much that maybe we want to include it, or maybe, or, excuse me, if it doesn't shrink that number that much, then we can include it as an additional element in addition to schools and parks? So I'm just saying, can't we defer that decision because we're reserving the right to amend and amend in later?
If we can, I'm comfortable with that. I just want to be sensitive to the community, and to me, a church is a sacred place, it's a place that, you know, if you worship somewhere, you don't want a dispensary right next door, the same way you don't want it if you're a school or a park or a resident. So, but I understand what Councilor Sarmiento is suggesting, I think that could work. Any more discussion on the motion?
There's a motion, there's a motion in a second.
Right, right, any more speaking to the motion?
I'd like to offer a friendly motion.
A friendly amendment or a substitute motion?
A friendly amendment. I think we're moving in the right direction. I still have concerns about 1,000 feet. I know that we're looking at 500, right now we're talking about. Councilman Mesquio had threw out an 800. Open to try to figure out some common ground, I just cannot support 500.
Well, let's take a vote. I think we need to take a vote.
Do you, what you could do, I could recommend to keep this clean, Mayor, is you could take a vote just on that issue, you can make a substitute motion just on that issue, and then you can address that issue from 500 to 800 feet between dispensaries and dispose of it, and then move on.
I know, but I think this is a package deal that the maker of the motion made, and I would hate to-
The reason why I have a problem with changing it like that is we haven't done the due diligence of what that affects, and we're putting an arbitrary number out there. We have the right under this ordinance to change it later, and so I think we need, it's in our best interest to go forward and then see what the voters decide.
And we do know what 1,000 does, because we did originally have 1,000 in between when we changed it to 500 in the analysis, so we do have some data.
Absolutely, and I can understand that, I think it's easier to increase the number down the road than it would be to decrease the number down the road.
All right, so we have a motion, a second.
I think I'm okay with just leaving it as is, just because we can go back and amend it.
Again, I do have the flexibility, I definitely appreciate that. As my experience, I think it's, again, it's easier to increase something than it would be to decrease something.
I hear you, Councilmember Reyna.
All right, so, so, look, if you're for the package, vote for it. If you have some reservations, you know, vote against it. So with that, any other comment? Councilor Benavides?
Yes, Mayor, what I'd, I'd want to come back to the comments that I made earlier, I made last week as well. We have quite a few correspondents here that residents have sent in that support a ban to the retail dispensaries. And so what I'd like to do is make a substitute motion to go with, basically to place both items on the agenda, I mean, on the ballot. And a question for the city attorney, is that something that we can do, put both a measure on there that regulates, as well as one that reinforces a ban? And how does the percentage, what could a voter choose to vote for more than one, and which would be the prevailing measure?
Legally, the council can place on its ballot its own competing measures, so lawfully you could do that if the council concurred, and again, the rule would apply that everything has to be approved by 50% or by more than 50%, and the measure that gets the highest number of votes would be the prevailing measure of the three if your motion is seconded.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have a vote.
I agree with-
Or see if there's a second.
Correct, let me, so is there a second on the substitute motion? See, no second, then let's, I'll call for a vote on the original motion. Those in favor?
I just, go ahead.
Of the original?
The second that you just asked for, was it my substitute?
No. It was my-
My substitute was to add to this measure, supporting what the council has discussed here, deliberated on, that the measure that, or the motion that was made by Bill of Councilman Sarmiento, second by Councilman Tinajero, adding another ballot measure that would be to reinforce the ban not to medical marijuana, but to the ban to the storefront dispensaries.
So you're adding a second ballot measure?
Adding a second ballot measure, correct. To truly give the voters every option. I think we've been discussing one, which is the regulating. This way the voters have the opportunity to choose if the, and even the proponents realize, I think, that regulating and limiting is what the voters would prefer, that's why they labeled their measure that. Regulation, limitation, regulation, I forget exactly the way it's worded, but, so essentially it would be giving the voters an opportunity to support a ban, as well as they'd have an option to regulate, to allow them and regulate them. The only thing I would also include in there is allowing council to change the ordinance at any time as to when it's currently on the ballot, or currently being discussed, as well as being subject to change based on any legislation that the state might be able to present as State Senator Correa mentioned earlier.
I think we already-
Mayor Protem?
I think we already had a, he made a motion and no one second, so can we go ahead and vote? Or do you want, okay, so do you want to call for a-
Before I vote on that, second question for Sonia. The recommendation by my colleague here, is that possible, this late in the game?
Yes, as I mentioned, it's lawful, it would be legally possible for you to add a second measure, which would provide for a ban. It was an issue that was brought up two meetings ago, and so as a matter of process, we've only processed what the council directed us to do, but it is, it would be legal for you to do it if you chose to put a third measure on the ballot.
Comment on that, though.
This is the issue, is that we're going to be here all night, because we can't, and I almost start to feel like this is a stall tactic, I just have to put it out there. I would like for us, we have a vote on the floor, we have, well, we have a motion on the floor, so can we check to see if there's a second? I think that would confuse the public, to be quite honest, and then we'd lose everything. But, but, there's, let's call for a second.
Well, look, right now there's a substitute motion, I asked for a second, I didn't see a second. So you'll second the substitute motion?
Let's take that vote.
All right, so let's speak to the substitute motion, if it fails, then we'll go back to the original motion. Speaking on the substitute motion, Councilor Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to be sensitive to Councilmember Benavides's point, and I know that he's trying to reconcile this very complex issue, but Madam City Attorney, don't we have a moratorium in place? Isn't there a ban that we've supported and renewed for the past five to six years?
You have an effect, what is a ban, but you actually don't ban medical marijuana in your city right now. What you have is a regulation that says medical marijuana can only be dispensed from a pharmacy or some type of medical facility. So it isn't a ban in the sense that you've said absolutely none. You do allow it, it's just that we have not-
What is the substitute motion saying, then?
I understand, if I understand, the substitute, I don't want to speak for the council member, but in having discussions, I think what he's saying is, would we put a complete ban and say that we do not, as a matter of land use and local control, permit collective, storefront collectives?
Look, and the only thing I was going to continue on to discuss on that was that it's going to be difficult enough for the voter to assess two different ordinances that are before him or her. To have a third is completely confusing, and I think it sends a wrong message, it means that we, as a council, can't make a decision with respect to policy. And I think it's incumbent upon us, it's the responsibility that we have to make a decision that we're going to propose to the voters and allow them to make the decision on. So, look, I keep going back to this same quote that was, or a saying that was mentioned to me, "The definition of crazy is to continue doing the same thing and expecting a different result." Well, we've had that, we've had this moratorium and this ban, or intended moratorium in place, and, look, it just hasn't worked, it hasn't rendered the results that we've wanted them to. As much as we thought it was a good idea to do it and continue to do it for the past five to six years, it just hasn't done anything. In fact, it's done just the opposite. We've had more collectives as a result. I think for clarity purposes and for purposes of good policy direction and good legislation, we need to put that alternative legislation that we proposed to qualify for the ballot and allow the voters to decide which is the one that they prefer. Again, I think if we do nothing, we allow, I think, an initiative that's flawed to prevail, and we're going to be subject to it no matter what. So I think, I couldn't support that substitute motion, and I'll continue supporting the original motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, can you call for the-
Yes, if there's no other comment, look- Yes. If there's no other comment. Look, the reason, I'm just going to comment on the substitute motion. A substitute motion really is two motions. It's the original motion plus a ban. And I believe that if we adopt the original motion, we, in essence, are going to have a ban in much of the city, de facto, because we're limited only to certain areas. So, the substitute motion really only knocks it out of the industrial areas, assuming the original one passes. So, just so we're clear what we're talking about. So, those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Nay.
Nay. And Councilor Martinez?
There's no abortion plan. I won't support it either.
So, you're not going to support either one?
Mayor, you need to identify how the votes.
Four, no. Three, yes. Now, we go, let's go back to the original motion.
You need to identify under the Brown Act who voted no, by name.
Martinez?
Martinez, no.
Sarmiento, no.
Tinajero, no.
And myself, no. And then, to my left, three yeses. And now, the original motion.
I said no.
Ms. Mescola said no.
Five, two.
That's why the Brown Act requires.
Now, the original motion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Martinez, no.
So, we have two nos.
Three.
Three nos.
Four yeses.
On the substitute motion.
No.
On the original motion and the other way around on the substitute.
I just want to mention again, I think Councilmember Sarmiento has mentioned this before, Mayor, the new law does require us to identify by name who's voting yes and no.
Why don't we just do a roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Let's just do a roll call vote.
On the original.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Councilmember Sarmiento?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tinajero?
Yes.
Mayor Polichano?
Yes.
Councilmember Benavides?
No.
Councilmember Reyna?
No.
Councilmember Mescola?
Yes.
So, motion passes. Now, let's go on to the, Madam Clerk, if I can have more of the public speakers, I think they're right here. I'm going to go back to public comment. Steve Rocco, followed by Steve McGuigan, followed by Carolyn Torres.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. That was kind of painful. But, thank you all for getting through it. And then, we look forward to the ballot to see what actually does happen in the future here. Just wanted to mention earlier, we had the president of the Friends of the Santa Ana Zoo, David Exline, and our executive director, Kathy Decker, here tonight. There's an item on the agenda, item 23A. We hope that you'll support that. So, they were here to answer any questions. In their absence, I'll be here to answer any questions, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Torres, followed by Uriel Ramirez. Uriel Ramirez, you're up after Carolyn. Carolyn, if you could just give us, for the record, your address, please.
My zip code is 92704. So, first, I want to call attention to the fact that by skipping public comments, you made mothers with small children wait hours longer than they needed to. And I also don't appreciate Officer Fajaro over here, badge number 2209, telling the kids to be quiet when they have been exceptionally given the circumstances of this meeting.
2200.
2200, excuse me. I also don't appreciate him telling the young person who was having a sign that he's going to punch him if he doesn't move.
I'm ready.
You can dispute it all you want. Okay. Again, my name is Carolyn Torres. I live off McFadden in Wright. I'm an educator, a member of Chigana Zonitos, and come from a family that has called Santana's home since the 1930s. I have spoken in front of this council a few times regarding the gang injunction in Townsend and was treated as if my concern was unnecessary. Yet, the Townsend Gang Injunction is now a reality, and the intentions of the OC District Attorney's Office and Chief Rojas is now clear. Since June 19th, SAPD have been entering homes without warrants in order to serve the Townsend Gang Injunction. The community was served with this gigantic document, double-sided, so it was twice aside, served to 16-year-olds and 15-year-olds. It is a huge document, written in English, with so much legal jargon, that most people were overwhelmed with how to respond. The Townsend Gang Injunction is the newest evolution of the District Attorney's Office, blatant disregard of basic rights for our communities. They do not, they do this by not listing the names of official defendants, but as enforcement lists. Thus denying them the ability to defend themselves in court. There are 29 people on this list. Out of the 29, seven are minors, two of which are brother and sister. There are other siblings listed as well, who, if the GI becomes permanent, will no longer be able to be outside their house without violating the corridor. This is 15- and 16-year-old brother and sister. How does that, how does this stop violence in our neighborhood? How does breaking up families do anything positive in our communities? Is this what Rojas means by community policing, supporting a gang injunction and supporting abusive gang unit officers who will be the enforcers of the GI? And I thought it was just the gang unit, but I mistaken. It's maybe the whole department. Right. So, yeah. I know some members on this council truly do care about the community. I know some of you do. But, it is impossible to be for the community if you are for a gang injunction. Who is behind a gang injunction? Is it the OCDA's office? Why are they telling the city what to do? Is the chief working for the District Attorney's Office or for the city of Santa Ana? Why is the gang unit not held to any standards of ethics or respect for the community? How is it possible to have a gang injunction without substantial community input? I have said this many times, we do not need a gang injunction. The Townsend Gang Injunction does not have to happen just because a few people want to further their career and gain access to a bigger budget. Why is our community, why is our community, which is lacking in any sort of structural resources, continually targeted for exploitation in the name of safety and in the name of the law? What kind of justice system supports labeling a young person for life? What kind of justice system tells parents to give their kids to the state rather than helping struggling families? And this was told to mothers. I urge the city council to take a long, hard look at the chief of police and its law enforcement officers, specifically the gang unit, and also look at the relationship with the District Attorney's Office.
If you can please wrap up, next speaker will be Uriel Ramirez.
We need to protect our youth from criminalization. We need to support our families who are struggling. No to the Santana Gang Injunction.
Uriel Ramirez, followed by Vanessa Cerda.
Hello. My name's Uriel. I am a current resident at Townsend Street. And in a couple months, I could be really affected and could be part of the gang injunction. How happy, right? I am part of different youth groups, such as Big Mac and as well as Chigana Zonitos. The reason I'm here because in a couple of months, I might be criminalized unfairly. I am here because my friends are already getting stopped by gang unit and giving them literally stupid nicknames. And first of all, are you here to serve us or are you here to serve some corporations? So, last I noticed, the government was, and it says in the constitution and different other things, we the people and power to the people. Last I noticed, most of the people in Townsend and in the safety unit, they not get any inputs and they not get their opinions put down. So, who are you going to and where are you getting your inputs from? And I have a lot of questions as well, too. And a lot of residents have a lot of questions, too. So, not only that, I know Benavides, I know you live right there by Townsend. I know, and I am calling you out. I'm literally calling you out right now. I know you supposedly want to make a change, and you have the power to make a change. So, if you want to see me, along with many other youth that are just trying to get their parents out of the struggle, and you see people in a struggle, I invite you to have a first-class seat to see our people struggle, to see our Latino community. Because most of you guys are Latinos. So, you're turning in your people in? Is that it? Honestly, is that what it is? Our people against our people? Is that what you guys are getting paid for? Because if you want, get your officer over here to beat me, to violate my rights, to come into my house without a court order, might as well arrest me for the color of my skin. If you want to run up all my friends as well, want to take them in? I'm not an animal. Not even my friends. I see you every day. I see you every day. Now, you want to make a big change. If you want to make a huge change, as well as all of you guys, please bring some resources, something we actually need. Half of the less we got, most of them go in prison, or most of them don't even live in a safety zone. So, who are you going to get? Who are you going to criminalize? If you want, put my name down.
Thank you, Vanessa Cerda, followed by Jocelyn Verdine.
Well, good evening. Been here for quite some time, but this is just the beginning. Too many battles to fight. I'm here with my kids. Yes, they were told to be quiet. My son, he has, say, mental health issues. My daughter, well, she's three. And I'll be affected with the gang injunction. I don't even know why I'm nervous. But, I've been in a council meeting before. I talked to all of you guys. And you, Benavides, have been there to help. And you know what? Because of my friend Alex, but also that package that they show, I read it. My knowledge is not my best, but that report is, I could read it. I could understand it. You know that it says that you're a gang member affiliated because you contribute to somebody's altar, wear a shirt, and live a memory of somebody? Do you know that criminalizes me as well? I'll be in that list. I lived in harassment in that neighborhood because of who I am and who I am married to. Yes, we make mistakes. We all do. But, I help my community. I do. And you've seen it. You've seen it that I'm there for the community, for both sides. Because you know what these young men that are there? They're broken. And not broken just because of the system. They're broken in their homes because their parents work in fields. There's ladies that work in, literally, in the fields, that you guys eat those strawberries, apples, everything on your table for your salads, everything. That's the people that are there. Yes, I'm saying that there is a lot of stuff there going on that it shouldn't be. You're right. I'm not up for that. But, you know what I'm up for? For taking a change in something that is going to be useful. Not that break more families. Guess what? You're breaking my own. You're breaking me to be apart from my kids. And I want my daughter to say something. Senor injunction, you know?
No to gang injunction.
Yeah.
No to gang injunction, protect me in my life.
And I want you to guys know that my daughter is only three years old, and for her to say injunction, it's a big word.
Jocelyn Verdine, followed by Ariel Mesa. If Chadlene is not here, Ariel Mesa, followed by Jayden Rocha.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. I am not a twin of Lou Korea. I've been confused. He's better looking than I am. Our bishop was honored today, Bishop Abel Aguilar, a pastor at Christian Tabernacle. And two generations were honored, have given to this city. My father passed it for 23 years. So, our church has a long history here. And I've been involved, as many of you know, in this issue of families and our youth. And I waited here this long to be here tonight and to talk about this issue also, that I believe, you know, gangs and violence, it's a multi-layered issue that is not easily solved. But, I think there are alternatives. In many cities across the country, in urban cities, there are alternatives. And we have great examples of how we can work together as a community. And I'm speaking as a faith leader because I've spoken to many of my colleagues, pastors in this city. And we are concerned, and we want to be part of this. You heard the pain, the sorrow, the hurt that is in our youth and our children and our families. And I can tell you stories here tonight of many that I have walked along. But, again, my message to you is that, Councilmen, law enforcement, if we can come together, and the faith community, and have a serious dialogue, and find new ways, suppression will give us short-term solutions. And we really need a long-term solution to meet the needs of our young population. Many of the children in this city live in some of the most difficult and violence-ridden neighborhoods. And that's who I'm advocating for, is a different solution. And I would like to challenge the council to sit down and let's come together and make this a priority. Mayor Bloomberg, former Mayor Bloomberg in New York City, invested, gathered together the city agencies, and they started an initiative to work with young men and change the dynamics. And I believe this city can do it. He invested his own money, 30 million, the mayor, okay? I'm only saying.
Yeah.
Well, maybe there's a Councilman, you know, if we can invest 20 million in a wonderful school that we have, not too far from our own place, why can't we invest in the most valuable asset, which is our youth and our children?
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much.
Jayden Rocha and Vanessa Gonzalez.
Hi. Can you look at me and not be stirring? Thank you. Okay. You know what? I'm against gang injunction. It's racist and it's wrong. Okay? This police officer is a disgrace. How could you tell a youth that you're going to punch him? You should be ashamed of yourself. Okay? Not only does it separate families, oh, well, I guess you guys like separating families, right? Because the Santa Ana PD had a contract with ICE, right? So, you guys love it, right? It's wrong, and that shouldn't be here in Santana and nowhere else. It's wrong.
Vanessa, followed by Genevieve Weezer. After Genevieve, if she, Alexis, is Alexis here? Are you Genevieve Weezer?
I am.
Please go ahead.
Well, first of all, started off all nice, you know, giving awards, and you have the pastors come up. And, you know, it's all nicety, and you save us for the end, which is fine. You talked, how long was it, over an hour, about marijuana, you know? So, my question to you, are you all now drug dealers, getting marijuana into this, you know, system? It's supposed to be for medical, but we all know that it can go in the hands of other people, not medically. The marijuana issue should be in a pharmacy. It should be regulated. It shouldn't be done by council members. But, you're all going to benefit from that money, right? Also, to the police stations, to increase police, to increase enforcement, to increase the guns. You have the neighborhoods scared to death. This officer, I'm going to call him a jerk, the way he's been staring at me the whole time, the way, and don't do that. You're an asshole. Yes.
Please, please, please.
She get him out of here. He went back there and threatened the youth to punch him. You know, what the stuff is going on?
Please. We can't have this type of conduct, so let's.
This is killing a youth? This is a praise speech.
It is.
You should, this is a praise speech. Okay, so I'm gonna get to my point.
Please, please.
Which is the gang injunction, where you wanna criminalize a section of people where they can't come outside, they have to stay in their homes, they can't do anything. I mean, we know there are issues out there. We know there is crime out there. We know there's drugs out there. But you can't put a section of people in cages this way. That's what it is. It's caging them. You know, where's the freedom? After this, yeah, my time's up. After this, when you have a gang injunction and you send the ICE in there, and you have all these concentration camps that are gonna house immigrants, undocumented people? This stuff is just too much of government crap. No to gang injunctions.
Thank you, Alexis. Is Alexis here? Now Teodaro.
I wanted to ask.
Followed by Roberto, Robert Sanchez.
I...
Please go ahead.
Okay. Alexis has to go, but I wanted to see if it's possible for me to talk and more because it's very, it hits home. I'm not gonna bash on anybody. If anything, brother, the system's making us break each other. It sucks. I live in Santa Anita area. Twenty-two years old. My parents raised me well. So I give respect, even when I know that there isn't respect and feedback from people and we're supposed to be human beings. Yes, my neighborhood has gone from up and down. I lived right in front of a place that sold drugs, but I came out fine. I just, I can't believe you guys can really, really, really live with the fact that you're not only breaking homes, you're breaking human beings. And I don't think that was your intention ever, ever. Please, stop. Not only does this bring injustice, it brings hate. It brings broken people to a broken spot where we don't even feel welcomed anymore. We're in an area secluded by freeways, and we can't leave. I have no racist views with people that are not from my color, but it hurts and I get angry. And if I had a child, I would want him or her to be proud to be a Santa Anita. I am now seeing the consequences of the gang injunction. People can't even walk to the corner of Pacific Market. Harvard has become a highway in our homes. We're getting kicked out. We're getting kicked out, and it's not fair. Thank you for listening, but you know what? We're still gonna be fighting, and if you're not with us, que Dios los ayude.
Thank you, Robert Sanchez, followed by Erica Navarro.
Hello, mayor Protem, I mean, mayor and city council members.
Go ahead and pull that just way up. There you go.
I can speak a little better. I'm against gang injunctions. I'm not here to defend the Townsend Street gang. I'm here to defend our youth. The city's police department and the DA are criminalizing our youth who live in the Townsend neighborhood, who have been put in gang injunction list. Out of 29 people listed in enforcement list, seven of them are minors. Gang injunctions use minor infraction such as jaywalking, riding a bike without a helmet as justification for placing minors with no criminal record, no affiliation with Townsend Street gang on the list. This breaks our youth's civil rights. Our community does not need an injunction. Our community needs resources, not more jails and prisons. We are not, which we know they are not the answer. That doesn't stop a criminal from committing more crime. Once he serves his time, I believe in education, who can help and change our youth in the right direction. We need job training, job placement. We need comprehensive summer programs. I come here as a good friend, asking with good faith, to work together to find a solution, not criminalize our youth. If you could please help us find a solution and help us find answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica, followed by Gilberti, I believe it is. And after Gilberti, Gabby Hernandez, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Erica Navarro. As you can see and hear, here tonight, there's a lot of family members, community members that are in pain. I've come here to talk about the misrepresentation of community needs. We're hearing what we don't want, but I want to have you listen to what we do want. This community, our community, needs counseling. We need job training, job placement. We need trauma-informed care. We need comprehensive summer programming for a lot of the youth that are getting criminalized this way. The police department and the DA don't want to invest in the community. Police suppression and violence won't stop the violence within the communities. Taking away people's civil rights doesn't heal a community. It doesn't provide a path for rehabilitation. It doesn't provide an incentive to be a productive community member when your family is getting torn apart. This creates anger, despair. Jailing youth and their fathers and their brothers and their uncles creates chaos in the family, and it creates instability. So I ask that you not turn your attention away from the real needs of this community. This community needs to be heard. This community needs dignity and respect. Gracias.
Thank you. Gilberti, followed by Gabby Hernandez.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Gilbert Belmontes, and I've been a longtime resident of Santa Ana since approximately 1971. I remember a time when there was only one police force. Now, we have school police, we have park police, we have police police. What are we, unarmed camp? I have been subjected through the years living here in Santa Ana, for lack of a better word, police brutality. There was an officer here that was just pointed out and said something. Of course, his word will be believed over ours. And I've learned to accept this, and I'm not here for me, I'm here for the youth, so the youth do not have to go through the system, juvenile hall, county jail, state prison. I've been there, done that, okay? And I still live in the same address I've lived since 1971. I've seen the changes in this city, and the changes are more police, more laws, more repression, disrespect from the police. I see an incident in front of my house, and I go out to see it, and I get accused of threatening this officer. How are we gonna have a communication with what I perceive as an oppressive force, just based on my experience? And this is going on and on, and I don't see it getting any better because it's just about pointing fingers. You're criminals. You know, you are this, you are that, but we cannot come to a common ground because there is a divide, and this is just my personal opinion. I see the divide. And I ask you, council members, who do you support? The community? The people that live there, that work hard? Or a repressive police department who sees everybody as a criminal? That is what I see. That is what I lived. That is what I perceive. And I know there's a lot of people here that believe the same thing, but most, either for lack of articulation, lack of education, will not come out here and speak forth. And those of us that do will be attacked because we don't have the credibility, at least I don't have the education, I don't have the plaques on the wall. But what I do have, the police know very well, and they use it against me all the time. Again, I leave, I will leave you with two questions. What does the chief, who does the chief and the SAPD work for? Who, within the city's structure, initiated this gang injunction? I hope to have an answer soon. I'm sure the whole community would like that answer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And after Gabby, Micaelia, I believe, and Anaya. Please go ahead.
Can I go after Micaelia, because I really would like Mr. Benabides to hear me.
Fine. Fine. You wanna just wait your turn, that's fine. Alfonso Alvarez? All right, you wanna speak, he'll come back to listen to you. You're a popular guy.
Well, this is his word. So I'm Gabby Hernandez, and I come here, I'm a mental health therapist, I work for Orange County, and I also come as a human being. And I'm so surprised that all this tension is going on and like adult bullying, like it's not acceptable. It's not, because this is what we teach our kids, but yet the moment that they make a mistake, we wanna lock them up. The lady in the back, she has a floral shirt on, she turned around and called the kids stupid idiots. I mean, like, what is going on? Get it together, adults. So what I wanna talk about is, I have clients that live in Townsend. There's an eight-year-old, there's seven-year-olds that are identified as gang members. Their families wanted to come, but they fear retaliation. There's an 11-year-old who is a poster child for the GRIP program, yet he stopped when he's walking down the street in Townsend. Now, this is a reality for a lot of these kids. They're seven, they're eight, they don't even have the brain development to make these rational choices. And knowing some of the youth that are put on this gang injunction, there's a 17-year-old that's been homeless since he was 12, sleeping in people's garages and sleeping in people's cars. Twelve! He's on probation, he's been on probation since he was 12, yet nobody has responded to his basic needs. All we wanna do is just focus on him breaking the law. We have a sibling set that's 15 and 16 years old, both on the injunction, that have endured a life of trauma, of substance abuse in the family, and they have never received the services that they need, but yet they're disposable. We can just throw them away. I mean, these are children that we're talking about. Gang injunctions are forever. Yeah, we might wanna say there's opting-out procedures. Opting-outs are very difficult. Since 1987, two people have been removed. Two! It's not that easy. But yet we're gonna criminalize these kids at 15, 16 years old for life, for the rest of their life. See, injunctions are permanent orders. They never expire. Even when you guys move on with your political careers or become grandparents, these gang injunctions will still be there. There's a gang injunction in L.A. that has three generations, grandparent, the grandfather's on there, the father, and the son. It's easy to be identified and placed on this list. If you guys read the Vasquez versus Roca case, you will see that the district attorney in the Orange PD made a lot of mistakes, and they had to pay, the taxpayers actually had to pay over $3.3 million. We have all that information for you. We would love to share. We would love to have a meeting with any of you and give you our information. And we also have a lot of the research that law enforcement publishes. So we're not saying just listen to us. Listen to the, but look at the big picture and look at the detrimental effects of gang injunctions. We're not saying that these issues, that there's no issues in Townsend. We can all agree that there is. But this is not the solution. You can't arrest your way out of this issue. Now, there's root causes for why kids are put into gangs. If we can address those issues and work as a collaborative, we can then start hashing these issues out, but not this way. There's three claims about gang injunctions that you must understand. The first, it claims that the area is an urban gang war zone, that it is so dangerous that people are stuck inside. They can't come out of their homes, they can't operate their daily living. You've been on Saturday and Sunday driving downtown, say, there's fiestas everywhere. Santa Ana is considered...
Will you please conclude? No, Gabby, you're eloquent, but please conclude.
Thank you. Santa Ana is the fourth safest city in the nation. So is it safe or is it urban war zone? The second one is that gang injunctions claim that all remedies have been exhausted. Have all the remedies been exhausted? Do you guys even know where remedies have been utilized? Have you guys conducted an analysis of the community, what the needs are, where the loopholes are? No! We're actually doing that. We're going door-to-door, conducting surveys because we wanna help. Because whether this gang injunction goes through or not, we will still care. The gang injunction also says...
Please, if you can conclude.
That it'll abate the problem, that it will end the problem. I can guarantee you that it won't. No gang injunction has ever ended the gang injunction, the gang problem.
Micaelia, you would be next, and then Alfonso Hernandez. Micaelia, Anaya. If not, Alfonso Alvarez, are you here? And if not, then Sara Guerrero.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. I'm Dr. Alfonso Alvarez. I was born and raised from the city of Santa Ana. I'm currently a resident of Santa Ana. I'm a social worker by profession, and over the course of the years, I've been involved with a lot of different activities to make this a better city. I've been involved with gang prevention, gang intervention. I've been involved a lot with veterans' issues, homeless issues. And I'm doing all that because I want to make this a better city for my daughter. I have a seven-year-old daughter, and I want to leave this a better city for her. I'm here today to comment on the current Townsend Street gang injunction. As a social worker and as a social psychologist, it is my professional opinion that this gang injunction is bad public policy. I am not advocating for gangs. I am advocating for the protection of our personal liberties. I am advocating for the protection of our personal rights, and I am advocating for the protection of our constitutional rights. With civil gang injunctions, a person is considered guilty until proven innocent. The most concerning part of the current gang injunction is that it includes seven children, the youngest being 15 years old. Gang injunctions should be used as a last resort. Through this current gang injunction, the message that has been sent is that we have given up on our children. Research shows that there are reasons why people join gangs. Research shows that there are reasons why people leave gangs. The money and resources being spent on this gang injunction could be better utilized on evidence-based practices, which would make this a better community. Our community does not need a gang injunction. What we need are resources to keep people out of poverty and out of gangs. The money spent on the gang injunction could be better spent on a family resource center to help revitalize the community. In the field of social work, we operate under the premise that given the resources and support, we can make a positive change in people's lives. Let's make the children of Townsend, of the Townsend community, our priority. Thank you.
Sara, is Sara Guerrero, and if not, Madeline Spencer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, again, Sara Guerrero, and I'm here on behalf of South Coast Repertory, but also as a resident of Santana. Hearing everybody speak about what's going on in the city is why I love this city so much and why I'm very proud to have been born and raised in Santana. With that said, I'm very excited because of a project called Dialogos, where we've covered and reached and collected the stories of over 1,000 people in Santana. And hearing stories like this, and hearing stories about children being lost and people wanting change because they want a better community, they want to be heard, they want to live here, they want to thrive, and they want respect and dignity. And this play, I'm very proud of because it is the stories of the community. And we are less than three months away from the production. And although I don't have an overhead projector, here are some beautiful renderings of the play, and I think we have, there are packets for you, and I wish I could show all of you. We are set to produce the play right outside here in the civic center. It's open spaces. And one of the things that have been brought up in the story is lack of open spaces for safe playing for children and families. So the idea... So the idea to bring communities together, to share the stories in both languages, in Spanish and English, and using dance, music, puppetry, toy theater to celebrate the community and the stories, I'm very, again, proud of. And again, another wonderful thing about this project is we are looking to invite the community, it's an open call, tryouts, auditions, for the community, which begin July 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th, in Latino Health Access, which is our community partner. If you have no experience, if you have experience, if you only speak English, if you only speak Spanish, if you don't speak either language, just come and audition. Again, it's an open call. And again, what's been beautiful about this project is really being able to bring together people like yourselves who want to make change, who want to change the perception of Santana, and have, and respect the love that they have in their communities. Because that's why I stay here, and that's why I advocate for this community. And not only for my community, but for the arts, because it is a way of healing, and it is a way of expression, and a way of love and power. So I invite you all to, again, be aware of it, read your material, learn about the information on the website, and if you have any questions, I'm here if you'd like to ask. Thank you again.
Thank you, Madeline Spencer. And after Madeline, Richard Moser.
Good evening, Council, staff, city manager, city attorney. I actually, you guys started this whole meeting tonight with "celebration" was the word that you were using, "sermanto." And there are two things that I actually came here to celebrate tonight, and one of them is at the state level, and one of them is here in this city, and I'll start with the city, since so many people just came up and spoke. And I would like to celebrate the fact that the work of the Santa Ana Unified School District, who were given the opportunity through local control funding to actually reach out to this community and ask what the residents wanted to see happen in education, have outreach to over 5,000 residents all over the city, holding 24 forums, and a small dedicated group of parents and students have succeeded in conveying to the school the necessity to create and support a climate for students through restorative justice practice rather than incarceration. The school district has given $4 million for the next eight years to this process throughout all the schools in Santa Ana. That is amazing. The second thing is that the state has passed, first, last Tuesday, a resolution AJR-1 calling a constitutional amendment stating that money does not constitute speech and overturning corporate personhood. And only yesterday, we also passed SB 1272, in which the state has submitted an advisory question allowing the public to vote in the next election to get money out of politics and to overturn corporate personhood in this nation. And the question that I have for you is this. In the state of California, we're currently in a water crisis. In the county where I go to school, Santa Barbara, near Santa Barbara, there's been a water rationing going on for some time. GIS tracking systems has been monitoring gross water usage, and the people are being fined for overuse. Yet here in Santa Ana, I see pavement watered around the French Park every night. I see people, I saw somebody on Alton, actually watering and also having their, with a hose and also having sprinklers. I have seen neighborhoods, us promising to power hose on South Main, and heard about the park having brand-new, tons of brand-new plants brought in. And I have never once seen in this city a single flyer, even though I know, because I've seen it on the calendar, that both Miguel Polito and Sarmiento have spoken to people about this water crisis. Now, the question that I have is, last year, Sarmiento brought this up, there was pollution going on with our water. I don't think anybody would think that there's anything more important than water, yet at the same time, we have not been told about water and the problems of water. And tonight, we had the senator come up and speak about that for a minute, but I don't think people knew on the backhand why he was speaking about it. And I just want to say, if we're not being told about something as important in this city as water, what else aren't we being told about?
Thank you, Madeline. Richard Moser, followed by Vincent Coleman.
This is about item 55C, which is the Bristol Street widening and the property acquisition. And on the agenda, you'll notice that 55C has been postponed and continued five times this year, from February, March, April, May, and June. And I would like to commend the council on doing that, because that's exactly the right thing you should have been doing. Because item 55C goes back to 1987, and it's continuing, and it'll be continuing for another five years. In 1987, there was the Bristol Corridor redevelopment project that studied for three years widening Bristol, which is almost finished. And at this point, something has changed that you need to revise the plan. The plan at that time was organized as to what the sections were being done. Well, right now, you're in the process of acquiring property from 13th Street to 17th Street, or from Washington to 17th Street. If you Google that section, you'll see that the street is already wide there, and that the narrowing part of Bristol is south of there and north of there. So you're doing a part that really doesn't need to be widened. What happened was, Santa Ana College gave their property up some time ago. So what you should be doing is widening the section that needs to be widened, which is from 10th to 13th, or north of 17th. And that will solve the problem. There is no problem really right there where that's being done. And then, so what you need to do is revise the priority of which section to do first, and then you can deal with this last, because it's almost not a problem at all. So what I would suggest is you continue it another 60 days or 30 days, and this time, you ask the staff, not, "Why can't we revise the order of a construction?", but is there somebody on the staff that can figure out how to do this, how to do the right thing, which is to widen the street where it needs to be widened, and leave the part that's already widened alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vincent, followed by Tracy Simmons.
Good evening. I'm here for the Bristol Street-
Go ahead.
-widening as well. What I've come to realize after living and driving up and down Bristol since the late 60s is that my vision of what Bristol should look like when completed is not exactly what the Bristol Street business or the city leaders may envision. My perfect Bristol, based on past promises that have been made since we moved into our home on Louise in 1991, would include the following. Safety for cars, pedestrians, and bike riders. Continuous sidewalks running the length of Bristol from Civic Center to Washington and from Washington to 17th Street. Public streetlights to improve safety and reduce accident rates. A 10-foot high-visibility wall with plannings to protect our homes from noise, pollution, intruders, and to prevent graffiti. Meandering medians and parkways planned with grass and trees. Underground utilities. Improved intersections. No more blight that includes abandoned homes and dirt lots. Continue with the style of the beautiful Bristol Street widening project to the south to appear just like that on our Washington Square border to the west. Following are the areas of concerns for the Washington Square residents, particularly those of us that live on Louise Street. The full-take plan should be implemented with regards to the businesses and houses that are on the east side of Bristol between 17th and Washington to ensure vehicle, pedestrian, and cyclist safety. Thus providing the proper width for sidewalks, curbs, parkways with the continuity of the beautiful landscape and center medians that is currently to the south on Bristol. Two, Bristol and Washington intersection needs reconfiguration to accommodate traffic flow and to mitigate serious safety issues that are currently present. And three, a proposed visibility wall should be at least 10 feet and covered in trellis and vines to discourage graffiti. You know the saying, "Third time's the charm." We are now in the third phase of the Bristol Street widening project, and I am hoping that the third phase, like the first two, is charming and continues on the track in the direction with the vision to be one of the best-looking streets in Orange County. I respectfully encourage you to vote in support of the full-take, which will beautify this portion of Bristol, which is a major gateway to the city of Santa Ana. By doing so, you will assist in supporting the vision that was initially intended when the Bristol Street widening project broke ground and began in 1991, which is ironically the same year we moved to our home on Louise. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And thank you also for your love of Washington Square and your service to the community. Tony Michalaski, I believe it is, followed by Parka Rosmaniz. Tony, tell me how to pronounce your last name, please.
Michelski.
Got it.
So, good evening, Councilman and Mayor. Thank you for having me and the opportunity to speak. I'm here with part of the Washington Square Neighborhood Association, respectfully requesting the full-take as well with respect to the Bristol Street widening project. Several times during previous council member meetings, you've mentioned the notion of complete streets and the vision that you've had of developing a complete street for Bristol. And with respect to this, the major component of a complete street is to ensure safe flow of vehicular, cyclist, and pedestrian traffic. That's the main component of the complete street to allow for all ways and methods of transportation to occur. In order to have that complete street vision, you need to have the full-take. And that's one of the reasons why we, as a neighborhood, respectfully request this. I know that the Bristol, excuse me, the Bristol Street Business Coalition has met with the city planners and city staff, and spoken here on behalf of their interests, in trying to define a reason why a full-take is not needed and they can remain in their current locations. It's been clearly demonstrated by the city planners and staff with respect to the surveys they've done and the studies as to why that complete full-take is needed. And this is even more imperative now with the complete street idea. In addition to the full-take, as Tracy had mentioned, we'd also like to bring of concern the visibility wall. That's been discussed numerous times. That's still a concern of the neighborhood, as well as the reconfiguration of the intersection of Bristol Street and Washington. And the safety issues with both the entry and the exit from the neighborhood, that's still an issue for us getting in and out of the neighborhood and for emergency vehicles that need to come in. Thirdly, the remediation of the vacant lot at the northeast corner of Bristol and Washington. It's a blighted lot that's been sitting there. Now that the environmental issues are hopefully over with, we'd like to see that improved and so that we don't have graffiti and riffraff and other things happening there on that corner. So again, I just want to close with the urgency to take a full-take on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Tony. Now, Parisha Rojan-Zamir.
Good evening. I'm here because I'm here to disagree with attachment of penalties to the tax bills of the properties. And that's because, in my opinion, a lot of the citations and violations that, as property owners, we're getting are not really valid. I'm getting citations all the time for permits for windows that have already been there for many years, and I have not replaced them or remodeled. And I'm getting citations for my tenants leaving their trash outside, where I have no power to tell them what to do. You know, my power as a landlord and what's given to me as my rights are very limited by law. And I cannot control my tenants. And if I do that, I will get in trouble with them, as I have in the past, where they know how the law works and what their rights are. And they will just stay there, not pay me rent, and I will have to evict them. So I'm asking you to please not attach these charges to property tax bills. And furthermore, I think you need to know that a lot of these charges are being attached to our water bills. Last month, I got a hefty water bill for almost like $2,000, and they were for just penalties that your code officers, code enforcement officers have just written, and, you know, it's just really, really, really disturbing to own a property and have to go through all these challenges, because it's just, the law doesn't give us that much power to fight with our tenants and set them right in the right direction as they need to be.
Parisha, if I may, and, you know, forgive me, I think it's Rojan-Zamir, your last name.
Yes, sir.
Why don't you please meet with our city manager? May he can review the package and what you're talking about. It's difficult for us to react, but seems to me like you have enough facts and evidence that maybe a meeting with our city manager might be a good thing.
Thank you, sir.
You know him, he's right there.
Yes.
Thank you. So with that, we have another speaker, Ramon Campos, I believe. Maybe Mr. Campos decided to go home. Maybe that's what we should do. No, we still, now we have our consent calendar, I believe. And so now we get to start our meeting, our regular meeting. Any items on the consent calendar that council members wish to pull or address?
Mayor 10A, I'd like to abstain, I did not attend the meeting on June 12th.
Okay.
Mayor 25G.
You want to pull it?
Yes.
She said yes like she has a big discussion on it.
No, no, I already had a conversation via email with our city manager, Public Works Director.
I'm kidding you, I'm kidding you, a little levy at the end of meetings, okay. All right.
I'll move the balance.
Do we have motion on the balance? Any other comments?
22C, I'd like to pull.
Mayor Protem, anything from you?
Nope.
Okay. C, nothing else, I would entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Before we do that-
Please.
I do apologize. I do have to-
Abstain?
Abstain from 22B. I think I might have received a contribution there.
From either Park House Tire or Daniel's Tire?
Yes, I just need to, out of-
All right, Adam Goshen, he's not voting on that item, that's fine. So we have a motion to stay on the balance. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. Now I'm going to direct our attention to the business calendar. Item 55A, I would entertain a motion. Oh, excuse me, yes.
25G.
So 22C first.
Yes, just a question for-
Just want to go home, Michelle.
Question for staff on this one, wondering if we would be able to continue this item through days, kind of, just came across some information on some new technology, a vendor that I would like to be able to have our staff meet and talk to to see if there would be, if this new technology and this vendor that I was-
All right, so this is manhole frames and covers.
Right, so just would it, does it do anything to-
Two weeks is okay? Please make a motion.
Can you do 30 days? Just to make sure that there's enough-
Make a motion, please.
30-day continuance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nobody opposed? So now 25G, Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just briefly, I am in support, but I just want to state for the record publicly, and I had a conversation via email with our city manager and our Public Works Director, William Galvez. We're moving forward here with the YMCA and, you know, making improvements. Certainly, that is our responsibility, it's our asset, we should have been taking care of this for 20-plus years, it shouldn't look like that. I want to thank our city manager for making the commitment to improve the facade at this moment in time, as we are in negotiations with St. Joseph's. The problem that I did ask earlier to both of them was the- The problem that I did ask earlier to both of them was the RFP process and wanting to make sure as we move forward as a city that we're transparent, that we're complying with the Sunshine Ordinance. I understand this issue is of sensitivity as we're wanting to make the enhancements. And the contractor that we have was a previous contractor of the city, but it just recently expired. And so what I would like to recommend, moving this item forward, that we have a list, as we have a list of various different attorneys, that our city attorney can look upon to. We should also have a list of contractors in case of issues that arise like this, that we just don't have one to go to and then one that their contract has expired with the city. So I just wanted to take that note into effect and put it in the record as we move forward that we don't have these incidents again. But I support this, 25G.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. Just, Miss City Manager, please, you know, the sooner the better. I know you get that. Thank you, sir. So with that, I think, please.
Mayor, we're committed to have it done within 30 days, and we know this is very urgent.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, 55A, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Is there a second for the Mayor Protem's?
Second.
Soft motion?
Soft motion?
Soft, it was literally a motion approved, like, not a strong, but we'll take it. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. 55B.
So moved.
That was a little stronger, and that's a good second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. Now let's look at 55C. We're continuing this, or what are we doing? It's just before us?
I will make a motion.
That's stronger.
Mr. Mayor, before we move that item, I'm going to recuse myself and abstain from this matter. I did receive a campaign contribution from some of the property owners on that. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
Discussion.
Discussion, please.
I just want to just urge staff to do everything we can to underground the wires, electrical wires, on this stretch. I know we missed it at the last section. We've had discussions and there was comments from Edison that their funds had.
William, why don't you come on up, please?
Councilman Ray, I know, was pushing, bringing that item up numerous times before this go around. We just need to press Edison. I believe that there's some issues. Anyway, money's an issue, but I think that there's some leverage that we might have there because of some recent overcharging or something of that sort.
William, can you address that, please?
Yeah, we have, every year, we get an allocation from Southern California Edison to underground utility lines, particularly in arterial streets and major streets in the city. Right now, the balance that we have, we're just recovering from actually a negative balance because Edison was allowing us to expend funds ahead of time in future years. So, I believe our balance is around half a million dollars. We would need to have about a million, over a million dollars in order to make an underground district viable. We can certainly continue looking as to how we can make this happen. Perhaps we can continue dialoguing with Edison to see if maybe they'll allow us to spend more years into the future. And that would be a possibility to have more money available for undergrounding.
So, thank you. Let's just make sure it continues, that dialogue and press, do everything we can on any of these widening going forwards. Once they're up, they're, you know, we beautify the street, but then this continues to be a nightmare. So that's just my comment. I'll be supportive.
I completely agree. I think we get one chance to do it right and do it right the first time, especially down such a major thoroughfare for our community in Bristol. I guess my question is, from Washington North to 17th, do we have any power lines?
I believe we do.
No.
Sorry, dear.
Good question, Rome.
All right. As we continue to move forward, I know that there is a segment that somebody we were talking about earlier that's not quite on the agenda yet. And I completely agree with my colleague, Ben Avitas, that we really need to look at additional funding, where we may find those dollars. City manager will be really creative so that we're able to do so. I really appreciate you keeping that on your radar. Thank you.
And one final request would be, I know at some point, we talked about the ability to go back and underground the portion that was missed. I understand it may not be that difficult, that there's some land adjacent to the sidewalk and that potentially in the future, we could underground those. So if you could just look at that, maybe in the future, bring it back to council with some ideas, it'd be beautiful to see a beautiful Bristol all the way down the length. And I think that's possible. Thank you, William. Thank you. So I believe we had a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Let's get Councilor Vince Armento back in here. Folks are clapping late. That was a weak clap, but it was late in the day and I like it when you do this instead. All right, well, I'm trying to discourage clapping, but today people are so angry, I just let them clap. They had a, you know, they had a clap, but, and I think it was good. But you guys can clap, it's late.
Mayor, I normally don't talk up too much, but I think this is, I would like the Bristol Street people.
Guys, can you listen for a moment? Nancy.
And the staff, and the council, and the mayor. This has been a tremendous effort, and to have a consensus on this project is really important. So I just want to thank the mayor and the council and the staff and the.
Thank you. We've all worked for years on this, onward and forward. All right, so with that, now we start a public hearing, but you guys can go home. Item 75A.
So moved.
Well, we have to have a, it was continued.
Oh, I thought you started the public hearing presentation.
Don't, Madam Clerk, do I, I have to open it. Can we say I didn't? No, I'm kidding. This is a time I would like to call to order a public hearing to approve the recovery of uncollected costs for abatement of dangers and abandoned buildings for the fiscal year 2013-2014. We don't need a public presentation unless there's questions from council members, so let me open up the public hearing. It is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications?
None received.
And do we have any requests from any speaker in the audience to speak on this item? Please go ahead. Just afterwards, fill out a green card, please. Go ahead, just come to the mic and talk to us, please. Just bring down the microphone. Bring it down.
Sure, sure. I wasn't notified about anything, and then I've been coming in, you know, on a regular basis to City Hall. And I've gotten something from Paula Cortez as well as Avaro Nunez, you know, pointing out that, you know, I paid any kind of fines and everything should be okay. I want to verify that this, because one of the ways I was notified and wasn't informed that I was notified was it was published in the register, the legal register. And so who do I, who do I?
Miss City Manager, can you maybe later have her talk with staff and maybe they can?
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Because I was told that this was resolved, but I want to verify that it's resolved because I can't trust you all. In the past, you've put a fence around my property and said you.
We'll make sure you talk to staff and they'll make sure that either you have a resolution or if you need to do something, they'll tell you what you need to do. Thank you. Anybody else wish to addresses on this matter? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it to council for consideration. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Those were both pretty good. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. Now 75B, I believe, is another public hearing, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
And I have to open it, so here we go. At this time, I would like to call to order a public hearing to approve the recovery of uncollected administrative citation fines for fiscal year 2013/14. So with that, we'll have staff available for questions. Madam Clerk, anything written into the record?
I have not received any.
No, no, no notices?
Motion to approve.
Well, wait a minute. I have to open up the public hearing. Does anybody wish to addresses at this time? See, no one. I'm going to close the public hearing and call on Mayor Protem.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries unanimously now. Another public hearing, but we're on a roll. This is a time I'd like to call a public hearing to approve weed abatement public nuisance report for the fiscal year 2013/14. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
None received.
I will now open up the public hearing. Does anybody from the audience wish to addresses? See, no one. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for consideration.
Motion to approve.
That was a good one. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries. Now, we have yet another one. This is a time I would like to call a public hearing to reaffirm and revise the fiscal year 2013-14-15 budget and fiscal year 2014-15 missing only a fee resolution and a proposed amendment to execute management classifications to add, delete, modify selected job titles, including special assistant to the city manager. Do we have any written communications, Madam Clerk?
None received.
Does anybody wish to addresses on this item?
It's $127,000 a year.
Well, if you want to come, please. All right, we'll have them fill out a card later. This is Thomas Gordon. Please go ahead.
I've got a question. That's $127,000 a year position. I was, what is that exactly? I know what $127,000 is. What does a position do? Because I know we have an assistant city manager back here, Mark Lawrence, right? Is that who that is or is this another person?
Well, look, why don't we let him ask all the questions? I'll close the hearing, then we can answer him. Is that, do you have another question, Thomas?
It's concerning to me. We have a lot of, I mean, Mark does a fantastic job. He's a rock star, but we need another assistant to the city manager?
Mark is now high.
We've got an analyst now, and we, I mean, there's a lot of, the A4 is going to tip right over. It's, we can afford $127,000 assistant, shouldn't we get a bookmobile?
All right, fair enough. Anybody else? Okay, now I'm going to close the public hearing. Let me bring it back. Please, Miss City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Member of City Council. We had two deputy city managers in the past. There was a decision made by the council to eliminate one deputy city manager and create two management and analyst positions, and we did that. We have filled those positions. The other deputy city manager has been vacant for nine months. We haven't had one. We did a recruitment and we had three individuals that were finalists. We didn't have the right fit. So in about six months, we'll go out again and try and find somebody. But in the interim, we are asking that we have this position. And I've identified Mr. Robert Cortez, who's here in the audience. He's currently an assistant finance director, so he'll come over as an interim. We're not adding a position, it's an underfield position. We're actually saving money in this situation, and he'll be working in the manager's office until such time that we recruit and find a deputy city manager. So it's not an additional position, we're actually saving money by doing this.
Okay, let me bring it to council. Councilor Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Please indulge me here. I've been waiting for this item for quite a while. And so what I'm going to start off with, because it's numbered by recommendation actions, one, and then two and three, I'm going to start with one. And the information's been provided to the council. These are the booklets, the CIP, the budget, the proposal, the fees. And for the most part, I'm pretty supportive, and I had a conversation with our city manager yesterday over lunch, and some of the disagreements where I'm at, but it was friendly. And we may not agree all the time, but it was friendly. And my colleagues are laughing because, you know, at the end of the day, I believe it's our responsibility to hold staff accountable. We may not agree with all our staff's recommendations, and it's okay. Staff sometimes is not going to agree all the time with our policy, but we're the policymakers, and if we want to move forward with policy, we do it. We have the power and the authority to do so. We were vested by the voters to have that kind of power. I want to talk about, really quickly, about the capital improvement program and the process. And certainly, I want to thank our staff. They've done a tremendous job with the resources they have to put what they need to put together. But where I disagree is in the process. One, we didn't comply with the Sunshine Ordinance, and, you know, I'm going to ask my city attorney to speak about that a little bit. But I think it's extremely important when we connect the CIP with the budget and when we have our budget reviews with the community. The CIP is very high level, and you're talking about the budget, and there's never ever any kinds of discussions about the capital improvement program. And I'll tell you that when we're doing private projects, there is a public hearing where the public gets to be involved. There is a process where the city council is involved in the private. But for the public projects in the CIP, we don't go through a process of such. The staff dictate what project should be in the CIP, and then they're brought to the council. It's not brought out to the community of what project should be a priority. And so moving forward, and I'm going to support this plan, but moving forward, I truly believe that we need to have a comprehensive planning process. And I've shared with our staff a sample of CIP, of community process booklet that Tandago has done. It's very clear, it's very concise, very easy to understand what the CIP is. And I really believe that our residents will actually like to participate. And myself, as a policymaker, I certainly would like to participate in this process. And so I wanted to state that, as it pertains to the Sunshine Ordinance, you know, a Madam City Attorney, based on the Sunshine Ordinance, we are, the budget was included in the Sunshine Ordinance, but the CIP is connected. So, am I misunderstanding or not, but should we have public outreach for our CIP as well as we are having it with the budget?
The Sunshine Ordinance requires staff to go out and meet with various groups and members of the public to discuss their priorities and the budgetary process. So I think anything that is part of the budget should be included within those discussions to be in full compliance with our ordinance.
So, thank you. I appreciate that. I won't say any more to that point. My other point that I would like to include, and my colleagues spoke about underground utilities, we have spoken about technology, about, you know, our assets and our infrastructure that we currently own as a city. And as we look at this CIP and our budget as we move forward, we've really, we look at a deferred maintenance on our assets. Right now, we just approved some money to fix the YMCA. We don't have any other funds through the general fund to have an actual reserve to actually help with moving our agenda forward with capital improvement projects or deferred maintenance. And so what I would like to request, and I've asked our city manager, and he would like to do a study session on this, is that as we move forward with complying with our reserve policy for the general fund, I think we're almost going to hit the mark fairly soon. We're going to have other one-time monies coming in, and we need to dictate where we want those money. I think it's very important that we start a capital financing, a reserve policy, so then we can go ahead and fix our Santa Ana senior centers, the YMCA's, look at underground utilities, looking at ADA restrooms at our parks, providing more money. And so there's a whole list of certain projects throughout the city that we can put together, and this is why I think the city manager wants to have a study session so that we can vet all these issues out. And I just think that we're fulfilling our commitment with the general fund. We should look at a policy, a reserve policy for capital facilities. And I shared a sample from Newport Beach. They're a very well-managed city. They had a great policy in place, and I've shared that with our staff already to take a look at that policy. So now I want to go to item number three, the proposed amendments to the executive management classifications and to delete and modify selected job titles. With all due respect, and as I mentioned to our city manager, you know, he's recommending for us to add this special assistant. I have concerns. One, when we decided to hire our city manager, you know, we wanted to make sure that we had our team in place. And he's now been in place here nine months, and he's done a fabulous job, so I'm going to give a high five. to give a high five to David. I'm going to give it to him on that note. But as well, we need to, as a city, as city council members, we need to be responsible in making sure that we have the executive management team. We don't know what's going to happen to David. Maybe tomorrow, we were visiting Medtronic's heart valves and all that other stuff yesterday as we were tuning. We never know what could happen to either one of us or to our city manager, and we need to have a succession plan. And that's why it's very important, and that's why it's very important that we have our deputy city manager in place. I certainly respect Robert Cortez. I believe Robert Cortez has done a phenomenal job in his position, but I don't see the correlation between a deputy city manager and his role as a special manager. And so I can't be supportive of that. And I know that our city manager is saying that six months from now, we're going to go back out and look for another deputy city manager. I just want us to hold our city manager accountable that you're going to do that, because we need to fill that position. And then I asked for some information in regards to what salary Robert currently had, and then also deputy city manager, and what the savings were. And there are substantial savings, Mr. City Manager, and I certainly agree that those savings are there. But we, as a council, as we approve budgets, we also have the responsibility, if there are any excess funds, how we're going to allocate those for the next fiscal year. And so I'm wanting my colleagues to understand that we do have that responsibility, but if we want our city manager to use those funds to fulfill the reserves, as he has mentioned to a couple of us, I'm definitely supportive of that. But I just wanted to publicly make comment of that, because at the end of the day, we have the fiduciary responsibility on our end to making sure that all these monies are being spent in the appropriate places, and we give you the authority to do so, as we are tonight with this revised budget. And then my last issue...
May I respond to that?
Yes, certainly, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. I did research the policy, and we do have a projected $11 million surplus, including the savings from both the deputy and from underfilling if the council approves the deputy position. And that would go to the reserve as the council directed, so it would go to the reserve.
Thank you. The final item is, as well, is the issue of the community preservation manager. Currently, it's in the MM class, and we're asking to reduce it to the AM class. I've spoken to our city manager. He's willing to keep it as an MM status. And, you know, I know Alvaro Nunez is out there in the audience, and I'll tell you, before Alvaro Nunez's time, we had Bruce Dunham's. And everyone loved Bruce, and Bruce did a fabulous job. He retired some time ago, and Alvaro took over that position, and he's done a tremendous job over the years. We just have not been able to get him to that position because of all the changes that we had, and then, of course, the issues we had financially. And so, you know, I think this is the perfect opportunity for us not to delete this position or demote the position from MM to AM, and then leave it up to you, Mr. City Manager, and of course, his boss, Karen Halusa, to figure that out. But at this moment in time, I want to make sure that we leave in the MM and not reduce it to AM. And those are my comments at this time. I was short.
Thank you. Do we have Councilor Benavides?
Yes, Mayor. I want to commend Councilwoman Martinez, because she captured quite a bit, and I concur with probably pretty much all of it. So, you know, it's just a good thing. But the two items I did want to touch on just briefly, one is I agree with the last item she just mentioned with regard to the community preservation position. It's clearly a very important one. We've been identifying funds to be able to dedicate, to dedicate funds for the hiring of new code enforcement officers, because that's been a priority recognized by the city council as well as members of the community. So making sure that we have the proper support, management, the class status, the classification status, I think, is important. So, and I agree that our current supervisor coordinator in that position is working very hard and doing an exceptional job. With regard to the deputy city manager, I do have a question. What is the timeframe, timeline on that? Can you tell us kind of what the process is? And I do agree that the whole idea of succession, we identified that role, that position, because it is something that we want to make sure to have the support, proper support, and executive level management. But we're a large city. There's a lot of comprehensive issues. I want to make sure that our executive managers have the support, the guidance that they need. Economic development is a huge challenge, opportunity that we have. We have a lot, the city manager has a lot on his plate currently. And so just want to make sure that we set ourselves up to capture every opportunity and that, again, we have the proper management support to be able to have our city continue to move forward. And I think that deputy, we identified it because we saw that it was a need. So if you can speak to that, please.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Benavides. Nobody wanted a deputy city manager more than me, because I'm doing that job and the one I have now. And we also have other vacancies, and everybody's stepping up. But the goal would be that, since that is the second highest ranking position in the city, and in the event that something does happen to me, and I hope it's not a heart attack, Michelle. I really don't want to go on tours with her anymore, because you notice how she offered me up for the valve, and not herself. But I don't want to make a situation where we have to make a decision. I would rather not have a position and have it vacant than to bring somebody on that I don't think is the right fit. And so even before I came, I made a change at that level, because I thought it was in the best interest of Santa Ana. We do need to continue to move forward. I am committed to doing the recruitment in six months. I hope we find an outstanding candidate, and we'll do everything to make that happen. So that's the commitment I'm making today.
Thank you. Six-month timeframe, sounds reasonable. Was there a motion?
I don't think yet, but there's another question, Councilor Reina, please.
So on section two, some of the additional areas that we're going to be talking about with increased fees are the street closures. And I know for the other activities, when we have rentals of facilities, we have different breakdowns, whether they're nonprofit, for-profit, Santa Ana-based, non-Santa Ana-based. There have been a lot of community activity, a lot of community celebrations, and definitely want to continue to support that. I guess my question is, is the street closure broken into a similar breakdown of whether it's nonprofit, for-profit, as well as I didn't see it?
Thank you, Councilman Roman. We do have a fee, and it applies to everybody, but when we do have partnerships with nonprofit agencies, and we're one of the partners that we sponsor, those are some of the things that we take in consideration.
Thank you. That was it.
Okay, so with that, then, you had pulled it earlier, or requested to speak on this, Councilor Martinez?
Yeah, I'm going to move forward on everything, my recommendations. And again, I'm just wanting to make sure that we will not delete the MM classification here. And then, as well, I will not be supportive on the special assistant to the city manager position.
Okay, so on that, so you're making a motion, but you yourself are voting no on that position. Is there a second?
It's the original motion, right?
The original motion.
She just made, you just made comments on your, okay, second.
And, but she herself, when she votes, Madam Clerk, she's voting no on that one criteria.
Oh, then, then...
Then it's not.
Then it's not original motion.
Mayor, maybe we can have someone make a motion that supports the staff recommendation?
And then, and then you can vote against that portion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second. And Councilor Martinez will vote against that?
Well, the staff recommendation, we want to make sure that we don't delete the MM from the AM, so you do have to make that amendment.
I concur with that.
Okay, I concur.
But that is, okay, so are you then changing staff recommendations?
Yes, we are going to outlaw that to stay as a middle manager for historic preservation.
Okay. And given... All right, so then the staff recommendation, now, Madam Clerk, for the record, it has that difference.
Motion to approve the new recommendation.
All right, so with that, those in favor?
Aye.
I'm just an old assistant, and yes, on everything else.
All right. So with that, I believe we're now on item ADA. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
So I recessed the city council meeting, called for a joint session of the city council on the housing authority. I will entertain a motion on item ADA.
So moved.
Second. And that's both the council actions and the housing authority actions. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. I'm now going to adjourn the joint session, reconvene the council, and on 85A, Councilor Reina, please.
Yes. You know, I've heard a lot of conversation within the community talking about, whether it be Santa Ana Fire or Orange County Fire Authority. The decision had taken place prior to myself being on the board and my colleague, Councilman Omesqua. And so I wanted to hear a little bit more about our contract with the fire authority, and what direction we're able to go into, how long is the contract, and what wiggle room may we end up having.
Thank you, Councilman Reina, member of the city council. I have reviewed the contract extensively, and we do have a 20-year term, and we do have a set amount with some escalators, no more than 4.5%. We are getting good service. And at the end of the day, if we were to terminate the contract, the first opportunity to give notice to the Orange County Fire Authority would be in 2018 for an effective date of 2020.
I'm sorry, so one more time, so we're in a 20-year contract?
Yes.
And if we wanted to amend it or adjust it and bring it back to any kind of adjustment, we wouldn't have the capability of doing that into 2018?
The notice period would be 2018 for an effective date of 2020.
Of 2020. And until that part, until that date, if we choose to move in that direction, we're pretty much locked into the contract with the Orange County Fire Authority. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I definitely appreciate this. Again, I know I'm relatively new to this particular topic. I wasn't here on the council when it took place. I do hear a lot of community buzz and talking about bringing back Santa Ana Fire. I would completely agree that any entity, any agent city having complete control over their safety is in a better situation. We have a great fire authority that are doing some great work for us, but it doesn't really really look like there's an option for us to recoup the Santa Ana Fire, at least for another four years. Thanks so very much. I really appreciate it. I'm not sure if anyone else has any other questions or comments?
Yes, Councilman Reina. And I thank you for bringing this item, because we receive various correspondence from various people, and I'm certainly not on the board yourself, and Omesqua are, but I have a great relationship with the OCFA and still with our Santa Ana firefighters, and continue to stay in contact with everyone. And I will tell you, and I see our fire chief here, who's fairly new, Chief Leonard, but I could attest, and I've been on ride-alongs, that the levels of service have not dropped. The OCFA is a top-notch, state-of-the-art, you know, their organization, you know, does a fabulous job, and I think that we're very fortunate that we are with OCFA. We've had some financial constraints, and these are the reasons why we moved to OCFA. By any means of the imagination, just say, as Councilman Reina mentioned, if we were, we all decided, hey, we have $43 million in our reserves, what would it take to bring back our fire department? Unfortunately, it's unrealistic, and I think our city manager has, I'm not sure if he stated that here today or not, but the reality is, is that we've sold all our apparatus, one. That costs millions of dollars. Two, you know, what would have to do with, in regards to our pension costs? And, Mr. City Manager, can you inform us what that cost would be, what we would have to pay back to the OCFA?
I don't want to be quoting an exact amount, but what...
Well, give an estimate.
Well, what I will tell you is that it's in millions and millions of dollars. I'll find an estimate for you. But the issue there would be that if we do terminate the contract, we have to true-up the entire amount and pay it back over a certain time period. It would be a very, very strong disincentive for the city of Santa Ana to do that. But I will follow up, Ms. Martinez, with the exact numbers.
Thank you. I just think it's very important for us to put out the actual figures and what we're dealing with. It's just not a decision, a split decision that the city council can just make and say, hey, we want to bring our fire department back. It's not that very easy. And I'm wanting to assure our residents that if you do have any concerns, again, you can always come to our city manager or to our chief, our division chief, Leonard, and to our two board members, Reina and Omesqua, if there are any issues. What I don't like is that when I'm getting messages via Facebook or email, and, you know, people are saying things that the levels of service have dropped, that, you know, we're not a top-notch, Class A, Fire Department. That's far from the truth. Yes, are we going to have issues? Certainly so. But as we move forward, these are, this is a time where our residents should come to the council and address these issues, so then we can then work with our Orange County Fire Department. And my colleagues, who are representatives on the board, could address these issues, so we can make sure that we bring the best services to our city. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I do have the numbers in the report. I don't have the dollar amount, because it would actually require an actuary study that we would have to jointly fund. But the annual amount prior to the transfer and joining the authority was $5 million a year, so you could imagine that 5 million times 20 years is $100 million.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Additional thoughts or comments on this?
I just want to...
Yes, Councilor Omesqua.
Councilmember Reina for bringing it up, because I know there's been a lot of interest in the community as far as to, why aren't we bringing Santa Ana Fire Department back? And I think this helps clarify that.
Thank you. Look, just one final comment on that. It was a very difficult process we went through. Remember, we did it in order to save about $10 million plus a year. So I know it was before your time, and it's something we really wrestled with hard. But ultimately, I think, you know, we've seen a strong level of service, and the transition was smooth, and this is a natural discussion. I've heard that many cities have this discussion afterwards, i.e., do we go back or not? I think this is a discussion that likely is going to continue. But at the same time, I think we have to say we're, you know, blessed with good service before and blessed with good service after, and a savings in the budget that has helped put the city on a stronger basis. I frankly don't really think we had another, you know, viable choice at the time. We could have not done any of that, and we'd be in a much worse situation today, certainly financially. So with that, let's just continue. We have now going to go into the housing authority meeting, and I want a motion on the consent counter, items one and two.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Now, on the regular business item, number three, I think that was concerned earlier, so we're okay with that. Is Councilor Tina Hedo, do we excuse him from this, or what do we do?
Why don't we excuse him? He had to leave.
All right, so let's make a motion to excuse him.
I'll move to excuse Councilmember Tina Hedo.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now let's bring it then, I'm going to adjourn that and go to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. A very, very brief report. I do want everyone to know that we do have, now have a downtown liaison, so we have filled the position. It's Lee Eisen. I'm going to encourage her to meet with all of you, so you can share your vision. She's very experienced, and she comes from New York, where she was a director of a business improvement district, UCLA graduate, and also a Southern California native, and a Columbia master's degree. So please, meet with her when you have time. And also, I just want everyone to know that we did have three successful meetings on the streetcar, light rail. I know some of you attended that, and that period for the 45-day review will close July 7th, and we plan on bringing a recommendation to the city council August the 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on that. I know you were at all three meetings. I joined you when I could, and I don't know if other councilors had that opportunity or not, but the streetcar was very much well-received at all those hearings, and I think that's a good thing. So with that, who wants to go here?
Sure.
Councilor Martinez is going to go.
I'll try to be brief.
Please.
No, no, it's okay.
It's 11 o'clock. Take your time.
Okay, great. I want to start off, one, by, you know, thanking our staff in regards to the streetcar. I know we just recently had our transportation meeting, and was given a report, and, you know, and our city manager just mentioned right now the three outreach meetings, and I think we're moving forward in the right direction, and look forward to approving whatever alternative recommendations that come before us fairly shortly in August. I do have a question, Mr. City Manager, and to our clerk. I'm wanting to make sure, what the...
the timeline is, the second council meeting. I'm wanting to make sure that our agendas will be followed by the strategic plan and its goals and its strategies. Is that the timeline? I was told by Mr. City Manager that it would take place sometime in July. I'm looking at the agenda now. It has not occurred. Is it going to happen in the second meeting? When are we going to start making sure that we hold ourselves accountable pertaining to our agenda, making sure that our strategies and our goals are connected with our five-year strategic plan?
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. We needed Robert Cortez to get that position. I'm just-
We've even done it before!
We had planned to do that for all the subcommittee meetings, and we need to coordinate for the actual council meetings, but we'll go back and make that happen for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Just want to make note that I brought this up from the very beginning. I think even in our ad hoc meeting, we made mention that that's the structure that we wanted, was to make sure that it was aligned with our council agendas and our council committees. So just wanting to make that clear. Next, I understand, and I know probably Councilman Benavides, as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, will be talking about the folks that came out here as it pertains to the gang injunction. And first, you know, I know there was a video sent to us by Chief Rojas. One, I, look, I'm one of the first to hold staff accountable when folks do wrong out here in our community. A lot of angry people here today. A lot of things were said, and in particular in that video as well. And I just want to urge Chief Rojas that when the community asks for our officers to provide their name and their badge number, that we go ahead and do that. I know that there are going to be folks that are disgruntled, but I think they started to get angry after two or three times that they started asking in that video for the officer's badge number and his name, and he didn't want to give it. And so I just think it's important, as we build communications and relations, that we inform our officers to just give them that information. We certainly understand you have a process that you go through when there are complaints with your officers, and I leave that to you to take care of. But I think it's important that we are able to have that open dialogue with the residents and our police officers. And, you know, I know a lot of things today were mentioned in regards to Officer Ferraro, and I could tell you that Officer Ferraro here, who's here, is a great officer. I've known him for various years, and I am certain that he would not say what some people accused him of saying today. And, you know, if people misrepresented what he said, or they heard something that he probably didn't say, I'm certain that Officer Ferraro would apologize. I know that that's not the conduct, and he's never had a complaint, and I think Chief Rojas can speak to that. But I would like to urge you, Chief Rojas, to have communication with these folks, and I know you have in the past, and I know they've come in our public safety meeting, and they discussed this gang injunction. And we do need to address it, whether it comes from the District Attorney's Office, or it comes from us, or whatever have you. We need to address that, and I know Councilman Benavides is going to speak to that. I will tell you personally that it does hit home, and I did get emotional when the young lady came up from Santa Anita. It's because I do understand that sometimes these gangs injunctions really attack sometimes some of the residents that shouldn't participate, or young people. But I understand we do have a gang problem, and we need to address that gang problem, and we need to tackle it head-on because we don't tolerate that in our neighborhoods. And I'm certain that these residents in the Santa Anita neighborhood, or in the Townton neighborhood, who are hard-working families, don't want to see gang violence in their communities. And our police department is doing whatever they can to address that problem. And so we have a zero tolerance with gangs, and I'm wanting to make sure that as we move forward, that we have this online communication with these folks and ourselves. Because I remember we had a conversation at the public safety meeting about this potential gang injunction that they brought forward to us, and we made it very clear, and the District Attorney's Office came and spoke, and they said that there was nothing on the books, nothing was coming before us, and now all of a sudden, here we are. And so I'm like, was I blindsided here? Did I miss something at the public safety? That they said something that wasn't? Not understanding. I know you've been communicating with us about the process of gang injunctions, but wanting to be more clear about what does this mean for this neighborhood? And secondly, if we are working with the District Attorney's Office, when does this take place? And I personally, you know, don't believe in gang injunctions. One, because it criminalizes certain folks. And then, two, that a lot of resources are spent, that we can spend, we can utilize our resources in different areas of community policing. But I certainly understand these are tools that we currently have now, and that we're looking at other things to address gang violence in our community. I want to let the folks know who came here before us today, that I understand that you're angry. I understand that you want answers from this council. But I also ask that when you come to the people's chambers, and it is your chambers, to be a little respectful, not only to the council, but to our officers, and understand that we can have disagreements, that we can be angry. But it's important that we respect one another. At the end of the day, and then, you know, I think many of them left. I don't think there's any of them here. It's very late. But I want to encourage all of you, that if you want to meet with me specifically as a council member or the Public Safety Committee meeting, you want us to address that, communicate that with our Chairman, Councilman Benavides, and we can go ahead and bring that up at a public safety meeting. I don't want to say, "Councilman Benavides, go and do that." You know, I'm not the Chair of that Public Safety Committee meeting, but I think it's important that we address this issue. There were a lot of angry people, in particular the young women that came and addressed us here. And I think that's where I get really emotional. As a young girl, I've seen the gang violence. I've seen it in my own household, my brothers who, for life, you know, they can't interact, but that's a decision that they made, and now they're grown up, and, you know, they're living productive lives. But I as well personally have been criminalized. And when we talk about, you know, people being criminalized, you know, for their past, their past history or their family's history, today I still deal with that stigma. And I'm the one to tell you that I have no, I've never used a drug in my life. I have no tattoos. I went and got educated. I'm now a council member, and I'm trying to make a difference in this community. And the first thing that people always bring up is my family's past. And I'll tell you, I'm not embarrassed about it, or else I would have never spoken about my family history. It's alive in this community, and we have to address all these issues. And that's why I've always been so outspoken about my upbringing, because it's important for people to understand that it doesn't matter where you come from. It's about what you do to make a difference in your community and be productive, and go and get educated, and come back in this city and be able to make a difference. And I certainly believe that I am making a difference on this city council, and I hope to continue to do so. And I urge these young women and these young boys that are in the Townton neighborhood to continue to reach out to us, to figure out, for us to work with one another, to figure out some solutions of how we can address some of the issues that we're facing in that neighborhood. Because we do need to bring back the bookmobile. And I see Thomas Gordon here, and once upon a time, we did have a bookmobile in that area, and we were fixing the cul-de-sac area as a park, and, you know, financial times hit us, and we just disengaged and forgot about that neighborhood. Not too long ago, I mentioned here about, you know, the issues in regards to code enforcement. We need to address these problems. We can't just go out there and think that we're going to arrest our way out of this problem. It's not going to happen. We need to bring resources. And so I want to encourage our city manager and the rest of my colleagues to make a commitment to provide resources in that neighborhood, whether us being, bringing back the bookmobile. I think that's something that I think many of us could be supportive of. That could be a first step. And then having conversations with all these groups that are very concerned in this neighborhood. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Councilor Vince Armento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'll save my time, I guess.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. I'll meet you when you guys are finished.
No, please, go ahead now. It's a good idea. All right. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming tonight and staying, for those of you who stayed late with us. And I want to congratulate and thank my colleagues who showed a lot of valor tonight, and I think showed a lot of leadership. I know decisions aren't easy. Sometimes they're very unpleasant, and the process is difficult. So for everybody who had the courage, because that's what it took to take some very difficult decisions, I applaud you. And sometimes it is very tough. But it's good to know that there is valor on this body. With respect to a comment that I heard earlier about City Hall tipping over, the eighth floor being saturated, let's recall that over the past six to seven years, we've reduced our employees by many, many numbers, in the triple figures. So as we become healthier as a city and we start bringing back some of our employees, let's remember how thin we are and how thin we have been. And we've been able to, by the grace of God, continue to be a constructive, you know, safe city, but we've done it with a very lean staff. And so things have gone well, and I'm glad that we're starting to reintroduce some of those key components that we lost. And thank you, Mr. City Manager, for your leadership on that. I want to thank my colleagues for making difficult decisions in the past few years to, you know, to reduce it to the point where we could manage. But let's remember, what we've done in the past few years with the renegotiation of the U.S. Marshals contract, with the bonding that has been put into place with decollateralizing some of our assets, the OCFA monies, the negotiations with the bargaining unions, all these funds are going to help us become healthier, and hopefully we can reintroduce some of our employees that we lost. We lost many in code enforcement, and I know that we made a very concerted effort over the last budget cycle to reintroduce some of those positions, and we're going to continue to try to do more. Last night at the Committee on Development and Transportation, we were able to give the, give notice to many of the residents who attended that we're going to start reducing the fees for the Mills Act applications. That's to preserve historic properties in the city, and I remember those fees spiked to like four thousand dollars at one point, when they were at one time waived or, I think, very nominal. Well, now, we told everybody when things got better, we were going to revisit that, and we did. And the proposal is to reduce it by at least three thousand, coming back down to maybe nineteen hundred. But the idea is that we're getting healthier. We're not completely well, but we're getting much better. So I want to thank everybody for showing patience. But, look, this is what, this is our new reality, that we are going to start becoming much safer and much more solid as a city. We're much more solvent, and hopefully we can get some of our employees that did a very good job for us. Because, again, it's been a very, very difficult process, and we've been blessed and fortunate that nothing bad has happened during that period of time. So I want to thank you all for all your leadership and wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and to be safe, and conference on-
Naleo.
The Naleo Conference. I just want to report that I attended the Naleo Conference this past weekend in San Diego. I got food poisoning the first night I was there, so I went home very early. So I was only there for Thursday, but I think everybody else had a great time besides me. I just went to the wrong restaurant in San Diego, and it didn't work out. But it was a great conference. We heard from the Governor, from the Attorney General, and it was, you know, what little I did say for was great. So thank you very much, and everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Now, let's go over to Councilor Omesqua, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start off by congratulating and thanking our city manager for an outstanding job in helping us recoup our escrow money that OCFA was holding. I mentioned earlier to the council members that he did an awesome job. A lot of the board members were very impressed. It was a unanimous decision to allow us to get that money back. Also, yeah, it is tough to get a unanimous vote. But also, I'd like to thank staff for helping us with this initiative. It was a very hard decision for us to make tonight, and I just want to reiterate that the only reason we even have this competing measure on the ballot is because the way, the one that qualified had a lot of safeguards that weren't in place, and we really needed to have this competing measure there. And in the end, the voters will decide in November, and I hope that, you know, it turns out to be whatever is best for our city. Also, I'd like to invite everyone to come to the Fourth of July event at Centennial Park. It will begin at four o'clock, and I hope everyone has a safe and happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Reyna, please.
Yeah, I try to, absolutely try to keep it brief as late as it is. As always, we live in a desert. It doesn't look like it, but please conserve water. Do your laundry after six o'clock. Water your grass after evening. Every little bit really does have an effect. Believe it or not, there's another city within the state that is looking at alternate days of when people can water their grass. It goes along with their address, Odd and Even. For those that remember the gas wars, that when you're able to go to get gas on Odd and Even, this is a real situation. It doesn't look like it, but we are facing a drought, and every little bit that our city's able to do is going to go a long way. So please conserve water as much as you possibly can. I too had participated in the conference or attended the conference, the Naleo Conference. Some great workshops, private-public partnerships, so it's very intriguing. Got a great opportunity to meet a lot of other elected officials and bounce off ideas and best practices. One of the things I was completely thrown for, and this came from Arizona, was certain cities in Arizona, you're able to run for both school board and city council and hold both those positions at the exact same time. Completely threw me off a loop, but some of these things you don't know until you interact with other individuals. Like everyone else, of course, happy Fourth of July. Please come out to Centennial. It's going to be a great community and family event. Before I do close up with this, I know we're just about a month away, and so I'd like to direct staff that the last time we talked about CDPG funding, we talked about the August being the trigger date of when we can start talking about what those funds will look like and how they're going to be allocated in the future. We, I know a lot of my colleagues are talking, are concerned about the same thing, where these funding should really go back to 501(c)(3)'s nonprofits within the community. And I don't want to miss this funding cycle, so I definitely want to direct staff to put this on our agenda, whether it be the city council agenda, the prey committee, or whichever committee may be appropriate for this. But we need to start talking about CDPG funding now, so we know where those funding should be going to. And like always, shopping Santa Ana. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I also had an opportunity to attend the conference, and, you know, one of the things that I believe in any leader is a lifelong learner. And I think there's a lot out there that we don't know, and the more that we know, the more educated we become, the more tools that we have at our disposal, and the better we're able to contribute to helping lead and guide our city. I also had an opportunity to be in, to attend the, one of the workshops on economic development, particularly in a post redevelopment era in the state. Public-private partnerships was something that was key. One of the speakers and the, that presented there, Larry Cosmont, I just learned, is also, we actually, I was coming back, and I referenced him to city manager, and then on Monday's Development Transportation Committee, learned that we actually are working with them on a very exciting project over along East First Street. So there's a number of other tools, a number of other things that we discussed that I had an opportunity to learn about, the impact of pensions over the next number of years, and, again, some ideas, thoughts that they'll be connecting with their staff about. But it was definitely a worthwhile investment of time and effort there to come back and better serve our community. There's a lot of exciting things going on in the city this week. A couple of things that I wanted to point out, farmer's market on Thursday is actually really turning into a pretty exciting day in the downtown, particularly. We have, the farmer's market goes on from four to eight p.m. over at Third and Bush, and in the area right in front of the Yost. We have the Santa Ana Jazz Summer Nights. This, I think, will be our third week. Second Street Promenade, something that their city manager brought forth, which I think was a great idea. That's from four thirty p.m. to seven thirty p.m. there in front of the Gypsy Dan, between Gypsy and Lola Gaspar. Fourth of July, always an exciting time in our city, particularly now that over the last few years, we've had the fireworks show at Centennial, live music, history walk, Kid's Zone, food. Starts at four p.m. Will go from four to nine thirty p.m. It's been growing every year, and just want to encourage, if you haven't made it out, you don't want to miss it. Bring your picnic blanket, bring your picnic, and just hang out with your family, and enjoy. Something we've been investing a lot of time, energy, our staff has been working very diligently to just make this a very special time for us in the city. And I just want to encourage folks to participate in that. Again, this Friday from four to nine thirty p.m. fireworks show is at nine p.m. sharp, so you don't want to miss that for sure. There was a discussion earlier, a number of people came and spoke with regard to the proposed gang injunction that the Orange County District Attorney's Office is working on. I want to urge, and I did talk offline, have had a couple of conversations with our police chief with regard to this, and just want to encourage our chief, and I'll make myself available to connect with some of- available to connect with some of the community members that came and addressed us, so we can have a community meeting, a forum of some sort. There are a number of questions that people have, valid questions, understandable, also I think some misconceptions as well. I know that right now, the DA's office still has that whole process under seal until after, I believe, July 29th, but there are some general concepts that we can discuss. I know we have a meeting next week with the Parents Council out there in that community, and, but definitely want to make ourselves available to have that conversation with some of the individuals who came and spoke, residents who came and spoke with us today, and then let's also discuss bringing this on the public safety agenda for the next meeting. We've discussed it before, but let's go ahead and make sure to look at bringing it back. With regard to, we took action today on the whole ballot measure on medical marijuana dispensaries. We also spoke on the enforcement plan, need for that, I believe, city manager, we're going to be discussing that on study session next month?
Yes, Councilman, the first meeting in August would be the worst study on that issue.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be a good opportunity for us all to be able to chime in and speak to that, again, independent of the whole ballot measure item. So again, with all the exciting things that are going on in the city, just want to encourage folks to support our economy, our businesses in town, let's shop in Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to report that I had the privilege of attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors recently, out in Dallas, it was a very productive time. And I also want to report that it's almost eleven-thirty, so I'm just going to adjourn in memory of Zoria Reyes. It's late, we should all go home. Good night, everybody.